For workshop, we do have a presentation prepared by our Conservation Advisory Committee. And I understand the DEC as well is a part of this, so we welcome you to and look forward to your sharing with us.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. Is this on? Do I need to? Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't pick up very well, so as best you can speak directly into the thing.
There's no light on it. Is that better? Okay.
We can hear you, and it's more about the machine picking you up for the recorded version of it.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity this evening to present the City of Beacon Natural Resources Inventory. My name is Ingrid Heckel, and I'm a Conservation and Land Use Specialist with the DEC Hudson River Estuary Program. I work through a partnership with Cornell University, and I'm going to be tag teaming this presentation with our partner, Sean Carroll, who's here from Cornell Cooperative Extension of Dutchess County. He's a senior GIS educator. So I am going to go jump right ahead into this. Just a little quick background about the Estuary Program. We're a unique, non-regulatory program at DEC established to help people enjoy, protect, and revitalize the Hudson River and its valley. And we work in the 10 counties bordering the tidal Hudson to achieve these key benefits. And within the program, our Conservation and Land Use Team works with municipalities to conserve natural areas and habitat through local land use planning and decision making. And we've been doing this sort of assistance and education work for over 20 years, and this is the basic planning framework we encourage communities to follow, beginning with identifying and understanding what you have, what your resources are, to provide a foundation for setting local conservation priorities and developing plans and policies to protect and manage those resources for the future. And so several years ago, recognizing that many communities lacked a basic foundation of a natural resources inventory, we developed this guidance document about how to develop one. There's a lot of new information available at a state and regional level that we wanted communities to be aware of and use in their municipal planning. And in the seven years since then, we've worked with over 30 communities in our watershed to develop inventories and subsequently gone on, worked with communities going further into open space planning and conservation planning. And I'll talk a little bit more about that at the end of the presentation. So a natural resources inventory is basically a compilation of information, including maps and descriptions, a narrative report about geology and soils, water resources, including drinking water, streams, watersheds, important habitats, wildlife records, information about land use, and more recently, including information about climate change, current climate conditions, and future projections, how communities may be affected. And some communities also choose to document their cultural resources, things like historic sites, recreation areas, and scenic resources in the context of these projects. So the scope is really up to the community to decide, and these projects have, you know, they vary from place to place. The Beacon NRI goals were to create an education tool for local residents, as well as project sponsors coming to the city about the city's resources, and to create a unified reference for planning, designing, and reviewing new development, as well as a foundation for future land use policy, including comprehensive planning and zoning, as well as climate adaptation planning and open space planning. And the hope of the Conservation Advisory Council was that this project would also help to cultivate environmental stewardship of local resources. And so the project came about through a partnership that we established with Cooperative Extension in Dutchess County to provide municipal assistance with creating NRIs. At the time, we were seeking ways to raise the capacity of other county and regional partners to provide this assistance, and we provided some funding that they used to provide the mapping support and facilitate meetings with the Conservation Advisory Council, who applied through a competitive process to receive this assistance. They were awarded it in 2017, and so the project kicked off at that time. And I'm going to hand it over to Sean. I wasn't directly involved in the NRI planning process. My colleague Laura Hedy was, and she provided a lot of support and information about biological resources in Beacon in the context of the project. But Sean was very involved, and so he's going to take it forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Ingrid, and thank you for having us. Yeah, so again, my name is Sean Carroll. I work with Cornell Cooperative Extension up in Millbrook. As Ingrid mentioned, I assisted in this project mostly with the creation of maps, but also with some of the facilitation. And so the process, as Ingrid mentioned, started in 2017. We began meeting in earnest with the CAC. Brian DeFeo was the head of the CAC at that time, or the chair. And we were meeting nearly monthly at the Beacon Institute, just on Main Street there, who graciously host us there often. And yeah, we, the process was really, you know, involving the CAC, but we also involved, you know, John Clark was part of that process as well, providing a lot of valuable input. And, you know, we met in earnest in 2017, but the project really kind of wrapped up in 2018, a year later. So the output of that was, I have a copy here I can pass around, was a 21 maps and nearly 30-page report that came about, of which there's, I believe, nine chapters. Seven of those chapters are kind of content-specific, ranging from geology, soils, biodiversity, scenic cultural resources, et cetera. But also at the end of the report, there are two chapters dedicated to, you know, considerations for decision-making, and then a chapter for next steps, what to do with this tool afterwards. And of course, we were cognizant of including and integrating the comprehensive plan, as well as LWRP and state and county resources into it. So I just want to give you a quick overview of what some of the maps are that are included, and I'll just pass this around. You're going to want to take a look at it. So as I mentioned, there's about seven content-specific chapters, you know, again, ranging from, you know, a geology section in which we mapped bedrocks, official geology, topography, and talked about some of the planning implications pertaining to that, steep slopes. I know the city recently developed a steep slopes ordinance, and also, you know, some planning implications pertaining to soils and topography and geology as well. There's a pretty significant water resources section, overviewing streams, water bodies, watersheds, wetlands, water quality, water supply, and flood areas, some obvious planning implications for this, you know, maintaining wetlands and riparian buffers, as well as, of course, the city's drinking water supply. We also had a flood hazard areas map. Of course, you know, conserving and revegetating and reconnecting flood plains, important from a water quality, as well as a biodiversity standpoint, but also from a human safety impact, making sure that we're mapping and understanding where our flood plains are and not developing in them. There's several maps in a very significant chapter on biodiversity and habitats within the city. Some of the maps included in that were Wildlife Habitat Index, Forests and Street Trees, Significant Habitats, Coastal and Shoreline Habitat, and Important Areas for Rare Plants and Animals. And involved in this, one of the key components of this process for the habitat section of the report was working with Hudsonia on developing a really fine-scale habitat map for the City of Beacon. This was a really iterative process in which the CAC got completely involved, and some of the volunteers and residents as well. So Hudsonia did kind of the base mapping, and we actually went out into the field and kind of Q8, QC, and checked some of these habitats to ensure that they were accurate. So again, developing a new data set for the city that's hopefully very useful. And then just along the lines with that, again, you know, there was a section on forests and street trees as well, making sure that we're looking to preserve large, unfragmented forests, you know, having the Fishkill Ridge and the Hudson Highlands right in the backyard, obviously a priority of the City of Beacon, but also bringing it down to our local streets and making sure that street trees and kind of small-scale urban agriculture, or urban forestry is included as well. Getting towards the end of it, there's a land cover and green spaces area section. Just wanted to kind of highlight this, but acknowledge that it is kind of an ever-evolving data set. As new areas come into protection, you know, the static map won't change, but it's an opportunity for updates. I'll mention a little bit later a project we're working with the county, in which a lot of these protected lands, data sets will be updated more regularly. And then lastly, the CAC helped us to map, I should say, the CAC along with a lot of town volunteers, I know, or city volunteers. I know the city historian was involved in helping to develop Cultural Resources Section, highlighting historical and cultural resources, as well as scenic and recreational. And that, I'll just turn it back over to Ingrid.
Thanks, Sean. So yeah, this was a really high-level overview of the document. Our hope is that you'll take some time to dive into it yourselves. It's very accessible, you know, that each map has a one-page description succinct, including planning considerations, which Sean showed some examples of on the slides, you know, what the data is, what's being shown, some highlights. You know, we think it's a great training resource itself if you have new planning board members to ask them to read the document, become more familiar with what's present in the city. So in the final part of the presentation, I'll talk a little bit about some ways the planning board and the city can use the NRI to take some next steps potentially. So having all this great information about your resources is wonderful, but what's the city going to do with it? So planning would be a next step, and, you know, this information can obviously inform your next comprehensive plan update. I'm not sure when that's scheduled. Many communities have integrated the NRI into their comprehensive plans. It can form the recommendations there. But some communities also go further to develop open space inventories and plans that really focus on the open space component in further detail. An open space inventory takes the NRI a step further to identify conservation priority areas and parcels that would warrant potential protection. And an open space plan goes a little further than that, then to actually decide, well, what are the best uses and ways to manage those areas, and involves more public input and participation in establishing new policy for the city. And that typically might involve looking at potential areas like, you know, land acquisition possibly, creation of new parks or preserves, but also land use policy and zoning updates, specific recommendations in those areas, potentially restoration of habitat or other areas, and other opportunities for recreation and trails, and also potentially private land stewardship, ways that private landowners can contribute to protecting the city's resources. So the Conservation Advisory Council is really interested in pursuing an open space plan. Esther Jackson is here. She helped organize this presentation. Thank you, Esther. And she, her contact's up here if anybody's interested in discussing that further. I'm actually supposed to be presenting to the Common Council about open space planning two weeks from now, so to be continued. As a first step towards an open space plan or inventory, in follow-up to completion of the NRI, the CAC really wanted to go further. At that time, in 2020, all of the state grant programs were frozen. There weren't really any opportunities for funding, but we had a small amount of funding in our budget that we were able to use to support, again, Sean's time through Cooperative Extension, to assist the CAC with starting an open space survey in the city. And so they conducted this survey in the summer of 2021, last year, and received about 300 responses. There was a written survey asking people about their priorities for conservation and for green spaces in the city and recreation. And then there was also a mapping kind of tool that people could drop pins on to identify locations that they thought were important or potential opportunities for new recreation assets. So that project was summarized. Sean gave a presentation to the Common Council last year, and it's on the website if anybody wants to read it. And it's a good first start, you know, getting the public talking about this topic and could lead into a wider planning effort. And this is a summary of some of the input they received about the number-one priorities for green and open space protection, and the top priority was conservation of natural areas, followed by walking and bike trails or paths, and updating and maintaining existing open spaces. And back to the NRI, just in terms of the planning boards, month-to-month activities, there are ways that this information can be integrated into your SEACRA process and site plan reviews in terms of providing, supporting information about resources that may be present, could potentially be affected on project sites. Some communities either recommend or require that applicants use the NRI or refer to information in the NRI in the process of filling out their EAF forms. The City of Poughkeepsie actually adopted a law in 2019 that requires their NRI to be consulted for SEACRA reviews, and they were able to do that in part because they got support from Vassar College to put all of their mapping online, and it makes it very easy for applicants to zoom into their parcel and print out a series of maps about resources that are present. And then the law requires them to provide a brief conservation analysis about how resources might be affected and how the project is responding to those issues. So we had a webinar last year where Natalie Quinn, who's the planner for Poughkeepsie, talked about that law and how they're implementing it. It's available, the recording is on our website, and I'd be happy to share that with you. Even, you know, short of a law, there are ways that the NRI information can be incorporated to your project, your site plan review or subdivision review checklists, or, you know, or used informally by yourselves in reviewing projects. And finally, I'm going to hand it back over to Sean.
Yeah. So as I mentioned, for anyone who's not aware, the county is working on updating their countywide natural resources inventory. I'm assisting the county's Department of Planning and Development on this process. The current NRI for the county is from 2010, so it's a 12-year-old document at this point. And while a lot of that information is still relevant, it's less of a complete overhaul and more of just updating and reformatting. So it currently is, you know, a PDF document that is a great tool, but we really want to kind of bring it into the 21st century and make it more interactive. So kind of what Ingrid was mentioning with all of the mapping layers, the real utility of those is the ability to kind of zoom in at the parcel level and see where all these resources are at a fine scale. So that'll be one of the best benefits of this process. Just kind of where we're at with that, we're in the first of two years in that process. We began the planning and grant application back in 2021. We received funding from the Hudson River Estuary Program to begin this process. And, you know, at the end here of 2022, we're currently drafting new contents, some of the new chapters. And then next year, we'll be really working with the county's Office of Computer Information Systems, their kind of GIS department, on developing the web application for that. And we'll be doing a ton of outreach and trainings to municipalities on that. And we've also been having municipals and stakeholders input through surveys and committee participation. So as I mentioned, that all that content will live on the county's website, and it'll have, you know, a really slick application for viewing, analyzing, and downloading data. And it'll be a great companion tool for a lot of these local NRIs such as the city has. So be sure to keep you all on the loop as that process continues.
Yeah, that's great information. To what degree does the city's NRI inform the counties?
Yeah. Yeah, so we get this question a lot. It's a great question. You know, the county's NRI really is, you know, it's a much more landscape-scale perspective, you know, looking at the county as a whole and how a lot of these habitats are interconnected. But it doesn't really drill down at the municipal scale level like the City of Beacon's NRI does. So, you know, it's not going to have, it's not going to have all the specifics that your municipal NRI has, you know, getting down to parcel-level protections, or, you know, if you do have municipal zoning that's specific to the city, you know, those are kind of things that only would be included in yours.
Yeah. So by reference, perhaps?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, again, a lot of overlap and back and forth, but it's, you know, having the kind of two scales is really valuable.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah.
So the project you're discussing is a GIS project for parcel, occupying parcel information with environmental information essentially, and that could potentially be used by design professionals to understand and also property owners potentially, or a whole group of stakeholders to, at the beginning of the process where things are being contemplated, important environmental resources will be forefrom it in the beginning.
Right.
And one of the ways that a community can encourage that is you're saying that Poughkeepsie in particular has required this to be consulted as part of the initial environmental assessment. And I'm curious, you, I've used a thing called Oasis in New York City. It's also a GIS thing that's basically look up an address.
Sure.
And it gives you all, like, way too much information. Would this have a kind of interface like that?
Yeah, so I mean, the county already has parcel access. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. You know, it's a similar tool. Right now, it's kind of really just used for obtaining parcel information, but it also does, at this level, it has, I think, just basic wetlands and flood plains information. But the goal is to really tie these two applications together so that, yes, you can drill down at the parcel level, you know, with the caveat of being, it is, you know, it's not survey-scale data. I mean, even the parcel boundaries and the, you know, RPT would agree with that, you know, it's meant to be a starting plate, right? So it's a place to get down to the parcel level, explore what resources might be there, and if there are, you know, some fine lines that need more accurate mapping, then, you know, obviously a survey would be necessary, but.
That sounds really useful.
Yeah.
So the report that you shared is current as of 2020.
Correct.
I'm just curious, is this an update of an earlier, similar-type report, or is this a brand-new initiative?
For the city of Be- um, I'm not, I don't, there's not, yeah, there's no previous natural resources inventory for the city, so it's.
Yeah, to some degree, as much as we did on the comprehensive plan, but nowhere near this level of detail, and obviously this is more current.
Yes.
Curious two things, and I don't know who I'm asking this question to, but does the city have plans? I'm sure they have plans for use of this for many specific things, but do you know if they have plans to codify this and make a requirement that applicants use this tool?
Not that I'm aware of. I think we have the ability to use it anytime.
Sure.
It's an adopted city document.
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't think the city, at least as far as I know, has mandated any use, but, and the chapters are there. It's easy to get to. It's on the website.
Yeah, it's a great tool.
And for any particular parcel that has, that can be identified as having these sorts of critical sensitive areas, it should be looked at.
Yeah.
I know I look at it, and I look at parcel access all the time, the same thing.
Of course.
I think one of the things that would be most interesting is sort of the next step, and this was talked about with the committee at the time, was to use it to identify high-priority parcels. So you take the top 10 parcels that you would like to protect long-term, and you not only do more detailed work on those parcels, but you also come up with a development scenario for that parcel.
Yeah.
Or options for those parcels, so that you, one, it would be, you know, this should be identified for public purchase, or a conservation easement, or a conservation subdivision, or, you know, limited-use options, or big buffers, or, you know, that sort of thing. So it's something on the books, so when an applicant comes in, they know how the city feels about it. So you get it 90% right in the first task rather than 90% wrong.
Yeah.
Good point. When are we due for our next complan update?
10 years is usually what they've been doing. That's would be 2027.
10 years from 20, okay. So it's a really great companion piece to our comprehensive plan as well.
Yeah. A comprehensive plan is always meant to have sort of add-ons in that 10 period, you know? You do a transportation plan, or you do a pedestrian plan, or you do a Main Street plan, which the city's working on, or a conservation plan.
Yeah, great. Thank you for your great work. This looks very comprehensive.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah.
It's probably the first time I've heard a round of applause like that.
Hey, we'll take it.
Good job. This is the point in the evening, starting at 7:30, where we would normally go into our regular meeting, but we have a bit of a bind here because we're not a quorum. So.
Do we have any notifications of absences, or is this just people showing up?
We do have notifications, confirmed notification of absence by Jill. However, she said she would do what she could if she was feeling up to it to make it. I don't put much stock in that. Randall did mention he was on his way, but will be late, and we have not heard anything from Len.
Have we heard from Jennifer?
Jennifer did say she would be here at 8:00.
8:00, yeah.
So for the time being, we're without council, and we're without at least one member to make us a quorum, so I think we are going to have to wait. We have no other choice at the moment.
Do we need a quorum for appropriateness, or to review the?
We do.
And to review the laws?
I think it's beneficial to have as much of the group here to review the laws.
Yeah.
So.
You can have questions from the audience of our speakers. Open it up.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. If anyone's here and was able to enjoy the presentation, if you have any questions for the presenters, I don't want to necessarily put them on the spot, but feel free. This, only in relationship to the presentation we just saw.
You might also remind people of the adjournment.
Yeah, we did have, yeah, we did have new audience members join us, just for everybody's edification. If you're here to hear or speak about 1113 Walcott, that application's been adjourned until next month.
I'll take this opportunity to grab this mic. I just wanted to say.
Don't expect nothing less.
My name's Teresa, and I just wanted to say that the biggest words that I heard in that presentation, "green" and "open space." Look those words up, and let's use them, and let's save them. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we wait. I might just use this opportunity, excuse me.
Karen asked if I might go over some of the criteria we use for special permits.
Yeah, great.
As an extended workshop.
Let's fill the air. I think that's a great topic. Thanks.
All right, I'm, you know, I'm not an attorney, you know, this probably would be better if Jennifer did this, but generally speaking, things are as-of-right or special permitted aren't not allowed in the code. And as-of-right means if you meet the standards in the code, the planning board's supposed to say, okay. There's discretionary items, there's site plan issues, every site's different, but if you're as-of-right and you meet the conditions, the setbacks and the height standards and all the rest, parking standards, the planning board has no good reason to say no. And people in the audience sometimes don't understand that. They think we have complete discretion, and the planning board can say, no, we just don't like it, come back and do something different. If it meets the code as set out by the city council, the planning board can work within limits in site plan aesthetics and that sort of thing, but they can't say absolutely no. Special permit, specially permitted uses are a little different. What they say is that there's certain uses that are a little more troublesome perhaps, or interesting, or have more impacts. And so the council in the zoning code says these are specially permitted uses rather than as-of-right. Specially permitted uses are permitted uses. They're allowed by the law, but in order to approve them, they not only have to meet the general standards in the code, they have to meet the additional special permit standards. And there's a section in the code 23-18 that's called special permit uses that has a list of, one, two, three, four, five, six, general conditions. And they're generalized, obviously, but they give an extra level of review for the planning board that if they don't meet those, if it can be reasonably proved that they don't meet those conditions, then you have the right to say no, even though it's a permitted use. Also, a lot of special permit. Also, a lot of special permit uses have additional specific conditions in the code, that there's sections on hotels and gas stations and things like that, that have their own specific standards that also have to be satisfied. So as an example, general example, the historic district and landmark overlay zone, the historic district that's designated by the city council. If you're in that, and you want to do something that's allowed in the list of specially permitted uses in 22, 23, 24.7, gives an additional list of commercial type uses and multifamily type uses that ordinarily wouldn't be allowed, say, in a residential district. But if you're in the HDLO, the Historic Landmark Overlay District, you have the ability through a special permit to apply for those additional type uses. But there's additional conditions that come with them that are specific for historic type properties. So in that case, say, 1113 Walcott, that's in a residential district, but it is in the HDLO, the historic district. And so therefore, you can apply for additional type uses that wouldn't ordinarily be allowed in the residential district by special permit from the planning board. And then there's a list of additional four conditions you have to meet. So now you have to meet 10 conditions rather than just six. But the lawyers will say, if it can be reasonably proved that you meet those conditions, the planning board has to approve it. That's the way the legal case law reads. All the lawyers in the audience can tell me I'm wrong. But, but that's the way it goes. Again, the planning board doesn't have an absolute right to say no without evidence or proof, but if they can reasonably prove that one of those 10 conditions, those additional conditions, are not being met by that proposal, then they have the right to say no. So it gives it a little extra leverage to the planning board. And because the general, the conditions are relatively general, it puts you in a sort of a, you know, they're so general, how do you prove that you're not being met? And that's the process you have to go by. You have to set up criteria by which you say that doesn't meet that general standard or that specific standard in the special permit use. So that's the shorthand description. I will say that in the past, the city council reserved the right to do most special permits in previous years.
Right.
And in the 2020, they said, you're just getting bogged down in these special permits. We're not the planning board. We should be looking at other sorts of issues. And we shouldn't have applicants have to go to the planning board to do the environmental quality review, then be kicked up to the city council to do a special permit review, and then back to the planning board to do a site plan review. And each one requires a public hearing and a certain process, and instead of a process lasting, say, four to six months, it lasts, you know, eight to 12 months, because you're getting shoved back and forth. So in the 2020 code, the city council made a lot of the previously council authority special permit uses into planning boards. And now, if it's a special permit before the planning board, you can do it concurrently with the site plan. So it makes the process a lot smoother and a lot less arduous to cover the same ground.
So we're somewhat reverting back to the time I remember early on when the city, before the city had taken this special permit review authority from the planning board. Now they've placed it back with the planning board.
Not all uses, but yes, most uses.
Most of them. There are some that still sit with, there are some that still sit with city.
Yes, and some they, you know, instead of making it a special permit, they needed a concept plan approval. So in the Fishkill Creek development, because those properties are relatively sensitive by being near the creek, they first go to the council for a concept. So the overall concept has to be okay with the council. Then it goes to the planning board for seeker, then it goes back to the council for a concept plan approval, then it goes back to the planning board. So there's still a few uses, a few areas in the code where the council wanted to maintain their authority, but for most, for the most part, the special use permits are now given to the planning board to decide concurrently with the site plan approval, which makes the process less confusing and time consuming.
A little more streamlined.
Yes. But still covering the same grounds.
Yeah. Yeah, no, that's a great explanation, thanks, John, and real clear of the, especially in context of the role of the planning board.
Yes.
As a non-legislative, however, administrative body.
Yes.
Where the laws are made.
That's always the assumption is, generally speaking, a lot of people think that the planning board has the right to discretion and to take the law and apply it as they see fit. And the council sets the law, and we apply the law. And any deviation from that, if it meets the standards that are in the law, then the planning board has limited discretion. Certainly not the discretion to say no, absolutely without a very good reason, and tied to the law in some way. And the special permit gives that extra leverage in the law, so that the planning board, in theory, can say no to something that, that doesn't meet those, that can arguably doesn't meet those specific criteria in the law.
Right. And if, if for some reason, an application is denied, the planning board needs to make sure they're very clear.
Yes.
As to the reasons why, tied back to the inability of the applicant to make the case that they comply with zoning and the law.
Yes. It's, there has to be a really clear record of the reasons why, and it has to be built up over time, and you have to have documentary evidence and that sort of thing, because otherwise, it's very easy to sue the city and run up a lot of legal bills if you're careless of how you apply the zoning code.
Clear. Yeah.
And what is the process for the zoning code to be changed over time?
Well, the council can change it anytime. They can change it at the request of an applicant. An applicant can petition the, there's a proposal on the agenda tonight about an applicant wanting to change the parking standards for a specific use. The council looked at it, thought it was at least reasonable enough to refer to the planning board for our recommendation.
What's the concern of the risk around spot zoning in certain instances?
Well, spot zoning is another one of those areas that's sometimes misunderstood. Spot zoning usually involves a specific zoning change or provision that affects one landlord or one property owner, or a specific developer or a specific group of developers, and not consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Something that could be broadly applied, then.
Yeah, zoning districts are supposed to be applied broadly, either through district-wide zoning, involve multiple parcels, or some sort of overlay that can be applied to a specific parcel, but has to fit within a, an overall context of the city where other parcels like it could also apply for that overlay provision, like the HDLO, the historic district overlay, or the affordable housing, senior housing overlay. So you can do what people sometimes assume is spot zoning, because it applies to one parcel, if it's, number one, consistent with the comprehensive plan. And number two, has a good rationale for why it is, fits in the overall context of the zoning law. So it's not just perceived to be the benefit of one developer, or one landowner, or one tenant, or whatever.
So, so there are, there are ways, you know, the city council obviously would initiate a comprehensive plan update, part of which, and has been in the past, a deep look at, you know, revising zoning. And then, you know, it's a sort of a conversation between the committee developing the plan, and then the city developing new zoning laws around that, and then codifying it. I would imagine if there's, you know, a lot of public input to the city council about specific types of zoning, they may make note of that and decide to take certain specific zoning issues up. But the mechanism, if you don't like what you're seeing happening at the planning board, is not to come and yell at the planning board and expect them to say no to applications, is to talk to the city council.
And just for everybody, there's, there is a process to modify the zoning code through the zoning board of appeals.
Yes. Sorry, I forgot that.
So that's the other way. You can either go to the council and ask them to change the law, and that involves a public hearing and a certain amount of timeframe. It usually takes at least two months, usually three or four months to change the zoning law, just even for something small. And if you're going to do a major rewrite of the zoning law, you know, you have to do an environmental impact statement, and, you know, you have to do a lot more work. So there is a mechanism that's enabled by state law called the zoning board of appeals, that if you have a specific requirement in the zoning code that you can't meet, but you think is reasonable, and doesn't do harm to your neighbors, and there's a whole set of criteria that the ZBA has to abide by, you can go and make an application to the zoning board to change the side yard variance from, you know, 10 feet to 8 feet or whatever, or change the height of the building from 28 to 32, or if you have a good rationale and it doesn't, you can make the case that the area variance is not significant, and the balance of harm is not apparent in the neighborhood, then you can convince the ZBA perhaps to change that provision of law for your particular project.
That's a good point. And then that zoning variance carries then with the property.
Yes.
So in effect, you're changing the zoning through the variance application and approval process.
And the planning board does not have that right.
Right.
Unless there's something specific in the law that says, for this type of situation, you can, you know, make exceptions or waive provisions or whatever. So in certain circumstances, we can't, we have the zoning-enabled way to make changes. But for the most part, if it's not consistent with the zoning law, you either have to change the proposal, or go get a variance, or get a zoning change. The planning board can't look the other way.
Yeah. Contrary to popular belief, the zoning board does have a real purpose here.
Yes, and there, it's in the, in the state law, everybody, every community has one. And there's a specific set of criteria, plus a lot of case law that people abide by. So it's not just willy-nilly, they, they have to abide by certain criteria as well.
Right. And then we can't then, as a planning board, contradict or ignore.
Right.
A ruling by the zoning board.
The zoning board appeals, makes a decision, then it becomes something that we have to abide by.
Yeah.
As the planning board.
Good primer. Because even though some of us have been doing this a long time, forget. It's helpful. Did that help?
Yes. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Good way to fill the time.
My other question about the natural resources inventory, is there any discussion in the city about making the conservation advisory committee a board?
I haven't heard. I'm not knowledgeable enough about that to know one way or the other, but I haven't heard of it.
What's the distinction between a committee and a board?
You really don't have much teeth or power as a committee.
The board has to follow rules about quorum and other things.
Fair. Okay.
Plus, plus, I think in order, and I'm, I'm speaking really over my knowledge base, but my impression is, is that to become a board, you have to have an inventory, an open space plan to, to.
Right, that's why I was wondering.
You have to meet certain criteria in the state to be able to be elevated from a.
Right.
Committee to a board. And one of those things is to have an open space plan, I think. So they're on the sort of three-step process to do that. But I don't know if that's their intention, or.
They may end up a board whether they know it or not.
I, I don't know.
Well, one of the things about being a board is they would have to have some powers, right?
Yes.
The only thing that I had thought from recent experience that would be useful for that.
One of the things I thought would be useful for the conservation, if it was a conservation advisory board, would be in a situation like the Townsend, where we're dealing with a wetland, right? That would be something where a project could be referred to them as to how to deal with the remediation, if there was a, a development project or other plans that were, that affected our natural resources, the things that they have expertise in, that they could have like a determinative, in some way, judgment about things that would have power, right? Because it makes no sense just to have an advisory board, I think, because of the extra burden, right, of accountability and record keeping, and, you know, consultants and other things that are needed for that. But if there's a compelling case to be made for them to have power over development projects or city initiatives, then that would make sense.
In a lot of ways, the advisory committees do have power if they, if they use it effectively. You know, I, I think, for instance, say, the Greenway Trail Committee, it has a lot of influence over planning board and city council decisions. But that's because they use it very effectively.
Right. But those are conditional things, and it has to do with who is elected at that time, and who's, who the volunteer participants, and how much energy they have, and social capital, and all this other stuff. So sometimes, and I'm not saying that the conservation, that it would need to be a board, but you would, you would, it would be, makes sense for things that have a consistent need for an elevated level of influence than just advisory boards, which sometimes, if something, you know, there are a lot of times when people would be like, yeah, a lot of people say a lot of things, and the, they, the, the energy would be dissipated, people wouldn't be interested in getting involved with something that didn't really have an impact. It depends. It's a, it's a judgment call for elected officials.
The general worry about additional boards is that when you mandate that it has to be referred to conservation advisory, it takes another month for them to have a meeting and to have a, you know, public forum and whatever else. For instance, you know, they could have set up a separate architectural review board. A lot of communities, well, some communities do that, and they have a whole set of other people who review architecture. So the planning board has to refer them to that, and the applicant has to go to a different meeting and do a presentation, and, you know, and get their approval before they come back. So you start putting up multiple layers of boards that, you know, again, a three-month project turns into a eight-month project. So a lot of communities, for instance, do what Beacon did, is they make the planning board the architectural review, and give this body the authority to do the same thing. And they put people on the boards who have the knowledge enough to deal with that, rather than have a separate historic board, or a, or architectural review board, or whatever else.
Right. And since I just.
What you're saying is we have a pretty efficient system here.
Well, I don't know if I would say go that far, but there's some applications that have been around for two or three years.
That's fair.
So the system is not as efficient as it could be, perhaps.
I just, for, I recently applied to the Newburgh Architectural Review Board, which had a totally different setup, even though it was on a Zoom call and things like that. There was a, and it was the initial application for every, every project after the building department, you know, before you went to the planning board or anything else. At first, you had to get the architectural review boards. But Newburgh is a different setup. It has a historic district that's one of the biggest in the state, and there's a lot of controversy about how, the amount of difficulty and importance, and the amount of effort that people, they want people to put into historic preservation versus housing preservation, you know, the infrastructure. It's, it's a, it's a whole issue there that's different than the one at Beacon.
Anything back from Len?
Uh, no, I didn't. Let's see. Nothing.
How long do we go? This hasn't happened since I've been on the board for nearly 20.
Nearly 20 years? I'll take a little extra time to do my commentary on the national resources inventory.
Fantastic. Thank you, John.
I'm in the filler space.
There's Randall. Randall's here.
All right. I don't have to spout off then.
Although, looks like you went to the bathroom. What's he doing?
I went, Randall.
There he is. Never happier to see you, mister. As you can tell, we've been waiting for a quorum. Okay. That makes us a quorum. And I believe I should inform any applicant, we're just a quorum, so I don't think we're making any, well, we are. We're voting on certain things tonight, so any applicant who is concerned about that and would like to hold over, you're welcome to. So with that, welcome, everybody, at this already late hour, to our September meeting of the City Beacon Planning Board. First item of business will be to accept any adds, changes to last month's meeting notes. And I always look to Karen because you usually come up with a few.
I emailed in some notes, so.
Great. So with those modifications, you shared those with Amanda?
Amanda, yes. Kevin did as well.
I also commented.
Okay. Thank you. I'll accept a motion to approve last month's meeting notes with modifications as submitted by Karen and Kevin.
Motion.
Motion by Randall.
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. And with that, we're going to go to our first application item on the agenda. And just bear with me one second while I make sure my computer box is working. And so this is to continue our public hearing for SECRE environmental review on an application for special use permit, site plan approval and subdivision, and public hearing on special, application for special use permit, site plan approval and subdivision, Mirbo and Spa, at Holland de Sei. Good evening.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm Ed Kellogg with Mirbo at Beacon. We weren't certain what order you wanted to go through. I know there's the public hearing, there's a potential negative declaration resolution, or we should just give you a quick update on where we are with the plan submission.
Yeah, I understand you have made some modifications may have impact on SECRE just relative to views. And so, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, just kind of bring us up to date on what's changed since we last met.
Yeah. So since the last meeting, the most significant changes, we've had several conversations with New York State, SHPO. And as a result of that, we submitted new plans, which moves our crescent lot, which wrapped around the cluster of trees right closest to the front entrance of the mansion. And we've also, and that's actually further out to the west, and we've also relocated the sewer main that goes along Mirbo Lane and then goes through the seven-acre subdivision parcel as opposed to following Gatehouse Lane. Still ends out on Grand View, but maybe, Mike, if we can, the more detailed plan?
And if at the same time, if you don't mind, would you mind characterizing SHPO's input to you that precipitated your modification to that crescent park? That'd be helpful.
Yes. I think in the last meeting or two meetings ago, you asked us to get some feedback from SHPO, and it turned out they had already reviewed and commented on the Harchin Archaeological Report, and that was submitted in Chris, which is a database platform back in May, which we weren't aware of until I spoke with, her name is Jessica Schreier at SHPO. So we had conversations. I sent our grading utility plan to her, and we went back and forth, and we ended up showing the 50-foot buffers that surround these sensitive areas. As a result of that, we ended up, you know, moving the crescent lot out of the buffer area. It wasn't in the sensitive areas, which this one is in purple, which is site number one. So we moved it out of the buffer, except for a small sliver of, there's seven parking spots, and there's about three feet in each one, which she has agreed to. That's a fill condition. You can fill over a buffer, you just can't penetrate the ground. So you actually put a geotextile fabric on top of the grass and then fill on top of that. So everything is above, you know, the sensitive area. So she asked us to do that, which we did. At the south end of the site, there's sites five and six, and the sewer line went through the buffer areas of those. We've pulled those out of the buffer, so they are in total avoidance. We've also engaged Harchin, who did the original report, to do a phase-two report in those buffer areas, which will help us delineate where everything is prior to construction. And with that, she recommended that we engage Harchin for an avoidance plan, which I guess is similar to, it's a construction work plan, like in an erosion control plan, that we have to submit to her for record. And that's being done by Harchin. A lot of the notes that she wanted were on our grading plan. And it talks about, you know, how you build in the buffer and, you know, putting up orange construction fencing and just, you know, avoiding that during construction and then also when it will be permanently. So we've already engaged Harchin to submit that report. But as you saw in her letter from last week, that in terms of the impact on the archaeological sites, there's really no further action that she needs to take. And we're just submitting this report, you know, as a matter of record more than anything.
Great.
So that's been the discussions with SHPO. She's been very cooperative.
SHPO, for the audience, is State Historic Preservation Office?
Yeah. It's the Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation. So it's OPRHB, actually. And we're also working with them for the restoration of the mansion as well. So there's a couple of parallel tracks. So that's what we'll do. We'll prepare the avoidance plan, then submit that to her. And, you know, we had a discussion if that makes sense to make certain that cycle is complete prior to the issuance of a building permit. So it all has to be done, you know, prior to any, any type of construction.
Okay. And then at the same time, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you if you had... Yeah, I was just curious. I know that you had interaction with the Greenway Trail Committee, Mayor. Just curious, some of the outcome of that conversation?
Yeah. So I met with the mayor and the city administrator back in the middle of August, and I've spoken to Thomas Wright a couple of times, most recently this morning. Apparently, the idea of having a trail on the east side, our side of the creek, came from the mayor, and it was discussed with the Greenway Trail Committee, and lightly discussed with the previous owner, Barry Cohn. And nothing really ever happened after that. So I met with the mayor and explained the difficulties. I mean, it's, it's not practical for us. It's a significant liability issue. There's significant wetlands down there. You know, we have not had any discussions with the Army Corps of Engineers. At some point, we'll want to reclaim the large lawn, which was next to the school and the tennis courts. You know, some of the trails that we showed on our master plan, you know, they're in the wetlands, but in the wetland, you can do things passively. Like, right now, we could walk, we could walk there if we want. You could walk on a dirt trail. You know, you can't create any type of impervious material, but, you know, we're really not, we don't have all of that thought out as part of this initially. The whole focus is what we're doing on top of the hill as opposed to, you know, down by the wetlands. There's, if there's going to be a mitigation area, it would be the north end of the North Pond, which is really a marsh. It's not really a pond. It looks good, you know, from an aerial and it looks good on a plan, but there's really, you know, it's a foot deep. So that's the area that the Greenway Trail had planned on coming into the site from the north, but there also hasn't been any discussions with the several property owners to the north. So I basically, you know, told the mayor and I told Thomas Wright that it's just not practical for us to include any type of public trail on our side of the creek. It's really meant for the guests, you know, as an amenity. And plus, it really doesn't go anywhere other than going out to South Avenue. And I know that everything's up in the air on the bridge, and so we're just not sure. There's a lot of these moving parts that we're just not involved with. But, so we weren't, you know, we aren't including it as part of our site plan approval for, you know, for this phase.
Yep. Okay. Thanks.
That's kind of where we left it.
I wouldn't want you to speak for either the mayor or the Greenway Trail Committee. So I guess we'll wait to hear specific reporting back on your conversation with them. So thank you for that update.
Okay.
And then just as far as our, and we are in public hearing for SECRE.
Right.
But we want to go to our planner and our engineer for any of their review items that may rise to a level of concern, at least as far as needing to tie ends up for SECRE.
Yeah, we, those are really, that was really the two significant changes on the site plan. You know, we submitted, and Henry will go through, submitted some updates of the view shed. We picked up John Russo's comments, and we have a couple of wells shown on the site now. So there's some detailed, you know, improvements that we included in the latest plan.
Great.
Yeah. We know there's still a long ways to go. I know that, you know, Mike Bodendorf, there's a lot of, you know, detailed calculations for SWIP and for the drainage, and, you know, we understand that. That'll be in the next, the next submission.
Great.
But I think for the most part, you know, we've covered the big picture for those items.
Okay. Thanks. So at this point, we'll go around to...
Do you want Henry to go through?
Oh, did you have more?
Yeah.
Sorry. Don't mean to cut you off. Please. Forgive me.
Talk about, you know, the views.
Ah, thank you. Views are important for SECRE.
Yes. I'm going to touch on the views and bounce off the landscape because that supports what we did in terms of the views. So actually, if you could go back to the landscape, the main landscape plan, it's the first landscape plan, actually. Henry Thomas, Principal and Landscape Architect with the LRC Group. Focus of any efforts on landscape between now and last month have been on working on the, sort of the front views and how landscape supports that. So we've done two big things. One is, for the most part, we've eliminated trees in the foreground of the number-one view, that is, the northerly view toward the mansion. And then, and so it's a much more wide-open view from the street all the way up to the building. It's anchored on the left by the existing material that is where the Ginkgo tree is. There's a mass of existing trees there that sort of anchor that view. On the right-hand side, we've got some planting at the far-right-hand side off of the mansion. And then we've been working on the foreground of the screening massing adjacent to the parking along Route 9. And so we've enhanced that and diversified it. We've got both needled evergreens and broadleaf evergreens and flowering evergreens, so evergreen azaleas. So we've got a variety of textures and materials in there so that it is not a monolithic, excuse me, monolithic mass. It's got a little more depth and a little more height, so that we've, we've basically beefed that up so that it was consistent with the way that we represented the view before. You can go to the next slide, Mike. One other change is because the parking moved from around those beech trees, and you may recall, we had had some clustered plantings on this, I'll call it the Route 9 side of that crescent. Because that parking has moved, we're no longer trying to disguise that or mitigate it. So we've removed that planting out of the meadow, but the large trees all remain. And so for now, that parking lot is, is sort of down and over the other side of the meadow, would certainly be way out of view of anything from the street. And I don't think you'd ever notice, ever see that because of the terrain between the street and that parking. So we've kept that rather light at the moment. In the next slide, I just wanted to note that we really hadn't made any adjustments in those two areas. So now, if we go to the views, and we're focused on two views, this being what we call the number-one view, and this is slightly south of the existing curb cut. This is the existing condition. And again, you can see the existing tree mass I spoke of on the left. And Mike, if you switch to the next slide, you now see a lot of lawn foreground. We've removed the tree clusters that we had along the street. We've removed the dogwoods that were sort of halfway between the street and the building, and we removed some other shade trees that were sited farther back and adjacent to the mansion. There is, John was good enough to note, there is one tree that we left sort of in that midst on the plan, and it is in the code. I just dropped a letter on the plan. But in this view, it would actually be behind that mass of existing trees, so you wouldn't see it in this view. In the next view, it would be to the right and probably just tangentially on the edge of the view that you see of the mansion. So we would be happy to remove that tree.
So this, you're telling me, is an updated view.
Correct.
Looks like you've taken a decent amount of previously planned plantings adjacent to the sidewalk away. Or am I remembering your last iteration differently?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that? We've taken?
It seemed as though where here you have, from the start of this, or from the edge of the sidewalk inward, you have mostly grass, it looks like, right?
Right.
And maybe my memory's not serving me well, but it seemed to me, though, as though I was seeing in the last iteration more differentiated plantings in Birmingham in this zone. Is that right?
I might be thinking of view two.
I was thinking of view two.
You may be thinking of view two. And in this view, you can see, and I can't point to it from here, but you can see beyond the lawn, there's low planting. That's where those dogwood trees were. That's...
Yeah, okay.
And that's, that's between the drive that goes toward the spa and the one that goes to the mansion. So...
There's one dogwood remaining in this project.
I understand. Wouldn't I reasonably expect to see cars parked from this view?
Perhaps you'd get a glimpse of something underneath that tree. We do have some of the shrub massing there, which should be the far end of what we were doing at the southerly side. So that will have the same kind of height. We didn't, honestly, we didn't pound on that in terms of the rendering, but we can elevate that so that that little, little window is more full, if you will.
Is that a concern of yours?
But all the parking, the parking is left of that sidewalk.
Yeah. That was one of my concerns that I wrote the letter, is that you should show cars in that parking lot so we have a sense of whether they're screened or not.
Yeah.
And if they are screened, they can be a dotted line behind the bushes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good.
Okay.
But as it was, you couldn't tell whether it was screening the cars or not because there were no cars.
Yeah.
Indicated on them.
I mean, the reality is, there's a driveway going to the front, there's a driveway going off of the main drive over to that parking area. So there's going to be motion of cars.
It's diff, that's different from a field of parked cars.
Yeah. But we'll show you in the next view.
Oh, great. I can't wait to see. Okay. Thank you.
So this was what we call a view number two, which is over by the southerly existing curb cut. The tree to the right there that you see peeking in is the Ginkgo, the evergreen tree. Above the Jersey barrier there is the Sargent Hemlock that is, you know, so precious. And in this view, if you go to the next slide, Mike, this now is a slight variation on what we showed at the last meeting. We had the same kind of height. It was all... We had the same kind of height, it was all evergreen, but we didn't have any flowering evergreens in there. So this one's got the same kind of height mass in there, and, but it's more diverse in terms of the planting types. At the same time, it's still supplemented by perennials and grasses in the foreground. Now, having gotten John's comments, if you'll go to the next slide, Mike, one of the things, and this isn't necessarily so easy to see, but there were cars in the model, but they were, they actually are behind, so we hadn't done that exercise of illustrating that. And this is not a full parking lot, and so we could put a bunch of more cars in there, but, but they are down and below that line.
So, you're telling me that what we're seeing here, the outline of those cars, is automobiles built in your model?
Correct.
And placed correctly in the model?
Correct.
That's helpful to me.
And they're on the other side.
Thank you.
Right, right.
The ones I'm most concerned with are on the, on the far side of that parking lot where the handicap parking is?
Yeah.
Because those look to me like they'll still be visible.
Gotcha, okay.
And then, the other point is, is that you shouldn't be seeing the spa.
I'm sorry?
You shouldn't be seeing the spa. The code is specific in that new buildings should be screened from the public road so that you can concentrate in, in your view shed of the historic buildings. So, you've done a very good job of screening the hotel and spa building from the side, but not from that frontal view.
Yes, just out of this picture, there are masses that we've introduced that we're Obviously, I think the owner has an interest in having some visibility to their property, to their site.
We, we have a building that also needs to be attractive, you know, to guests that are coming. We think it's a beautiful building, but I don't know how we would accomplish that other than planting a whole bunch of trees right up adjacent to 9D to totally block your view.
Which is what you're doing further south.
The what?
That's what you're doing further south.
Further south, you know, we, a lot of that's already existing.
Yeah, but there's a lot of new, new plantings in there.
This is a wide open area, but, but you want, you want that spa building blocked?
Well, the code says that you're allowed hotel and hotel-related accessory uses and structures with adequate screening of any new structures from surrounding public street views. So the idea is to focus on the historic mansion, not on the new building, to screen the new building. You can certainly, when you come into the site, you'll see the spa, but from the public street, the concept was you would screen anything new and focus on the historic structure and the view towards the historic structure.
I just don't know if we could ever have anything substantial enough to block a three-story building. Yeah.
Well, you're doing it further south. And I know it's supplementing existing, but there's a lot of new plantings in there, too.
So, block, I think, is different than screen, right?
Yes.
So, and then, things grow and mature, right? So, I think we certainly have to take heed of the code.
Yep.
So this idea of screening, I think, needs to be addressed. And, you know, with species that we know at a certain point that will mature, taken care of, should serve that purpose.
Yep.
I think the point is that the code says adequate screening, so, right? It doesn't say completely.
Right, it says block.
And it's within the planning board's discretion to determine what adequate means, given the intent of this particular section of the code.
Is there substantial screening of all the road there, of that whole elevation?
Yeah, I mean, the whole, the whole purpose of this rendering was to talk about how we're going to screen, keep the view of the mansion open, but screen the cars that are in that, that lot, you know, below you, as opposed to screening, you know, a good portion of the spa building. But, maybe, Henry, you could talk about the plantings that are there.
It might be worth mentioning also that I think one of the desires is to move a bulk of that parking wisely from front of the historic view of...
Sorry, if you're going to talk, we can hear you, but the record can't pick you up.
Jonathan Delpas with Mirbo. One of the, at the direction of the board, again wisely, was to move a big bulk of that spa parking lot that was previously between the, the public road and the historic mansion, out of that view shed and move it a little bit more south and east, which then kind of puts it into the exact view shed that we're talking about now, which kind of removes a lot of the area that you could have the plantings. But, in any case, I think if you look at the plan view, that wasn't a focus of our rendering because we just didn't have the comments prior to that. But I think, Henry, you can kind of walk through the screen that is there, and I think it is an important point that it's not complete screening, you can't see it, you know, from the public road, but it's adequate and I guess, you know, kind of tasteful screening.
So, we'll, we'll discuss this around the board, but, and then, and again, in context of adequate, adequate screening in regard to species that will eventually mature and what that means to us, and what we would like to then convey back to the applicant in terms of what we would like to leave you with.
If you can do it as a percentage, or, there's got to be some way that we can get a better sense of exactly what the expectation is. If it's, if it's no visibility in five years, that's different than no visibility in 10, or if it's 80 percent. I mean, if there's some way that you can articulate that, then we can probably work on that. I would want to say, though, that from, from this point south, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time getting that, but you can see, from this point south, it's, it's fairly heavily planted in supplement with the existing trees. So I think what we're really talking about is, is really right in here.
Yeah.
And, and again, there's going to be a point where, as you back up or go north, where we, we may not be able to make it go away. There's going to be a seam where you see it, probably, just practically, in terms of being able to open the other view.
We're not asking you, nor is the code, to ask you to make the building disappear. It's about screening and from key views.
Yeah, and focusing the view on the mansion.
Right.
Right, so we'll, we'll do our best to articulate back to you.
And because it's going to have to be very close to the road, and what we're talking about here is either somebody on foot or somebody in a car, you know, they talk, you know, an eight-foot evergreen will screen a 30-foot building if, if it's close enough.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. All right.
So John started us down the road in terms of what specifically might do the trick.
Yeah, yeah.
But we have, we have other, other experts here that might have an opinion too, or observations for you, I should say.
That's the extent I think we go.
Yeah, I, I just, for a question, but we also thought, you know, we did hire an arborist, but there's, you know, there's the, the Sargent Hemlock there, so we don't want to totally obliterate the view of the Sargent Hemlock as well, because it is a feature of the site. I mean, a lot of the site, it's not just the history of the building, it's the history of the architect, so, architecture of the landscaping, but, so that was one of our concerns as well, but, but we'll come up with something.
Yeah, fair. And again, when it, when it comes from the code, we got to pay attention. Thank you.
And the other thing I wanted you, is you had previously done a view from the new entryway.
The farther, farther inward.
Yes. And since that's going to be the most prominent view as people come through the entrance drive, we should have a rendering from that, too, an updated rendering from there, too. Just so we can, people can see what the entrance drive is going to look like, what your signs are going to look like, all that sort of thing, and how that creates a new view of a mansion that doesn't exist right now because there was a bunch of dead trees and, and a little mound there from that far north.
Okay.
Okay. You good for now, in terms of your presentation? Okay, thanks. So John, anything else?
Just a few things I'm going to mention that are in the letter and they can respond to. They're putting in a left turn lane, that's another new, new item that's been discussed, but this is, I think, the first time we've seen a design for it.
It's on the plan now, right.
So that should be noted, they're putting in a left turn lane there, which means that the road is going to be widened. And Stark, our traffic consultant, looked at it and said that it probably should be widened on your side rather than...
That's, that's what the plan shows. All of the widening is on our side of the road, so the power lines, drainage structures, everything on the east side?
Right.
Is not touched.
And Stark pointed that out to me today, is that that will mean that, you know, you have to move the sidewalk?
Right.
On the west side road, of the road?
Right.
Closer to your buildings?
Right.
And how that might affect the view renderings that you've put out? Does that make a difference?
Yeah, we've taken that into account.
Okay.
All of our planning has respected that left turn turn lane.
Oh, you've already?
Yeah.
Okay, so he wanted to make sure of that, because if you move that 10 or 12 feet to the west, does that change the ability to screen and, and the same way?
It doesn't, we, we've looked at that.
Okay.
And, and, you know, at, at some point, we'll have very detailed, I mean, it's, they're like building plans, we'll have detailed construction documents, you know.
Yeah. And two other things that I suggested is that we should look at the idea of a crosswalk there. They're putting in a left turn lane, there's a major entrance there, there's a park across the street. Perhaps this site and the park should be connected, certainly the sidewalk and, and the park should be connected. And whether the city has an interest in that or not, and whether the applicant has an interest in that, and we should at least talk about.
Does the DOH have an interest in that, too?
DOT?
DOT, excuse me.
DOT doesn't have jurisdiction.
Yeah, that's my understanding, is they don't have jurisdiction over this section of 9D because it's city maintained.
Yeah, from, from, from Tyrone to all the way to Grandview is all by Creighton Manning.
Yeah, you learn something every day.
Yeah.
Because they have purview up, up here.
Yeah.
Interesting.
I, it's a quirk.
Yeah, we haven't included a crosswalk. I know it's been on, you know, repeated comments, but we think it's dangerous. So we, we haven't...
How in the world could a crosswalk be dangerous?
Well, it's right there at the left-hand turn lane, so people making a left-hand turn into the site, and you've got people walking across the street, and it's not...
Well, if you have a marked crosswalk, they stop before they...
I would, I would submit that a crosswalk for a driver indicates that, hey, there might be somebody crossing here, slow down. So, we like crosswalks. But we'll talk about that amongst ourselves as well.
Just wait for your turn. And then, the, the last thing is, I think it would be good for the city, and the Greenway Trail Committee should think about this, is that there should be a walkway that comes up South Avenue and Grandview to connect to the sidewalk that's along the front of the park into the settlement camp, so that you make that connection, a walking connection between the mountain and the Tyrone Bridge area and the new trail down to Cold Spring and everything, so that's a closed loop. And to me, that would be maybe more beneficial than a creek trail, which would be really fraught with difficulties because of the wetlands issue and that. Whereas a stone dust trail on the south side of this property along the street would be connecting up the, a complete pedestrian circulation system that I think is necessary for the city in the long run.
So you're suggesting adjacent to the, the roadway?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like a sidewalk, but it doesn't have to be paved, it would be a trail rather than a sidewalk. Could be.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think there's a lot of city right of way there. So we're, you know, it, again, it goes back to the bridge, what's going to happen with the bridge, and, you know, what I understand is that Sinek Hudson is actually going to make a crossing south of the bridge because there's so much indecision about the bridge. But when the bridge comes to reality, then we're willing to consider that. Because right now, it doesn't go anywhere.
Yeah, fair. So, so it may be a matter of working the timing into the approval as well as the requirement for...
Maybe that's a phase two thing, when the, when the school and the...
Fair.
Development on the south side is done.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're, we're open to consider it, absolutely.
Okay. Great, anything else?
That's good.
So as they've noted, they've been doing a significant amount of work on the site plan, changing utilities, they have done soil testing out there, they will be doing infiltration for stormwater along with bio-retention. They are capable of providing sewer for the entire site, but they have a lot of information they need to provide, updated reports, stormwater report, and they're still working on a lot of the details on the plans at this time.
So, more work still on SWIP?
More work on the SWIP, water and sewer engineers report, the details, and they note that's all forthcoming.
So is it impact SECR at this point? We do have a draft, but I don't think we're ready.
No, they, they are ready. They can, they can actually sort the site, they've done the soil testing, so more or less, they're just sizing different aspects of the stormwater ponds out, but they can provide it on-site.
Views and screening, our previous conversation, might be another matter, as far as SECR. Okay, anything else, Tom?
No.
Board?
I wanted to chime in about the trail and some of the options that would leave open the opportunity in the future, when some of the difficulties that you're discussing and unanswered questions start, might have an opportunity to be resolved either by the city or by other trail developer, you know, like the Fjord Trail, which has a significant amount of funding. And what I, this, the trails that you have laid out on the site plan, right now, indicate like an arrow going towards, at two other, towards where the bridge is, right? The bridge is an open item, it's unclear when, you know, the funding isn't in place, there's plans to do it, there's developments that are contemplated across the creek. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things that are unanswered right now. What I think might be prudent for the city is to in some way indicate that there's a contemplated connection to other trails, right? And I don't know if, just because when, in, when you start developing a phase three, or when other entities start developing either trails or properties adjacent to here, there should be some understanding that the opportunity was, was, was discussed and that the board came to a consensus about whether it was considered a good idea or a bad idea to include it as part of something that, that the city should seriously consider, and that, that this, that your portion of it, right, should be considered as part of the connectivity. Because all the trails that are contemplated, whenever a trail is contemplated in these areas, as you mentioned, it never, it, they never work unless there's connectivity. You have to connect dots, they have to go between one location and another. There's a number of, to the, now, like, to the east of here, towards 9D, you know, where the bridge is, going across and past ARF, right? There's a sewage, there's a, a stormwater easement that we have, there's a sewage line that goes through there, there's already an existing road, there's already infrastructure in place for a part of this trail, and it would seem like it wouldn't be that difficult to, to put all those pieces together at some point. They're not together now, but I think it might make sense to put on this plan that there's a contemplated connectivity to potential trails in the future. They're not, not, all the details aren't worked out, and all of your trails' details probably would change over time, the materials of them, and, and, like you said, there are problems with crossing wetlands and other things that would need to be detailed and, and resolved. But when I was looking at it, it seemed like those were potentially able to be solved, right? And it would either, you know, it might involve a certain amount of money or investment or public support. So that's one of the things I wanted to see if we could discuss, was requesting that that, that a, and some sort of indication that this would be connected to future contemplated trails on this side of the creek.
Forgive me, I should know this. Is there, is there a future contemplated trail as a part of the Comprehensive Plan Committee established on this side of the creek?
No.
I didn't think so. So, future contemplated connections might specifically refer to what John just mentioned in the Cold Spring Trail, right?
I don't know what the Cold Spring Trail is. The Fjord Trail?
Fjord Trail, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, and that's what Central Hudson is looking at, crossing further south.
And that's what we just discussed, and that's what you just agreed as part of phase two, you would consider and look at.
The sidewalk, the walkway.
Yes.
Right.
So, to that extent?
But the Fjord Trail cross, is going to cross the creek further to the south.
I understand, I understand.
It's not coming, you know, if you follow the Central Hudson easements on the south side of South Ave and on the north side of South Ave, our... and on the north side of South Ave, our property, it's about 20 feet above South Ave. So, so for the Fjord Trail to connect to our property or anywhere, you've got to build a bridge.
You need the bridge. I understand. That I totally get. Different trail than I think one that was discussed with the mayor and the committee the other day, right? This idea of moving up the creek.
No, what they talked about was coming from, from Walcott, right, from 9D at the north end, cutting through, there's, is it an SPCA there? There's a bunch of backyards, and then entering our property at the northwest corner.
Right.
And then ending up at South Ave.
Right. Point being, a different trail than the Fjord Trail, and one not contemplated until this very application came before us. And the conversation about what about a trail on that side of the creek through your property came up, right? Not previously contemplated by point, right? Two different trails, one previously contemplated, the other not. Is that clear?
Yeah, it's clear, but yeah. The issue still goes back to introducing a public trail onto private property.
That's my point. The one not previously contemplated. And I'm, I'm just curious, and I'm more directing this to Kevin, however I'm looking at you. But outside of those two trails, the one previously contemplated, the Fjord Trail, and the one not previously contemplated, are there any other trails you're talking about in what you just described?
You're talking about the Fjord Trail and the Fishco Creek Trail, right? Besides those two?
Yes.
What is being contemplated here, what we're discussing right now, right, is whether or not in the future, a, some sort of public accommodation in a trail would be, or a connectivity to existing trails. And I, I'm not even saying that it would have to be public access. It could be gated. Just that there's a connection to a right-of-way. It would be fairly simple because we have an easement already over that, through those backyards that you were discussing, where there's an existing stormwater line or wastewater sanitary trunk interceptor along that area. I just would like to, in some way, I think would be prudent, right, to not preclude that and to allow in the future, because there are a number of things that would have to happen for this trail to happen. It doesn't, you would have to get buy-in to whatever happened. There would have to be a series of investments, public investments and other investments to make the rest of that happen because they aren't adjacent to developed properties like on the other side of the creek where we're.
I understand. So you answered my question. You're talking, you're talking about this newly contemplated trail.
Right.
Right. So, okay. From what I hear, it's, the feasibility is challenging, right, in terms of an engineering aspect of it?
If, if everybody walked the sewer line, which we have, it's, you know, it's half underwater. It's just, it's just not.
And it would, it would require, as you say, Kevin, some investment by the city as well, right? So we have to think about that too. As a member of the board, I personally feel that as far as the Fjord Trail and the willingness of the applicant to consider that, and in consideration of the real engineering challenges of creating a new trail, this newly contemplated trail. That's why I keep saying, there's categories, there's previously planned needing to be connected trails. What we're talking about here is not one of those. It's a brand-new considered trail, right? I personally don't see the necessity for it. What are your thoughts?
I think that a connection, a future connection to the Fjord Trail would be very important. I think a crosswalk would be very important, and more than just a crosswalk, I think, you know, just given the incidents we've had in town recently, you know, it would need to be signed, perhaps, like, you know, making it more evident that there's just a crosswalk as opposed to just the painted stripes on the road. I think it won't take that much, considering all of the landscape planning that you've done to date, which I appreciate greatly. Screening that little, you know, the northern facade of the spa building a little bit better, I don't think really will take all that much from the roadway. And I'm a little bit concerned about the lack of screening along the east side of the Crescent parking, even though I understand that's not going to be visible from the roadway. I think the experience of that large lawn area would be enhanced by not having the parking so exposed.
I kind of agree with what Karen is saying in respect to all this. I don't want to be redundant, but.
So you have a general consensus about the desire to see crosswalk. I think we've been reasonably clear on our position relative to the newly contemplated trail through your property. Appreciate your consideration during phase two for a connection to the Fjord Trail. At this point, any questions before we go to the public for a secret public hearing? Thank you.
No.
Anyone here to speak as a part of the secret public hearing on this matter?
Teresa Kraft. This is an important night for Beacon Development. Look at this full house of concerned residents. Happy. I appreciate that the applicant and their team took into account the concerns and moved the parking and planting mass away from the public's view of the historical and estate and its important view shed. If the planning board wants access to the parks and trails, maybe the city could put the walkway tunnel back under the roadway as seen in historic photos from the Craig House days. The crosswalk the planning board is looking for should be closer to the north park entrance and Ellen Drive. While watching two large-scale commercial projects play out on opposite sides of this city encompassing historic buildings, both must protect their adjacent historic districts. A project of this scale must be a benefit to those surrounding neighbors and not a burden. The Maribou Inn and Spa Project fits nicely within the aesthetics of its ample acreage and its surroundings, while the other project is squeezed in with no breathing room for its surrounding neighbors. Beacon needs more protection for its cultural resources. Like many, I too have watched the Architectural Review Boards in Newburgh and in Poughkeepsie, and their standards are very high. They are not just an arm of the planning boards. We are only one of a few municipalities in the Mid-Hudson Valley region not enrolled in New York State Certified Local Government Program, and I think it's time for a change.
Hi, I'm Thomas Wright. I'm the Chair of the Greenway Trail Committee. I just wanted to make a few points, which hopefully will clarify the discussion a little bit. In terms of the comments about future trail or future connections, I mean, it really, it, this, this trail segment, which we see as connecting the Fishco Creek Greenman Heritage Trail at Walcott Avenue, where it crosses Walcott Avenue, and where it passes through Madam Brett Park, we saw that proposed linkage as an enhancement, both to the Fishco Creek Greenman Heritage Trail and to the other trail, the broader trail networks, trails within Beacon in general. So in, just going back a little bit, I mean, it, it may seem sort of odd that it, we're contemplating a future or as kind of as yet to be contemplated trail, but I would remind you that that is exactly how the Greenway Trail started out. You know, when we first started talking about it, it was a completely kind of hypothetical, you know, situation. And through developing a master plan and having that adopted into the Fishco Creek Development Zone or District, you actually have a situation where you, developers aren't compelled to build and maintain the trail. So all that is to say that we see this as an enhancement to the trail. And not only gaining, that, that this part of the trail would be, would benefit not only from the Fishco Creek Greenman Heritage Trail links, but to the Fjord Trail, which was mentioned. So the, the, it is true, yes, you know, that I had a conversation with Mr. Kellogg this morning in which he said that he would not be willing to allow for public access. And what I said to him was that, while we were, of course, very disappointed, that I'd hoped that we, that the issue could be left open for further discussion in the future. If there is some way to create, create a connection here, I think it would be to the city's benefit. If not over the proposed walking path that they have in the master plan, then perhaps over the, over the sewer easement. One of the other things I would add, and maybe not aware of, there, you mentioned several private property parcels in the ARF parcel. But there's also a large city parcel kind of between those parcels, which I've walked with Councilmember Danny Marblair and Mark Price with the idea of perhaps someday, you know, encouraging the city to consider that as a great location for a park. So that would further enhance, you know, that trail connection. So just to say that there are things that are currently happening now and potentially in the future that would make this a great trail network. Unfortunately, a great addition to the trail network. Unfortunately, it's not part of the Fishco Creek Development District, so we can't compel, or there is nothing to compel them to build it. But I still think it's in the city's best interest, and that's what we would encourage to be, to have that option left open. In terms of liability, just so everybody's aware, and this is something I mentioned to Mr. Kellogg, that the General Obligations Clause indemnifies property owners for injury to users of publicly accessible trails. Thank you.
Marissa Ennis. I'm a property owner to the, thank you, to the north of the lot. I just had a question in regards to, can I ask questions? Or, okay.
You're welcome to, then we'll ask the applicant if they.
I'm sorry.
You're welcome to, and then we'll ask the applicant if they would suggest to answer.
Oh, okay. Thank you. In regards to your discussions regarding a contemplated trail or potential connection, I wasn't quite sure what you were specifying. Would this connection be to the north of the property line from Fishkill Creek up? I'm not sure where the Fjord Trail is. I don't know if I'm explaining that properly.
We're, we're talking about a couple of different trails.
Yeah, I noticed. I wasn't sure if one of them was to the north.
So I think the trail at issue is one not previously contemplated, one not currently a part of the Fishco Creek Corridor Plan and Comprehensive Plan, but one that, as contemplated, would run through part of the applicant's property, then through part of other private properties, and then through a part of city property.
Understood, but I'm just wondering of the direction, the, the location of that, if, if it was on the northern part of, of their property.
I don't know.
Along the creek, to the north, yes.
To the, to the north.
Near the shelter, the animal shelter.
Yes.
It would come out there.
Okay, so it wouldn't necessarily go behind the homes on Ellen Drive? That's all I want to know.
Dr. David Everly. He and I have lived on Slocom Road, that area, for 22 years, seen a lot of changes during that time. I like the development per se, and I appreciate the developers' willingness to work with the ideas that the public presents and as well as the council. I appreciate the council's effort. My biggest question is, I think the neighborhood just to the south of us that we're talking about, that area, one of the nicest neighborhoods in Beacon. And it's particularly nice because we have a lot of people that get out of their apartments and houses and walk, walk with their kids, walk with their spouses, push baby carriages. There's no sidewalks. We come up the street, come up to Grandview, go down. Yeah. Those two roads coming into Grandview are going to increase more traffic. If they can go down and go along Slocom to go south, then it's not compatible making it a walking environment anymore. Plus, when we come up Grandview, there's no sidewalk. Without a sidewalk, it's not safe, you know, for passengers, for people, and baby carriages and children, and people walking their dogs with cars. We need to do some way to limit that traffic, maybe get direct, up directly up the Hilton 9D rather than down the other way. This, and the other question I have is about this. We've been under recent water restriction in Beacon. Are they doing some of the things you suggest in the water restriction, such as recycling water and other things? Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Lottman Owens. I live on Grandview Avenue, on the corner of 9D, directly across from where Maribou's going to be building. I am highly concerned about the two exits that exist on Grandview, which have been stated previously are going to be made active use. I am concerned because it will bring traffic onto Grandview Avenue, which is residential. It'll bring, there is no sidewalk, as this gentleman has said. People do walk. I walk all the time with my children, grandchildren, dog. Many people use that. We don't have a sidewalk. If you increase the traffic, it's going to be that much more unsafe. Beyond that, there's no need to have three exits out of the resort. I can name several resorts that have all of the same things that Maribou's going to have. A hotel, restaurants, wedding venues, spas, open to the public, enter their guests. Mohawk Mountain House, one exit, much larger venue. I've been there many times over 30 years, never had a problem getting in and out. The Sagamore Inn Resort on Bolton Landing, Lake George, same kind of venue, bigger, open to the public, enter guests, you know, residents, guests, whatever. One exit, one entrance. Doesn't feed into any neighborhood except that one street goes through. The Equinox Hotel and Resort in Manchester, Vermont. Been going there for 35 years. Feeds out onto Route 7A. There used to be an exit, it actually still exists, into the neighborhood. It's roped off now. So you, you come in from the main road, you go out to the main road. You do not impact the people living nearby. I just, it just seems, I don't know why they would feel the need for it, but they must think that it'll get used if they're going to, if they're talking about opening them. They should not, they have not been active for over 20 years. When Craig House was in operation, I grew up around here, you never said, oh, God, there's so much traffic coming out of Craig House. You've got to avoid 9D and all that. The, the level of use when they were used decades ago significantly less than what it will be if, let's say, we have a wedding with 250 guests. They're all, you know, they decide they want to cut through the neighborhood, and, you know, just making them go up Grandview Avenue? Well, that won't work for me and my other neighbors because they'll be going past my house. I won't be able to get out of my driveway. And that's not right. That's not right. It's a residential neighborhood. It should remain residential. 9D is a state road, and you can feed out onto that. And, and in terms of the crosswalk, what you need is to have the police patrol that street because they don't do it anymore. street, because they don't do it anymore. I run there every single day, pass Craig House. Cars exceed the 30 mile speed limit by a great deal, 45, 50. I see cars pass across the double solid line, speeding. I've seen a guy recently just pass three cars. And now, there are school buses coming up and down that road. There are people trying to make turns there. So you do need some kind of traffic control out there on 9D, because it's only going to get worse when you've got, you know, even the left-hand turn lane, that, it might help, but a crosswalk there? Mr. Kellogg is correct. People are going to be trying to make a left-hand turn, they're going to be, people will get hit. It should not be anywhere near that left-hand turn. It should be further up or further down, but it's a, it's a highly hazardous road already, and this venue is going to create more congestion, but, you know, it's a state road. What are you going to do? Don't destroy my neighborhood. Don't destroy the neighborhood to the south. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Torrey, Riding Ridge Trail. I still have, I agree with my neighbor that dumping traffic onto Grand View, which is a very sleepy street, is just really, really not a good thing to do. You know, but I do think there should be more entrances and exits from, from 9D, because I just see that grand entrance, I think you have to really take a close look at that. I think that grand entrance is going to be a problem with cars making a left, coming north on 9D, cars making a left out of Miraboo to go north on 9D. I think that's going to be, and then you throw a crosswalk into that, I think that's nuts. I think people are going to get run over. I think you put the crosswalk separately, put it somewhere, that's fine, put the crosswalk, but don't, don't throw it into the mix where you have two car, you know, two different flows of traffic making left-hand turns. I think that's crazy. As far as this trail thing, I, I'm a bit confused. I think everybody in this room is confused. I, I don't know why we would impose upon Miraboo to, to establish a trail through, through their property. It's, there already, there already is a trail, there's a potential trail, that is. It's been sitting around for years. It's called the Tyroondah Bridge. That will cross the creek and allow people access to trails at Madame, Madame Brett State Park. So I don't know why we're imposing upon Miraboo to, to put a trail through there. You know, connecting what to what, I don't know. It's, it's not clear to me. I'm not sure what, but again, the Tyroondah Bridge is the way to go on that. That crosses the creek and will allow people south of the creek to reach trails to the north of the creek. That's the natural trail. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lucille Tenazas, and I'm, I live in one of the two houses at the end of South Avenue, so we are in proximity to the development. I wanted to talk about a couple of issues. One is, the first one is really about the presentation strategy. If there is a way to make the visuals a little more hospitable to people who are listening and watching, I mean, I think that probably putting it on presentation mode or something, and if you're walking through the details of the, of anything that you want to highlight, maybe you could blow it up for our, for our benefit, so, because we don't have a copy. I mean, you don't want to be spreading out handouts.
I'll remind everybody that all of this material is available on the city's website. It's all available to the public, so you can peruse it at your leisure.
Okay, great. Thanks. Okay, the second issue is, I think it's, it's not easy to do an adaptive reuse on a historic building, and I think the challenge that the developers have is really to figure out a way that there is a seamless connection between the old and the new. And I think you're trying to arrive at that, but the, but the issues that I think you're in the, what you brought up in terms of the screening from the public, from the street, I think is really crucial, because we do see that every day. We go in and out of Grand View to in and out of Main Street or whatever when I'm going to the city. And I think it's really important that that integrity is maintained. I don't know what, maybe it's the vegetation, the landscaping, et cetera. You can't really screen it completely, but I think there is a way for that to be achieved in a kind of, I don't know, hospitable way, seamless way, aesthetically consideration, you know? So I'm, I'm a professor of design at Parsons, and I work a lot with architects, landscape architects, urban planners, et cetera. So I, I am aware of the issues that you guys have to confront with, as well as working with the community. All the issues that my two neighbors have brought up in terms of impact in the neighborhood, I will not reiterate, but that is so, you know, I just want to say, yes, ditto, everything is true. So, all of that impact for us, especially that steep hill going down from Grand View, is a reality. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think you'll understand specifically around views, we're going to hold public secret, secret public hearing open until next month. We're going to continue, but we can contemplate noticing site plan public hearing for October, as long as we get through SECR at that same meeting. So, thoughts on that, Board?
I think that makes sense at this point.
I'm fine with that.
Yep. So, I'll accept the motion.
Motion.
Motion by Randall.
Second.
Second by Karen, all in favor.
Aye.
So, I think that completes our business for the evening. Thank you. We'll move to the next item on the agenda. That is to, in fact, actually, I'm going to recommend a quick one-minute break. Excuse me. I think we're all back. Thanks for your patience. We're going to continue, and this is the next, I am listed item number three on our agenda. This is a continued public hearing for SECR environmental review on application for subdivision approval, two-lot residential and public hearing on application for subdivision approval, 46 Judson Street. So, forgive me, this is two public hearings.
We're continuing the SECR public hearing.
And then we're closing and opening potentially, yeah.
And you can consider whether you're ready to close it, do a SECR enigma, then open the other public hearing.
Appreciate the sequence, thanks. Sometimes I forget. Evening, how are you?
Good evening, I'm fine, thank you. Glennon Watson from Beatty and Watson, representing 46 Judson Street. What we're, what we're asking for approval of is a two-lot subdivision of a 15,000 square foot parcel into, into two parcels, one about 6,800, and the other, the difference, which my head math won't work right this moment. On the left of the screen, you see the existing condition. The northerly lot is improved with a dwelling which is presently being rebuilt, and a garage building. The application is to divide the property so that there'll be two lots facing Judson Street, and a new house built on the southern, the new southerly lot, along with a single family, I'm sorry, along with a one-car garage. We've responded to several memos by your consultants. I'm proud to say we got Mr. Russo down to like two comments this time.
No, no easy task.
There may be a record.
No easy task. Good job.
And, and we've, we did want to point out one thing in my cover letter to you, I believe I pointed out in error that we had made on posting the area of the building. We've adjusted the area down, the building down to that area. We have rerouted the drainage, and we've captured virtually all of the drainage on, that, all of the increased drainage, and we captured the, the sump pump drain from the new, from the existing house, and rooted that through, through the property and into the catch basin, the city catch basin, the corner of the property. So any question of infiltration into the sanitary sewer has been, we believe has been addressed. We've added landscaping to the plan for your planners' recommendation. I think we've gone a little further than we had to. I know there have been some comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions I may have, you may have.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and forgive me, I forgot, we noticed site plan public hearing, so we have a sequence of things, but we can certainly get to that.
Oh, excuse me. I just-
Yeah, please.
The Board did ask for part of long-form EAF. We have completed part one, and that was submitted.
Thank you. So with that, John, any thoughts around?
They answered all my comments.
Great. Nice job. Mr. Russo, we're down to three?
Down to three. So we've asked for descriptions to be submitted for the easements, so they can be reviewed. There's a symbol that it was appearing on the one plan. It didn't state what it was anywhere, so we're just asking that to be clarified. And with regards to rock being encountered in some areas, we're asking for notes to be added to the plans with regards to rock removal. If it is encountered, be by mechanical means, not blasting, other methods.
Concerns, good there?
I understand, Will.
Thank you.
Certainly reasonable.
Thank you, John. Nothing, nothing rising to the level of concern around SECR at this point? No, no, they've addressed a lot of the comments. Board, any questions before we go to the public? Comments?
I was wondering if the consultants had-
Microphone, please.
I was wondering if the consultants had looked at, I think, Alan Flynn's, we received a letter from, from Alan Flynn with detailed notes and comments that were very specific, and I didn't know if there was, I wanted to see if there was an opportunity to respond to that, so that we could better understand whether or not this was of material, this materially influenced the application, as it seems to, he seems to be stating, and he's quoting specific code sections and deficiencies in the application. So I didn't know if that had been brought to your attention, or if that was something you could respond to, or if this is the right time to do it.
I don't know if they're in the audience, or that person is in the audience and the applicant could respond. I did see the letter, and if no one else is going to address it, I would address it. But, you know, I'd probably give, have you seen this email that came around?
I have.
Okay, so you could address it if you want, or the, if the person's in the audience, let them speak first. But we can get to that, yes. I thought that was-
Yeah, so, so Kevin, just for your clarification, the, the individuals' comments are entered as a matter of public record, into the record, so they've been documented and hereby noted. And so, the applicant can, should they wish, address those. So, and again, if the individuals here who made those comments would like to raise them here, hopefully not being redundant but concise, may also share their thoughts through the public hearing. Again, we are in public hearing specific to SECR, so I just want to remind everybody of that. We will have another public hearing regarding, as is many of the issues addressed in this particular letter, more germane to the site plan.
Yeah, that's true.
So, just, I just want to make the distinction. Sometimes we hear a lot of feedback in SECR public hearing that is relevant to site plan public hearing, so more for the public. They're two different things, so. Right. Anything else around the Board before we go to public?
I'm not sure if this is a SECR issue, but they're proposing five new trees, which I'm happy to see, but they're all the same species, and it's a species, it's a red maple, and I would just encourage them to use, diversify their tree selection.
Just curious, any specific issues with red maple?
Well, no, it's just that they get overplanted. Everyone plants red maple, so should down the road, we have a virus or something bug that, you know, attacks red maples, it helps limit the impact by having multiple-
Diversity strengthens.
Yes.
I believe that would also answer one of Mr. Flynn's comments.
So, your thoughts on bringing diversity to your tree species?
Happy to do that.
Great. Well, so we'll look forward to how you interpret that and share back to us how you would like to do that in your next iteration. Thank you. Great, we'll go to the public.
Since there are seven scheduled public hearings on tonight's agenda, I only have one combined thing to read, okay? "I'm asking that you please do not approve this subdivision. These proposed massive and scale buildings are too large for the existing neighborhood streetscape. This neighborhood does not call for high-density housing. I appeal to you for better judgment and ask that you do not vote to set a precedent for splitting up our neighborhood's characters. Please listen to the residents of Beacon, where you work for the people. The surrounding neighbors have voiced their objections and signed letters showing disapproval of the scale of this proposed project. Please put a stop to these developers, independent or corporate, from profit generating on the backs of our community residents at the sole expense of our quality of life. I'm pretty sure most of us here have settled in Beacon for the majestic beauty and the nature that this small city affords us. We do not need to be a cookie cutter suburbia or a high-density city. We do not, we need to be set apart. That's what made Beacon special, and we're losing that quality daily." Thank you.
Hey, Teresa, one sec. I got a question for you. You don't have to answer it if you don't want, but you're welcome to. Thank you for your comments.
I'm hungry and cold.
Me too. So, second question. Were you here for our earlier conversation while we were waiting for our other board member?
I was, actually. I was talking about open spaces and green.
Yeah, great. So, so you're clear on who you might better direct those comments to, right? Which Board, which body?
Well, I think it needs to get out to the, to the people in this building, so.
You understand what our purview is. I just want to-
I do. I know that your hands are tied to a lot, but a lot of times it feels like these projects come in and they're already a done deal, so I'll leave it at that.
Anyone else?
Rach Rifkin, River Ridge.
Microphone, please.
Yes, I'm in short, as stated, River Ridge. So how is now the process going forward with City Council? Is Planning Board involved? Because I came here, I spent my whole day for 111 Walcott Avenue, which was changed. Everybody has a right to change, but did we just say that City Council is now responsible?
For what?
Earlier, earlier in the meeting.
No.
City Council.
No, we didn't. And look, this, so if you'd like clarification on an earlier part of our conversation, you're welcome to ask a specific question, but I don't know what you're asking right now.
So the specific question is, so who gives the right of approval for a project?
That's a, that's a very broad question. We don't have time to get into that right now.
Was there any-
Do you have comments specific to SECR public hearing for this application?
Okay.
That's what this public hearing is for right now.
Okay, thank you. So the gentleman from 111 Walcott Avenue-
Does, we're not talking about that application right now?
I understand I'm not to talk about that, but I changed my whole day, so I have to say something. So City Council or Planning Board does the approvals?
The application for Walcott was taken off the agenda by the applicant. Does that answer your question?
I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I live on the corner of Union and Judson. And I just want to say, I want to thank you first off for spending so much time on these things, and for reviewing the stormwater runoff so well, and I think that's been addressed really nicely. That was my main concern, because I'm on the low end of that whole intersection by about seven or eight feet. So thank you for that. I did want to just speak briefly to Alan Flynn's comments, because I think they're really good. The, the Union Street side of the house is quite expansive. You know, it's like, it looks like it's about 60 feet from what I can tell on the plan. And I understand you're the Architectural Review Board, but like, when does that process happen? I'm not clear on that.
For this particular application, ARB does not apply.
Yeah, okay.
Certificate of appropriateness for when the individual comes to build a house.
Uh huh.
Would. So that's different than the ARB.
In terms of its size.
But, in terms of size, that's the zoning.
Okay.
That's us to make sure that they're in compliance with the zoning.
Right, all right.
They currently are.
So no Architectural Review Board on this one?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I live in the immediate area. I'm at 34 Justin Street. I have 15 residents here, signed a petition against this application, and some of the residents are...want to be in possible litigation if this application goes any further consistent.
Have you submitted it to the city?
No.
Then that's the mechanism.
Okay.
Thank you.
I want to make sure I get copies before I do that.
Yeah.
I just want to...can I just read the general one? And there's like 15 or 16 against it, so. And here's what it says. "I, the person's name, disagree with the proposed subdivision of 46 Judson," and 16 people are against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Anyone else?
So I introduced myself last time. I do work for Paula. I'm often kind of just around on Judson, and with this petition, I think they were saying the square footage of the house was going to be 4,000 square feet, something crazy, and neighbors are talking. Actually, after the last meeting, we did decrease the size of the house. We also made sure not to take down that tree that was discussed last week, so I did just want to note that, because I'm not sure what the size that all the neighbors think the house is going to be, but it was adjusted, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you...does the applicant wish to address, what's it, Mr. Flynn's?
I think the rest...basically, the remainder of his comments have to do more with code than they do with SECRE.
You're right. Or any of the other comments here? No? Okay.
No.
Thank you. Any other thoughts, comments, questions by the board?
The only other thing that may have relevance for SECRE that was in that email was the location of the red maple on the far northeast corner, which was close to their pool.
And that was my comment with regard to changing the species of the trees.
And you might want to move it away from that corner so that the leaves and the shade don't block their pool, which is very close to the property line.
An additional screening that was mentioned as being protective of his privacy, we don't have any problem with that.
Okay.
So this is the 60 to 80-foot tall tree will completely shade pool within 10 to 15 years?
Right.
That's the note?
So we'll take that out, and we'll put in something smaller and something a little more hedge-like kind of planting that will provide some screening between the two pieces of property. But that really is screening the existing house. That's not an impact that's going to be caused by the new house.
Fair. Okay, thank you. Anything else, Board? Motion to close SECRE public hearing?
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to open. Sorry, oh, excuse me, we have the draft neg...sorry, jumping ahead. We do have the neg deck as drafted by Jen's office. Any thoughts, comments, questions on that?
No.
I'll accept a motion to adopt negative declaration.
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
So then, now, we will entertain a motion to open site plan public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Randall.
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Anyone from the public? Site plan public hearing. I mentioned before, they're two different public hearings, different topics, but I guess since we've covered site plan topics under SECRE, then...
We can address those other comments about setbacks and that sort of thing.
Fair. Would the applicant like to...if you'd like?
Yes, Mr. Flynn made two comments with regard to the...with regard specifically to the setback of the building from Union. He did point out an error of about a half foot that he was correct about, and we will correct that.
Fair.
And it's about a half foot too small, maybe a little bit more than that. But, and we will correct that, that will probably reduce the building by a few inches to accomplish two goals. He cites the section of the law...I have it here, so...
Says 223-13K?
13K, yeah.
Okay, yeah, 13...13K is the one that allows the setback from Union to be smaller, to 25% of the lot. It is not governed...and that's why it's there. It's not governed by the front line of the existing buildings along the street. And I believe that's a permissive rule, and it...and I believe, it's my belief, that it's put in there so that somebody who has a corner lot isn't really too constrained in terms of what he can build on. And we did take advantage of that, so we could get the garage, the single car garage in on the other side. But we will take care of that minor...
13K is really the front setback, to be consistent with houses on the street.
I'm sorry, it's J then. That's J is the one. I was...I should have fished a little bit better. His reference to 13K doesn't apply in this particular case. I looked at houses within 250 feet of each side. You'll see there's at least one house that's closer to the road. There's only one house on that block that's facing...that's Mr. Flynn's house. So it's...when you read through that law, that law is trying to generate a consistent line of houses that give a sort of a streetscape look of the houses, all being a kind of a similar setback, so they sort of look...some might say regimented, some might say nicely proportioned. I would say nicely proportioned. I agree with that notion, but there's no justification for it against along Union, because first of all, there's only one house within 250 feet to the east. That's Mr. Flynn's house. So it's hard to see how you can accumulate a streetscape in that sense. There are two houses within 250 feet to the west. They are across Judson Street, and they are both well closer to the road than Mr. Flynn's house. So I think that's really applying that rule on Judson, on Union is a non-issue. It's just, it's not applicable issue, and that's our position on it.
John, does this comport with your understanding?
What's that?
Does this comport with your understanding of the application of the code?
Well, first of all, 13K refers to the front setback, the front yard setback, which is Judson, not Union.
Yep.
And they're complying with that because the porch is consistent with the houses to the north.
That's correct.
So Union really, you know, is a side yard. Now, it's a corner lot, so this has to have a bigger side yard than normal, but the 13K really doesn't apply to side yard, it applies to front yards.
Okay.
And they, you know, if you can see the house on the plan here, it's setback further, and the house across the street is setback closer. So they're sort of splitting the difference.
Yep.
So I don't think the argument there...now, it's not an enclosed porch on the Judson side, but the architecture on this house is not done. It very well might end up being an enclosed porch or a porch that you would want to have in the proper location for a setback. So, because other houses along the street have roofed porches, so.
Correct. Thank you.
I think the house is set within the code and consistent with the intent of the code.
Thank you. Actually, I'm reading a note from another member of the public submitted by Carolyn Eisner, indicating observance of some construction ensued currently, ongoing. Is that the case?
That is the case, and I think I mentioned that at the beginning of the last public hearing on this, which was about six minutes ago.
Forgive me. In fact, you forget, it was a long time ago.
The existing house is being reconstructed now, and that's got a permit, and that's ongoing.
So it's permitted renovation on the existing house?
Yes, it's permitted renovation.
Fair. Thank you.
And the other thing, I think it should be useful for the public to know, is that this board doesn't review single-family houses typically, other than...
Under ARB.
Yeah, under the RB. It only...if, when the developer or the builder is ready to build it, they come in and show the house.
For certificate of appropriateness.
But this is a concept...
Exactly.
At this point, right?
Yeah, yes.
And the footprint and the...as long as it stays consistent with setbacks and everything...
Yes, the footprint is...the footprint that I mentioned a moment ago is likely to get a little bit smaller to make up that error that's on my map. And then, I think we can take a couple of feet off the back, a foot or so off the back, and get it...but if you look around that, within a couple of blocks, there are some houses that are nearly as big, and it's not...there are smaller houses, no question about it, but this is among several larger houses.
And the planning board doesn't deal with the size of a house, as long as it's within the setbacks. We can't regulate whether it's 3,000 or 2,500 or 3,500. That's not in the code.
On this, comply with zoning. Right.
Yeah, complies with the coding, and through the architecture, you can maybe break up big-scale buildings and whatever, but we don't regulate size of houses as long as it fits within the building envelope.
Very useful distinction. Thank you, John. Anyone else from the public? Site plan public hearing.
Caroline Eisner, you were referring to my letter. So, you know, you keep saying, if you were to be in the neighborhood and you notice these things, have...I mean, has anyone gone and looked what this block looks like and what it will look like if there's a big, long house along Union? It's going to block, and it's going to shadow the two houses to the west, on the other side of Union. Alan is losing all of his light. Linda is having a house, the one right next to it, is losing all of her light, and you say that you can't say anything about the size of a house. When I did my house, and Paula was my contractor, and that's why I'm so concerned, when I did...excuse me, be polite. When I did my house, I had to wait a whole other month because the neighbors were not in agreement with the size of my house, that my house was going to be. They were concerned that it fit the neighborhood in look, and they were concerned that I did not block their views. And we had to wait additional time, and I even set...I even left some of the deck, some of the house that was going to go larger. I set it back because my neighbors were going to lose the view of one of their children's bedroom. I don't...I don't get how that doesn't matter. These are two, 3,000-plus-square-foot houses where there was one 1,800-square-foot house. How is that possible? And when you talk about other houses in the neighborhood being the same size, those houses are up against each other. Everyone looks at them and says, how could that have happened? And her house on Russell Street and the house on Churchill are too large for the lots. And they...excuse me, I am speaking. And they are too large for the lots, and there's nothing to be done about it now. And I just wish you could hear us in the neighborhood, I've only been there two years, that it's going to change everything in that neighborhood. You say you can't do anything about size, but how is it going to look? How is it going to fit? Going down Union Street is going to feel like going past an apartment building. It's going to be all shadow and big house. She builds big houses that are just big. There's no reason they need to be that big. Okay? I would also like some politeness, please. Okay?
Thank you.
Wait, politeness, right? I gave other people time to talk.
All right, we're done with this.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
John, I want to submit my information to the...
Did you have something to add?
I know, I just wanted to submit this...
To the city?
Yeah. 3260.
Thank you.
I have a question about the appropriateness issue. Is that...does that come up in site plan, or is that just a historical overlay district issue?
There is no site plan. There's no site plan required for single-family homes. So for subdivision, I think, as we mentioned before, this is a conceptual layout. The applicant is ultimately going to have to pull a building permit and go through the building department process, but just this is the creation of the lot and making sure that a zoning-compliant house can fit on that lot through the subdivision process.
Which currently...
Does.
Does.
Correct.
Again, I'll repeat that. This goes back to our earlier conversations about what we do.
There might be some confusion, because you announced that this was a site plan public hearing. It's really a subdivision.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's a subdivision.
Subdivision.
So there's no site plan on single-family houses. It's just the division of the parcel into two legal lots that are allowed by zoning, which is set by the council.
Zoning compliance.
And the setbacks are set by the council. When this house is ready to be built, it will come to the board for architectural review. And maybe those sorts of issues can be addressed, but there's no size limitation in the code.
Right.
So it's not like you can tell them they can't be X number of feet, as long as it fits within the boundaries of the subdivided lot.
Thank you, and forgive me if I lent to any confusion by mistakenly referring to this as site plan as opposed to subdivision. Forgive me. Hi.
Hi, I'd just like to comment. My name is Paula Dowd, I'm a builder. Contrary to what Ms. Eisner is saying, I take a lot of pride in what I do, and contrary to what Mr. Lynn said, or Flynn, the other letter, I'm here to stay. I love Beacon. I've been here since 2015. I did what I do in Cambridge, Mass. for 25 years. I've done maybe four restorations in Beacon and two new builds. And contrary to what Ms. Eisner said, I didn't add one square foot to Churchill. I restored it. In fact, the original mansard had fallen down. It had just crumbled down, and I rebuilt it, rebuilt the brick foundation. It was one of the first houses on Churchill. I take pride in what I do. I love building. My buildings speak for themselves. I'm writing a book on all the properties that I restore, rebuild, and the history of how they were built and why they were built in Beacon. So that's all I have to say, and I really want the neighbors to be happy, and, you know, I'm very lucky to have Glenn working with me. We'll do what we can do to lessen any, you know, light we may take away, but the sizes that have been quoted here are completely wrong. Glenn has everything in writing, so thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Second by Randall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. No objections. And then we have the ability to, let's discuss, authorize Jen's office to draft for approval, for subdivision approval, for our review next month. So I'll accept a motion unless there's other questions or discussion. Motion by Randall.
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
See you next month. Thank you. So we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is public hearing for site plan approval to Cross Street, 4...
which is public hearing for site plan approval, Two Cross Street, Four Cross Street slash 172 Main. This is a three-story mixed-use building submitted by Hudson Todd LLC. Good evening. I'll accept a motion to open the site plan, public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Randall.
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, hi. Good evening.
How are you?
I'm well. How are you?
Great, thanks. Good evening. Excuse me, my name's Austin Harris. I'm here representing the, the development team for Two Cross Street. This is a new development on the corner of Main and Cross. It'll be a residential development with commercial on the ground floor. The residential development will have a total of 18 units. Nine of those units are dedicated to affordable senior apartments. That's part of a special New York State program. So I prepared this short presentation for the public meeting. Just wanted to give a little context to the site. The team understands how important this site is in the heart of the Beacon community. And, you know, this site has gone through a lot of transformation over the, over the years. The photo you see here on the left side is sort of a historic photo of that beautiful Main Street, and you'll see the beacon glass building down in the middle of this photo. And our site is kind of to the right behind those trees. And then to the right of this is a photo from 1987, when there was a pizzeria on that, on that site. And the, the point here is that, you know, the site has transformed over the years and, and now sort of a, a wonderful community amenity, and we've sort of understand that and understand sort of the sensitive nature of this site, and we took pains on trying to develop something that was sensitive to some of those concerns. So as I mentioned, on the left is the existing site. The site development will include the historic 172 Main Street, and the proposed site on the right includes four onsite parking, and then we have 19 other parking spaces across the street to satisfy the zoning requirements for the parking on this site. Excuse me, I'm cold. One of the things that we did, recognizing that this site is in a historic district, was to take a look at some, take a look at the zoning requirements of the site, and, and particularly sort of the historic guidelines of this site, and one of the examples that was used in these, the guidelines was our neighbor, the Dandario building right next to us. But at any rate, what we did was sort of take cues from this, from the guidelines, how to break up the facade, have a commercial on the, the ground floor, and introducing bay windows. And the goal here was to, to do something that's contemporary into, in a historic district, also being very sensitive to sort of the, the design and, and public engagement of the design. So as I mentioned, on the bottom here is a elevation of, of Main Street, and the buildings graded out are the historic buildings on the site, and as I also mentioned, our, our site development includes 172 Main Street. And then where you see on the top of our development is a greenhouse as for the residence of the, of the, of the building. And again, as, as we've taken cues from the historic guidelines, we try to break up this facade and to break down the massing of the facade, sort of be sensitive to sort of the scale of a historic building in this, this district. And so here is a rendering showing how we feel that this project will develop. And as I mentioned before to the, the planning board, every time I come to Beacon on the weekend, it seems like this site, this corner is sort of like that gateway to the Main Street, and it was very important how we treat that gateway. You know, there's a lot of architectural elements, but I think we wanted to be really subtle on this and sort of, kind of develop a, a plaza on that corner that could be engaged by the, the public. And as I mentioned, we, we really recognize that this site has a lot of history to the neighborhood, and we wanted to sort of continue that community involvement with this site. So what we're proposing on the ground floor is to have a retail establishment that will have sort of this open air about it, so it can spill out to the plaza out front. And the idea here is that, you know, there can be many, many types of activities that can happen at that corner. You can have music. You can have spoken word poetry. You can have readings, or you can have storytime for, for children at that corner. So here's an enlarged rendering of that, what we're sort of envisioning for that corner. And again, it's, we tried to treat that corner with the same materials that are used on the, the public way, so that the public feels as if they're welcome to, to engage in this corner, and then sort of taking the retail and opening it up so that it can kind of spill out to, to, to that, that, that plaza. And the, the idea there is that, you know, you know, there can be many different uses for that, that space. It could be used for an exhibit space, or just used for a place to sort of, a respite place, to sort of have a cup of coffee and, and relax. The other thing that we sort of thought about was murals and how important they are in, in the Beacon community. And so there are opportunities to sort of have an art display on that facade at different times. And we're working closely with the planning board to kind of develop the framework on how that artwork can be implemented on this corner. And so as I mentioned before, our development includes the 172 Main Street. And so what we, what, what's interesting about that building, it's a two-story building. We want to sort of respect some of the architectural elements in that two-story building. So we do have an addition on that building that steps back to kind of respect that and give it the prominence. The other thing that's nice about it, it kind of breaks up the street elevation with, from the historic buildings that are to the east and, and, and our development. So it kind of gives, it kind of gives, it sort of relieves and gives it a break, and then we can have, have this sort of contemporary building on, on this corner. And again, we sort of implemented some of the bay windows that we saw in the design guidelines, but also introduced some of the Juliet balconies. And again, on the ground floor, there will be areas for retail establishment. And then as you turn the corner, we, we have the same treatment, and then the entrance to the residential, that is, on the second and third floor, there'll be an entrance on, on this side. And then on, or toward the north, there's a driveway for the parking, the four onsite parking spaces in there. And then this is just a view down Main Street. Again, what was really great about keeping 172, it kind of keeps the historic fabric of, of that block, but also makes sort of a, a nice break for, for this contemporary development on the corner. And one update for the planning board, I think the last time we talked about was material, brick samples. So I brought some brick samples. I don't know if we want to have that discussion now, but I think we're getting closer to what we would like to see as far as the, the bricks that we want to use on this development.
Yeah, we'd be curious to see what developments have come of that conversation, but probably later in our conversation.
Okay, great.
But thank you. So at this point, just as far as any of the items our planner and engineer have observed about your application, we'll just cover those first. We'll start with John.
Yeah, the only comments I had at this point were on lighting. The fixtures don't meet one specific portion of the code, the color rendering index.
They don't meet?
No.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you properly.
They don't meet the CRI, this coloring rendering index of, of the light. So they're going to have to shift, and the fixtures they have, there's another version of it that has an 80 CRI versus a 70 CRI, so I don't think that's a big issue. The only other thing that I brought up, and this might seem strange, but they, they're proposing to have, there's a series of decorative pole lights along Main Street in that, the western section. And they're proposing to fill one in because there's a little bit of a gap between the, the two fixtures at the end of the block near Cross. And I'm, I'm suggesting that, that may not be necessary, that the Main Street Advisory Committee has looked at the lighting in this area and thinks that it's overdone, and it's sort of a remnant from the days when West End needed security lighting, and now it doesn't. And so the committee has actually suggested of taking out every other light on the West End and using it to replace the high-street lighting in the central section, so there would be consistent lighting, but it would be a little subtler in terms of the, you know, the heavy lumens that are available in that area. If you go there at night, it really is bright.
Are you saying that they are suggesting, or planning, to remove every other?
They've suggested it. It's just an advisory committee, so...
So they're recommending removing every other in this area?
And replacing...
And then taking them and relocating them?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's, thank you.
Because there's high-street, highway-scale street lighting in the central section that we'd like to get rid of. So this would allow the city to do it without having to buy new fixtures.
Got it.
Just relocate them. So at any rate, that's something to think about.
That's a plus.
What's that?
That's a plus. Yeah, so we'll think of it.
Yeah, the, the lighting in the center section of Main Street is really awful. This is low and nice fixtures, but they're really close together. They're only like 30 feet apart, and they're staggered across the street, and so you really get a lot of, you know, go out there after the meeting and look and see if you don't think that that's more lighting than's actually necessary. And the people who live upstairs would probably appreciate.
Yeah, I was just thinking about those individuals specifically. Yeah.
So anyway, something to think about.
Thank you, John. And then, then you note, of which of course we're all aware, regarding the certificate of appropriateness and the fact that the ARB has spent significant time with the applicant on that review. They also reported out to us last month. So the only outstanding piece would be where we stand on that final material, the brick.
And the other thing that I'll still throw out there is the bird issue.
Yes.
You have a lot of ledges in this building on top of the bays and on, around the cornice, and I'm concerned it's just going to end up being bird-nest city with a lot of droppings, and so they have to figure that out.
Right. I think that's one of the things we had talked about briefly last time, where, you know, one of the strategies would be to slope the top cornice line. Sorry. So we, we sloped that cornice line, and Joe Donovan reminded me, we just engaged a bird control consultant.
There aren't such things. All right, good. I don't think slope is enough myself, but, because I battle birds, and you have to have the slope over 45 degrees before it stops them.
Right.
So what you're saying is that what you learn from your bird control consultant, I had no idea such a thing existed.
But there is. I've worked.
You will incorporate to ensure that what you end up with, as far as the detailing for that particular cornice element, deters birds.
Correct. And the same thing with the bay windows.
Yep.
They would perch on, on the top of these bay windows.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, John. Just, I'm curious, just as far as, because I did notice some new nod to planting material within that plaza, or am I, or am I, was I, am I just, did I miss that last month?
It, it was in there last time, and I think that there was a question about the percentages, the, the percent of landscape that we had around the development. So that was in the last submission.
So thanks for reminding me. Okay. Mr. Russo?
So the applicant did prepare drainage report. We did find it acceptable. They will be installing infiltration systems under the parking lots within 152 and infiltrating all of their stormwater back into the ground. We do have concerns with some of the retaining walls that are proposed on the 152. Given the height, they will have to be engineered walls, but we have concerns with their proximity to the property line, as well as the trees being put directly in front of it. They note that, you know, as they work on the design of the walls, that they should have sufficient root, root space, and they don't believe they're going to need easements. I think we need to see those designs now at this time, is the type of walls that you're going to have. I need to know if they're going to be geo-grid in these walls, et cetera, how you're going to actually install these. Even if there isn't geo-grid, you're going to be excavating, and that's going to encroach on the neighboring property possibly. So that needs to be established at this time. On the 152 Main Street parcel, I didn't notice any ADA-compliant parking being put on that parcel. It didn't, I didn't see it on the plan.
There isn't yet. Okay. Yet.
Thanks.
Okay. Acknowledge that it's required.
Yes.
And that it will be incorporated.
All right.
Doesn't mess with your counts? Doesn't mess with your required accounts to implement?
There's room. They could add one or two more stalls.
It's just good practice to have ADA spots in any parking lot, so we're going to look into that and, and try to fit one in over there and not lose any spaces.
Great.
The rest of it is more or less cleanup on construction details.
So I'm curious, as far as the detailing you mentioned relative to the retaining wall, the trees, it sounds like at least what's conceptually planned is somewhat potentially crowded?
It's, yes, it is crowded. It's crowded once against the property line, and the trees are crowded against the wall and the curb line for the parking lot itself.
Thank you. So do you foresee, given that comment, and in thinking ahead to a solution as far as the actual construction detailing, you foresee any evolution of that that would alter your application as regard to that particular area in any way significantly?
We don't, we don't believe that we're going to need one, but we will advance a design to, to help us get more close to the determination of that.
Yeah. Okay.
I should note that they're using tree diamonds, which is a way of putting tree planters in the middle of parking spaces without losing any parking spaces, which is innovative and I don't think exists anywhere else in Beacon.
MTA parking lot?
MTA parking lot, you're right. They didn't do a good job, though.
No, because I'm always, I always avoid those because I'm afraid I'm going to hit it with my...
Yeah, the curbs are way too high. They're only supposed to be high enough for the tires to bump into, not the fenders.
Yeah, which if you're not careful here, you will.
But at any rate, yeah, that's, I'm sorry, I missed that one, but, but it is a, it's an innovative way. The problem is, is when they're up against the retaining wall, you're only getting half the diamond. And so you might not have enough space. So we're going to need like a detail there to make sure that there's enough room to plant a tree that's going to sustain the tree.
Fair. Okay.
Edgewater has it? Remember that.
Yeah, but I think there was more room there, actually. There was more room.
Never heard of it. Okay, anything for the applicant questions or for our planners, planner and consultant, engineer and consultant by the board?
Yes, I just, I have a question about the change in the landscape at the corner, which I agree with you. I feel like last month it was all plaza, and we were concerned about the quantity of green area meeting the code.
This is new.
Okay.
From last time, as I remember it.
So are you, are we, are you bumped up? So are you bumped up to, like, are you just at the requirement?
As I recall, we were just at the requirement.
Okay.
Yeah, it's like 10.1%.
Right.
Okay, because I really appreciated having the Plaza wrap around to both streets. And so I don't know if you can consider along, you know, the, what corner is that? That's the west, the northwest corner of the Plaza. Is there perhaps a way to take some of the green space so that the cross street sidewalk connects to the Plaza and adding the green area to the east side of the Plaza, perhaps? I don't know if it works with the facade, you know, in your design of the facade, but just a thought, because I feel like having flow at the corner as you started with was really helpful for that corner. But I understand that we're, you know.
You could do like stepping stones or a brick sidewalk or something, you know, and that wouldn't deduct from the overall landscaping if you just had a walkway through the, through the green area on the west side.
Right.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think, I think it keeps, it's in keeping with the spirit of that corner currently as sort of a, you know, nice open pass through.
Yeah, that was sort of the intent, is to sort of really make it feel as if, you know, there's no barrier for the public.
Yeah, I liked the initial impulse.
Yeah, I think if you can maneuver it such that you can maintain your percentage and find a way for people to navigate through that Plaza, that would be very advantageous.
I think the tree is well placed and the green space on the east side of the Plaza is helpful. I think having some green in that area is really useful.
Yeah, the one basically marking that corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
Are you talking about some in this area here?
Yeah.
Yeah, on the plans, it shows that's all lawn.
Right, 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 right. We were struggling with sort of keeping it open for the public and meeting some of those requirements.
Yeah.
I guess one question we had.
Would it be possible to manipulate that green space to have some, you know, to basically have it like a permeable, a paved area?
Yeah.
Turf block?
Or something.
You could use like grass blocks or something like that, or?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if that's the most aesthetically appropriate.
No, right, right.
But something.
I think if you put a brick walkway through there or something like that, it wouldn't deduct from the landscaping. We, on 16 Main Street, we sort of encompassed this is a landscaped area even though it had some seating and things in it.
Yeah.
One of the questions we had, and I think we broached this before, is about the green roof that we have on the on the roof of the main building. Does that count at all toward?
It probably should, but it, in the code, I looked at the wording.
Because it is a public benefit to reducing stormwater.
Yes, but it doesn't, it's not publicly accessible, and I think that was the idea.
But it is a public benefit.
I think it's great, and, you know, I applaud any green roofs, but I don't think it applies to the 10%, because otherwise people would just green roof and they have nothing down below, which would be, so.
Can I, can I ask whether or not we can waive the 10%?
As long as you do it into the microphone.
It's possible to waive the 10% in this application for us to do that, right?
No, not in this case. You can waive it if you provide a publicly accessible Plaza equivalent in size, I think. And this is nowhere near equivalent in size.
Do you have any room on the cross street facade? I see that there's some green spaces along the facade. Can you squeeze any more on that?
Well, the question is, would you need to, if we were to manipulate that cross street corner planted area?
Right.
Enough to maintain your percentage?
Right.
I mean, more is good, but.
You could also make the driveway narrower at the throat.
Right.
You know, right now it's 20.
Add it at the driveway. Well, let us take those, the comments back.
Yeah, thank you.
I think we understand that the tenor and sort of the intent.
Okay, to make that west side of the Plaza passable.
Right.
Rather than blocked off, because otherwise it becomes the front yard of the, of the commercial store rather than a public Plaza if you can't cut through there.
Yeah, people's natural tendency is want to cut.
Go inside the tree rather than around the tree.
Yeah. All right, great. We'll go to the public then. Anyone here on this public hearing who would like to share their comments?
I hope somebody else gets up and talks. I'm concerned that Beacon is still allowing high density development, especially on its Main Street. In light of all the public outcry over the past few years and only getting louder today, there is nothing proposed in this current design that has the aesthetic feel of our historic industrial city, a treasure Beaconites are proud of. Visually, I find this extremely hard to look at. It looks like a shopping mall from the 90s. Did you hear this pitch tonight about saving historic characters and the view entering the city? Please go back to the certified letter written to you and the city in May of 2021, when the applicant stated his intention was to maintain the integrity of the existing historic district covering the west portion of Main Street, a goal which we treasure, cherish. That was his words. The plan built out of Cross and Main located in Beacon's historic district and landmark overlay zone is flying under the guise of affordable senior housing. But let's be real here, there is a lot of social services that come with senior housing. Is this the right neighborhood for that type of housing? Is this even a neighborhood? This isn't a senior housing community, it's a box. I hope you watched the City of Beacon Council meeting last week on September 6th. It was a relief to hear a valued professional architect call out the case for quality of materials, something we don't hear in recent discussions with other project developers and their architects, even though the residents have been asking over the past few years, why fake bricks facades are now the norm in this historic brickworks industrial community. If any part of this project goes forward, there better be some real bricks involved. I think the best investment this city can make is to force this developer to scale back this project, make it fit in with its character. We heard years ago, when this project was before the planning board dressed in another envelope, that if he can't build what he wants, he'll just build it somewhere else. I'm still okay with that concept.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Kathleen Maza. I just have a question. I thought I heard you in your discussion talking about green space. And in the, I haven't seen anything, I didn't go online to look, but in what has been rendered here in the pictures, there's no, there's no green on the floor. So I'm, I'm a little confused as to what green space. That's question number one. Question number two, it's called Two Cross Street, and it's here listed as Four Cross Street. I believe there is an existing building called Four Cross Street. Is that going to be coming down? And is that part of this plan, or are we just talking about Two Cross Street? And if we are, why is Four Cross Street here?
Thank you. Would the applicant care to address those questions?
So the question about green space, there are references that capture some of the green space that we have in the back area and update it to show the green space that we have in the Plaza.
Sorry, if I would, yeah, thank you.
So sorry. Forget how tall I am. And about the restoring Four Cross Street, you know, we worked really careful to incorporate 172 Main Street, which is in the historic district. And unfortunately, Four Cross Street is just outside the historic district, and the planning board chose not to include that building in the, in the historic district. So the reason why we demolished, we're proposing to demolish Four Cross Street is to make sort of an efficient plan for affordable housing. So there was a lot of challenges with incorporating Four Cross Street into our plan, but we think we were very successful. We're incorporating the historic fabric of 172 Main Street into this plan.
Thanks. So just to be clear, there's three addresses associated with this application. 172 Main, Two Cross Street, empty lot, Four Cross Street, brick building currently there that is coming down as a part of your proposal.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, the planning board did not make any decision on historic district for the Four Cross Street. The city council did that. It was nominated to be in the historic district, and the council decided not to put it in the historic district.
I appreciate that clarification.
It's not the planning board who does this.
So Director Iyer elsewhere. Anyone else from the public? Okay. So I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion.
Just one more on the green space. If you look online, I guess you didn't show it, but the site plan does show exactly where the green space is, how it's calculated, and how it makes the 10% requirement.
Fair, thank you. So, motion to close on the table by Karen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then I understand we have a, we can authorize NECDAC, or authorize drafting of NECDAC, right? So we'll take them in order. We can also authorize drafting of resolution to adopt.
Do we want to look at the brick first?
Let's do the NECDAC first. So I'll accept a motion to authorize Jen's office to draft NECDAC.
Motion.
Motion by Randall.
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then let's take a look at the brick. Let's just not forget to talk about Jen's office drafting resolution to adopt. So what do you got?
So again, we wanted to use a Roman sized brick with various sizes, 24, 12, and 8. So this gives you a sense of certain size variation of the brick.
Park, do the, do the mic?
Yeah, thanks. We, yeah, we have members who always forget, so.
So I'm not alone.
I won't single anybody out.
So that's the size, that's the size of the brick. And this is closest to the color that we want to use, and it can't, of course, the coloration is not going to work well in here.
Can I see the long ones? Again, so, so.
Thanks.
I don't know whether my eyes are wonky or it's the board, but the longest ones, they look like they're kind of doing this, they're bowed.
Right, this is sort of a sample that they just, you know, they were, deformed bricks that they used. They weren't, not deformed.
Not a great way to sell bricks.
They weren't the best.
I understand.
Rejects.
You know, we quickly tried to get samples just to show you sort of the sizes.
So they threw their clunkers at you?
But, you know, when you spec, when you spec the brick, you can sort of put quality, the type of quality of bricks you're looking for.
That's a long brick. So the top one and the bottom one, those are actual potential lengths?
Right, this is a 24. I mean, you can vary it, I mean, we wanted them to show the longest and the shortest one that was possible.
Yeah.
I mean, you can go with 18 to 12, but it was important for us to show sort of the variation.
Do you spec the ratio of sizes?
Yes, you do, you do. You spec the ratio of size in.
Do you have that?
We haven't gotten that far yet.
And these are dimensional bricks, or they're full-size bricks?
They're full-size bricks. They're full-size bricks, and that face brick, they're full-size.
Oh, they're not, they're full-size.
Full-size brick. This is, I mean, I think we wanted to sort of, yeah, I, I'm sorry if that was not clear. This is full-size bricks.
So you're installing them as you would a full-size brick facade with your shelf angle, your weeples, your, all of that?
Right.
It's a vinegar.
Yeah, I know, I know how it's built. Okay. Interesting. And then so as far as your joint pattern, I don't imagine this is reflective of that.
No, no, this is not reflective of the joint pattern at all.
So we're just looking at size right now?
Just the size, just the variation of size.
Size and color.
And color, and color, correct, correct. We haven't gotten to sort of that percentage of the different sizes and the patterns.
So when, when will we see final patterning for the facades? In terms of what you're, what you're planning?
Yeah.
The joint patterns? I mean, is it a standard running bond that you're proposing?
It's a standard running bond.
Oh, okay.
I think what's more important, sort of the variation of the sizes.
Yeah, I understand. So you all know what, you all know what running bond is. I'm assuming you do, Kevin?
Hi, I, yes, I understand.
Okay. Thoughts?
I'm a little disappointed that you moved away from what was a unique color choice to something more conventional and more broadly accepted, probably.
I think, I think he got guidance from us.
You did. Not me. I pointedly disagreed. That's okay. I have to, I tell you, I liked, one of the things I like about this is the fact that it's, it's in contrast to many of the other buildings that's been, that has been put up.
I would, I would agree with that. Thoughts, Karen or Randall?
I'm, I.
So generally acceptable, the direction you're headed.
Okay.
Okay.
Next steps?
Next steps is for us to discuss authorizing our attorney's office to draft resolution to adopt. Thoughts? I'll accept the motion as such.
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Second by Kevin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, I'm with you.
No, it's, it's a team effort.
It's a team effort, yes. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, go ahead. I want to hear it.
No, it's okay. Maybe some other time. But thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, we are going to, yep. What was our agenda item number five? Now currently for public hearing on application for site plan approval, Artist Studios, 5 Henry, 5 Henry Street. And so first item of business is to discuss a motion to, or otherwise make motion to, open the public hearing. Motion. Motion by Randall.
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You and I, bring him into motion. It's Kenny.
All right, good day, well, good evening. I'm Eliana from MGLS, we are associates with our applicant, Michael Braden. This project is fairly straightforward. There is an existing 11,000 square foot building that the applicant is proposing to redevelop into an artist studio. He is also proposing a few street trees on Chestnut Street and then two on Henry Street, along with some bike racks. There are proposed planters on the exterior of the building as well, and the drain, existing drainage pipes will be revised as, sorry, switched to roof drains. And then I could probably have the applicant speak more on the purpose of this building.
All right, so, yeah, so last time there were some comments about the drains on the side of the building coming off the roof and stuff, and all that is going away. We're going to purely roof drains. We did infiltration exfiltration and the study all, everything went to where it's supposed to go. There was a comment regarding a five-foot spacing between the trees and the walkways. between the trees and the walkway. That's been satisfied, and it's on the set of plans. The existing trees on Henry Street are, there's 42 inches between the sidewalk and the cutout for the tree existing now. We went along with the five-foot, including on the corner, so our existing planter did work. It actually makes it a safer corner because when you walk around that corner, it drops really quickly.
Yeah, I looked at it again, and I agree.
Yeah. So we're hoping we satisfied those elements. We also changed some of our, one of our egress doors, so it's satisfied, so you're not walking along the window. And we actually did an egress plan and provided that to satisfy that. So again, the building is an artist studio for primarily myself with three rental studios, and that's, that's it. Now, it's.
Great. Just reviewing John's notes again. John, anything you want to highlight at this point for the board or the applicant?
Not, relatively minor stuff.
Yeah.
We'd like a detail on the bike rack to see what was going to get put in. There's a lot of lighting fixtures on this, you know, and I know, but I'm just worried it's going to be lit up like a candle, you know, or worse. And so it just seems like there's a lot of lighting.
They're, they're, they're small. So there's, there's lighting just under the canopy, and that's more safety lighting for, you know, people going in and out.
Yep.
And then there was just a couple really small LEDs that are, you know, low wattage.
Yeah, it just seems like there's a lot of them. And I, you know, I'm just worried how it's going to look at night. So either you have, you could do a photometric plan, or you could tell me what the light output on those little lights are. If they're all, you know, 40 watt equivalents or something, maybe that's okay, but if they're.
Yeah, I thought we had that.
If they're 120, you know, or something.
It's going to be low light.
Okay.
I'll say that, right?
All right, all right.
I don't want this lit up. It was all intended to be just little sparkles and stuff like that.
Okay. And you should check with the tree advisory committee on the tree well. You know, they used to have grates everywhere in the city, tree grates, and they're moving away from that because tree grates, you know, grab a lot of litter. They're really hard to keep clean. They can constrict the trees over time. So if you could have some other, you know, check with them to see what they would like on, on the tree well treatment.
Right. I did, I only did the tree grates on the Henry Street side, just because I thought that's a busier location and just.
Yeah, I understand, but it just.
And I'm happy to put in something else, just not pavers, because they actually don't work well with trees. They, they don't allow enough water to get under the permeable pavers. Just, you know, it takes a real soft rain, you know, to go under there. And I've had experience all over the United States with this stuff, and they just don't really work. But the mulch does, but I didn't think that was the right solution here. So I'm happy to do whatever is.
Yeah, just contact the tree advisory committee and see what they want, because they're, they're really supposed to issue recommendations on public, right-of-way trees.
On the, on the bike rack, do you, is there a city standard for that, or can I put a?
You know, inverted U's are the sort of standard, but there's a lot of custom ones out there that look like bicycles, or, you know, you can do something different if you like.
I'm just going to do something simple.
Do something simple. The, the ones that look like bicycles.
No, I just, I just wanted to be.
The only reason, because.
Simple as a inverted U.
Yep. That's basically what we're going to do.
Good. Every single one of my kids.
Yeah.
You know, from now my oldest, when they were tiny, wanted to ride those things. It's just so freaking annoying. If you're on an air and on Main Street with a three-year-old, and they, they won't let you move until they ride those bike-shaped bike racks.
Okay.
Stationary bikes.
Anyway. I have a question, because I couldn't really find info on it. The sidewalk, we were going to redo the sidewalk because it's in rough shape. I had two questions, really. Does the city do that, or do you want me to do that? That's one question.
Let's answer that question. You would be doing that.
I'd be doing that. Okay. And is, because I noticed on Main Street, there's an alternating pattern between wider and narrower bands. I was going to do something similar to that here. Is that appropriate? It's a wider sidewalk in this section. The rest of the sidewalk going down Henry is much narrower.
Yeah. I would opt for just concrete sidewalks, because it's not that wide. Main Street's a lot wider.
Yeah, I think he's talking about the pattern as far as the expansion joints, contraction joints in it. And I would kind of match what's occurring. I wonder if there's somewhat of a city standard. Yeah, it's based, it's potluck on that side right now?
Well, yeah, I walked the street, and it's, it's just kind of, depends on where you are and the banding. But on Main Street, you know, you've got those, you know, thinner and thicker bands, and I thought that would be a nice.
Yeah, usually the thicker bands are every 10 feet. The actual expansion joints are every 10 feet. Contraction joint would be every five feet in between.
Right, I understand that. But you understand, I'm, I'm getting to the point where the CJs are, you know, like 18 inches, and you'll have one that's 24 inches.
Oh, they staggered everything.
You know, it's like alternating.
I think whatever meets your aesthetic that also meets best practice in terms of expansion and control.
Okay, we'll do that, for sure. And, and we'll do something that's interesting and fits in with, you know, existing stuff. All right.
Curious, the artwork that you're planning to install along the.
Chestnut.
Chestnut, South Chestnut. Is that interchangeable at intervals?
Well, I haven't figured that one out yet. Originally, I thought I was going to put up permanent pieces that would be done by local people, you know, sponsor that. And then I thought, well, maybe it should be a rotating thing. You know, it's up for a year, and in the next year, we get a bunch of other students from high school and community colleges to do stuff. I don't know. It's.
This is, I ask only because this is, we're literally neighbors.
Yeah.
This is one of my well-worn paths from my house to Main Street, and it's a nice way to really activate.
Yeah.
A kind of boring part of my walk, anyway. So, thank you. I was just curious.
No, no. So, and, and that's where some of the lighting, the little puck lights, they're just add a little light there, and they wouldn't be on all night. I mean, all this stuff is intended to be shut down, except for.
Yeah, I was more concerned with the lights on the Henry Street side rather than the niche lighting.
Yeah.
And even around the back, it seemed like there was a lot of lights where nobody's going to ever be.
That's emergency exit lighting only.
Well, I think there was path lights also. You had path lights that were.
Like bomb lights all around the back?
Right. They were short.
Okay, well.
It just seemed like a lot of them, more than necessary.
They, they won't be there. I think, I think the person who drew this up snuck a few.
Exuberant. Exuberant.
Yeah.
I think 11 lights on one side and 13 lights on the other side. That certainly meets the Lumen requirement for egress, right?
Yeah.
So anything else, Mr. Russo, on your review?
So they did do an infiltration inflow study. They didn't find any interconnections to the sanitary source system, which is a good thing. With regards to the site plans, there's a lot of information that is shown on the architectural plans that needs to be shifted over to the actual site plan. And the site plan, all the hatching on the site plan needs to be lightened up. You're losing a lot of things. There's, you've got a lighting plan, but I can't even see where the lights are because the hatching covers everything. And they should all be called out as to which light fixtures they are on the plan. So a lot of this is clear on the architecturals, but on the site plans themselves, you can't read it. The legend on the site plan should also be updated and include some of the abbreviations that are presented on the plans. There's an MW there. I'm not sure what specifically that's supposed to represent, and it's noted in several locations. The shrub planting schedule in sheet S3 should be revised to include the quantity of shrubs that you're going to be planting. Right now, it's just trying to state you're going to plant this shrub, but it's not telling me how many of these different plantings you're going to be putting in.
Okay, that, some of it was, I think, due to not knowing what sizes would be available. I've, I've had problems on projects where we specify stuff, and then you go to buy it, and that year, they didn't have the three gallons or five gallons, and quantities change and shift it. And so you're looking for specific numbers of plants?
Yeah, looking for specific numbers. Usually, most people are using, like, for a shrub, usually one gallon. And they're telling us how many are going to go in this area, this area, this area. So this way, when the building inspector goes out, he knows exactly what he's looking for on the site.
And he can make subtle field changes if, you say, you know, I can only get 14 of these and whatever.
Right.
Or we're putting in two gallon here instead of one gallon, so I'm putting half as many, or whatever.
Right.
But give us something that we can sort of hang our hat on, so we have a sense of it.
Now, with regards to the trees, I know you've stated you reached out to the utility companies. Have you heard back from them at all? Not yet. Okay. All right. I still have a concern with the trees being under the wires. I think that's a nice addition to the sidewalk, but I want to make sure that the utility companies don't have a problem with it.
So there are existing trees under the power line now on Henry Street that are bigger than.
Doesn't make it right.
Doesn't make it right.
Yes.
I like that. Okay, I thought they were planted by the city, so.
They may have been. Still doesn't make it right. They're actually now maintained and cut by the city so that they, you don't interfere with the lines, and they look horrible.
Okay, okay. So we, we will continue to try to get hold of that.
Trees are really nice. Would be really nice on Chestnut Street.
Yeah.
So I would work with the utility companies and put the biggest trees you can fit there.
Right. They may have limitations as to height or type of tree, whatever else. Let's know that upfront before you go down this road.
Great. Thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Just a quick question. So you've been referred already to ARB.
Yep.
You're reflecting some signage, proposed signage, the garage sign right at the corner, and then this, I wouldn't even know how to describe the color, but it's almost purple-pink. The.
The non-script sign.
The vending room? Is that what it's called?
Viewing room.
The viewing room. Sorry, I can't read the cursive. Are those signs purview of the ARB as well? Just in terms of.
We don't really review signs unless it's in the historic district. Those are administrative decisions by the building inspector. So that's why I sort of keep referring you to him get a ruling on the signs, because.
Right.
The signs don't technically meet the sign code that I, as far as I can know, but we, we only, only deal with signs in the historic district, not, this is outside the historic district.
So thank you for mentioning just as far as needing to comply with the code, but as well, my question to you is.
Yes, sir.
So thank you for that answer. Would you be open to feedback by the ARB during your review on your signs?
Oh, yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, we have, this was design intent.
Okay.
And we understand that we have to kind of do things. We tried to get it within what we understood to be the regulation, and then go from there.
Took a little work to do there, but thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And then the only other question I have, just as far as the aesthetic, you have the wire mesh planting screen over a significant part of the Henry Street facade with the planters at each of the points. The intention is to grow something that will.
We have two different vines. Yeah, we have two different vines that will grow up on there.
So it will become, if it's one of these invasive, I just planted a clematis, and this thing is just on steroids. I can't believe it. It'll eventually become a significant part of the aesthetic.
Yeah, it'll be a green wall, essentially.
That's, that answered my question. Thank you. The thing went nuts. One season.
They're invasive.
Almost took over my house. I know. I know, I'm sorry. Anyway, anything else around the board?
I would just say, is there something that you could substitute the barberry with? Because that also tends to be invasive around here.
Absolutely. I, I only put it on the list to prevent skateboarders from, like, using the planters as a launching thing.
Oh, we wouldn't have good internet videos to watch them hurting themselves.
No, that's, that's fine. I have, I have no problem with that.
Okay. So we're going to keep the public hearing open for your tour with the ARB. I'm not sure if that's been scheduled yet.
It's Friday.
It is. Okay.
Friday morning.
Perfect. Thank you. And then the only other thing we can discuss here is, this is type two no secret, but we can discuss authorizing Jen to draft resolution to adopt, if you so choose, board.
Public comments first.
Sorry?
Public comments first.
Oh, Jesus. I didn't, pardon my French. I didn't go to the public. Anyone here? Thank you. We've had so many public hearings. Please, anyone here on this application? Absolutely, you do.
This is the Garage Artist Studios. I think this artist studio proposal, whatever the space may be called, is a good project. But there's already an established art gallery called Garage Gallery in Beacon, and it may be confusing to many. I also agree the proposed signage I saw in the agenda submission earlier may be too much of a good thing in its overall size and the visible lighting emitted coexisting in a residential neighborhood. As long as this gets approval using the same footprint, and it doesn't get any higher, I'm okay with its proposed use and location. And are parking calculations in the equation? Just curious.
Thanks. Anyone else?
This meets the parking exemption, 1964 standard. Yeah, there's, there's a provision in the code that if it was existing in 1964 and is not increasing the parking needs by more than 25% of what was in place in 64, that you don't need parking. It's for historic preservation purposes for buildings that are already built and don't have any room for parking so that they can continue to be used. So there's that exemption, and they went to the building inspector, and they agreed that this qualifies.
Thanks, John. Anyone else from the public? Okay. Now, back to what I said before. We'll keep you open until we hear back from the ARB, and we will talk here about authorizing Jen's office to generate draft resolution to adopt. Thoughts?
Makes sense to me.
So is that a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Karen, second by Randall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening. Okay, next on the agenda. Give me a second here. We are going to public hearing for secret, public hearing for secret environmental review and application for subdivision approval, 12 Highland Place. Good evening. I'm going to request a motion to open secret public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Second by Randall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next one's a public hearing, too.
Good evening. Sorry for the delay. Mike Bodendorf, engineer for the applicant with Hudson Land Design Engineers. This is a proposed five-lot subdivision located on Highland Place. It's a 1.07 acre parcel located in the R15 zoning district and the R110 zoning district. The zoning district line bifurcates the site from north to south. The lot sizes range from 5,500 square feet, bear with me one second here, 5,500 square feet in the R15 zoning district, and up to 13,300 square feet in the R110. The existing parcel is bound by three city streets on the west, south, and east side. The west side is Anderson Street, south is Grove Street, and the east side is Highland Place. As I said, we're proposing four new lots from an existing lot with an existing house on it. Three lots would be located in the R15 district on the south end of the parcel, and two of the lots would be located in the R110 zoning district. As you recall, when we originally came in with this plan, we proposed shared driveways for two of the lots and a single driveway for Lot 5, which is located in the northeast corner, under advisement from the board. And its consultants, we are now proposing a share, or, sorry, a private road that all the lots. that all the lots will access from, so we're not going to be adding any new curb cuts to Highland Place. The private road generally sits right in the same location as the existing driveway on that street now. And I just want to submit that we're not seeking any variances. The proposal meets all applicable code in the two zoning districts. We'll be reusing existing sewer and water service connections that service the existing house, but we'll be using those for one of the proposed houses and we'll be putting in new sewer and water services for all the other houses on the site. I believe that's generally it for the initial presentation. Could open up the questions from the board or go over any consultant comments.
Thank you. In normal fashion, we'll start with our consultants and maybe I'll switch it up, just for fun. We'll go to Mr. Russo first, I don't know why. It seems like there's more engineering stuff on this.
Yeah, I actually don't have any significant comments, they addressed all the previous comments I had.
Great, thanks, John.
So the applicant has performed infiltration inflow study. There were no interconnections from anything on the existing site into the sanitary sewer system, with the exception of the sanitary sewer. With regards to the private road, they do have to prepare maintenance agreements that will need to be reviewed by the attorney. Ultimately, those will need to be filed in the county clerk's office, they'll note that's coming. Same with the descriptions for the proposed easements on site. Test pit number one in the deep test pit hole on the right side of the sheet notes block is rock. Just wanted to make sure, wasn't sure if we had buried products...
I appreciate that, I didn't see it until you brought that up.
Or something, okay.
We'll fix that.
You're saying it said red block and it's really...
Well, that's quite common in soil tests in Beacon on various sites where you find block or other items.
Concrete block, brick.
But it was rock, we were hitting rock in the house.
So I just had to confirm.
Okay.
It was actually there.
It's rock.
Got it, okay. I had a comment with regards to the one retaining wall on the house near Lot, or next to the driveway on Lot number three. You know, you'll need guards on that, I'd like to see some grades on those walls, so I know top and bottom grades. One of the basins I'm concerned with, one of the yard basins was eight and a half feet deep. We discussed that, you were going to take a look at that. Lot number five, since they have so much rock on that, that used to show a basement in it. They're no longer going to have a basement, the house is now going to be a slab on grade.
Wow. Is that just one of them?
That's just one of them.
Is that because there's rock?
That's because there's rock, not block.
Not block, thank you.
Some of the other minor details are rim elevations, footing drains, you may not need the footing drain for Lot 5. You don't have a basement there, you're not going to have anything there. With regards to the drainage that's running down Highland Place, I would ask that you take a look at some of the grades on that and possibly also extending that drainage to the north side of the private drive to catch anything coming down from the private drive on the north side there.
Yeah, we're fine with that.
Okay.
Great.
And then the rest has to do with some symbols and some cleanup of construction details.
Okay. No significant concerns noted in regard to SECR at the moment?
No.
Yep, thanks. Board, any significant concerns as regards to SECR?
Last month we had discussed looking at like the expanse of driveways in the backyard. I don't know if you looked at that and made any adjustments, it's hard to tell.
Yeah, and I apologize, I meant to mention that. We did reduce them as much as we could, but we do, still need to provide enough area for two cars to park in each space. So we reduced them to 20 feet.
20 feet in width?
In width.
Yeah.
I have one question. Some of the comments that were sent in to us, one of them mentioned Indiana bat habitat on the site. And I was wondering if I had a question, whose responsibility is it to determine whether that's the case or not? And how do you verify it?
Should be part of the EEF.
I can respond to that. The Indiana bat, there's generally habitat throughout the Hudson Valley for the Indiana bat. Any trees are in play now. It used to be the shag bar hickory, you would look for those. Now it's dead trees, trees with cavities in them. How you avoid impacting the Indiana bat is you only remove trees during their hibernation period. So we'll place a note on the plans that restricts tree clearing to only the hibernation period. And it's, you know, we're only removing seven trees of six inches in diameter or higher from the site and replacing six.
Thanks for that clarification.
And that tree removal period, Kevin, is from the end of October to the end of March. Yeah, end of March.
Yeah.
And that's typical on all plans in the city that involve any tree removal?
Yeah, that's a no, I don't know why we don't have it on our standard sheet, it should just appear on every plan we do.
Usually appears as standard in the resolutions also for every project.
Okay, great.
Does Karen not want to say something about the red...
I do, I do, I would like to say, could you please diversify your tree list?
Absolutely, I expected that to come up from the other application.
Okay, great, anyone from the public who would like to comment during this SECR public hearing? And by the way, State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR.
Good evening, I'm Ms. Paul Lyons, I live on 7 Highland Place. I have to admit, I didn't understand the topic of tonight's meeting. So I called the planning board office, I was told the topic was how this subdivision affects the environment around me. I thought of one word, pollute. What the definition of pollute is to make something or somewhere less suitable. This subdivision will do that to our neighborhood. Do we realize how many trees we will cut down? I count 15, 20 trees and we are the tree city. Where will the runoff water go? I would have to think Highland Place or Anderson Street. How many times will our utilities be affected by the subdivision? How many times will our street be tore up? The street is only 22 feet wide. We're talking about adding five new houses, potentially one on 67 Grove and four on 12 Highland Place, plus the two existing houses. That's seven houses within 250 feet of our doorstep. People have made comments about the traffic and the speed of the traffic that will be created in our neighborhood. One comment from the board was, that is not adding a lot of traffic. I wonder if that's fact or opinion. Last but not least, the removal of the rock, there will be a lot of it. What will this removal of the rock and the dust do to our houses? Will we be able to open our windows? I doubt it. Imagine waking up and having five new houses at your doorstep. The charm of our neighborhood will be gone forever. Please think long and hard about this proposal, about this proposal as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa Kraft. Unfortunately, this developer has plans to alter the quality of life for a quiet residential neighborhood to subdivide a small parcel to fit five homes where one is the norm. This will impact the quality of life for all the surrounding neighborhoods on other nearby streets, including mine. And I can tell you firsthand that this does not make anyone happy. I'm intrigued, the developer came in under another LLC name, so we're not all triggered by the connection to the other larger projects throughout Beacon. Please do not allow this subdivision at this location and please do not allow this to set precedent and encourage this type of subdividing other small lots throughout other Beacon neighborhoods.
Hello, my name is Ann Thomas, I live at 22 Highland Place. I have lived there for 58 years. I know I already wrote you a letter to the planning board, but I just want to reiterate about the rock. My house is right next to Lot 5, which has the most rock. I have, I think when my house was built, it was one of the first ones to get a variance for the setback because of the location of rock. I have a rock garden which extends quite a ways above ground onto Lot 5. So I'm very concerned about the rock in that situation and also because of the sewer. That sanitary sewer is a dead end right in front of my house. Because when they did the sewer, the two houses that are on the other street, on Spruce Street, they had septic until they purchased property down below on Tillage Street so that they could connect to the city sewer. So that's a big problem. And it looks like, right now, I looked at the new plans, it looks like instead of, I said there was two that were going to be added to the sanitary sewer, now it looks like four on Highland Place, which is 100% increase. I know that that sewer line is eight inches and I think that they need to do an assessment of that entire sewer line before they do anything. Because it's going to end up in my basement there. Also, on the road, I know you're only doing one curb cut, but like I said, I've lived there for 58 years and only once in all that time have they ever completely repaved that road. Once in 58 years. So I don't see the city paying attention to our road because we're going to have houses on it and, you know, redo the road. The other thing that I just thought of, we were talking about the private road and I'm sure they're going to have easements to access them, right? There'll be easements?
There'll be easements.
Okay, so I'm thinking mail delivery. The mailman in our neighborhood still walks the neighborhood. I don't think you're going to remove those gabion walls on Grove Street, are you?
No.
Well, I can't see the mailman walking on top of the gabion walls to deliver mail. They're going to be putting boxes on, mailboxes on Highland Place and giving those people Highland Place addresses. So does that qualify that these houses are basing on Grove Street? That's a question to be answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thomas Wright, 24 Grove Street. I apologize if these comments stretch the boundaries of the SECR public comment. My, I'm sorry. This parcel is a good example of the necessity for the planning board to take into consideration the characteristics of the site. Characteristics which in my opinion make adherence to the letter of the zoning code inadvisable. The first is the very steep slope on the west side of the parcel, this is the side that faces Anderson Street. The second is the fact that there is a six to eight foot high gabion style retaining wall along the south parcel line between the parcel and Grove Street. What this means is that the proposed lots two and three of the subdivision are effectively landlocked. I'm assuming that this is why, as proposed, the lots are only accessible through the private road. In other words, there is no frontage or at least no publicly accessible frontage in the common sense of the word, meaning the front that faces the street. I think that there, that those here with an interest in this development would appreciate an explanation of frontage, what it is and what, and why does the subdivision not, why is it not required to have it? Is that a good thing? How is this making the neighborhood better? How is it making the city better? What are we saying when we approve a development that has no relationship to the street? This is more than just a question about where the kids go to knock on the door for trick or treating, but how would that work? That ritual is an expression of civic cooperation and engagement. How does it work when you can't get to the front door? There, is there precedent for this in Beacon? If there is, is it desirable or is it just a matter of two wrongs somehow making a right? Lots one and two call the side that faces Grove Street the front, although as I pointed out, a huge retaining wall on this side mean that this front, this is a front in name only. The side cannot be used as a front. Lot 5 has, also has no direct street access to the, to the house site. Why? I respectfully request that the board at least recommend that the applicant reduce the number of subdivided lots from five to four. By eliminating Lot 3 and rotating lots one and two 90 degrees, lots one, two, and five would all face Highland Street and would have actual frontage, thereby enhancing the street by mimicking the existing pattern of the street instead of disrupting it. Lot 4 could keep the existing driveway, much narrower than the 18 feet required for a private road. With this approach, you could avoid difficult emergency access scenario and you don't create a strange mini gated community that has turned its back on the neighborhood. In regards to trees, as you know from visiting the site, the west slope is heavily wooded. What is the plan to preserve this woodland feel? If there is no plan, why? I would like to bring your attention to the area between the west property line and Anderson Street. The engineer's note calls out existing trees over six inches in diameter at breast height, but the note is pointing to the area outside the property boundary to an area that belongs to the city. Has the applicant secured approval from the city to clear trees in this area? Can we assume that this note indicates that any tree under six inches will be cleared out? Please confirm that the note refers to trees within the subject property and that no trees will be removed in the area west of the property line along Anderson Street. In conclusion, this really looks like a shoehorn to me and to my other neighbors. And for what? So a property owner and developer can squeeze some extra cash out of a lot? And as a result, the property values of the neighbors diminish. Is that fair? Seems like this works against the goal of working to the benefit of Beacon as a whole. As Section 195-20 and subsection A of the zoning code states, "The planning board, in considering an application for the subdivision of land, shall be guided by the following considerations and standards, which standards shall be deemed to be the minimum requirements for convenience, health, safety, and welfare of the city." Let's set our sights on the maximum welfare of the city, not the minimum. Thank you.
Please refrain from any applause or other outbursts, thank you. Next, anyone else?
Good evening. My name's Dan McGee, I live at 16 Spruce Street, so it's basically a few houses down at the meeting of Highland and Spruce. A lot of the concerns that I have have already been echoed by neighbors, but I do want to again call out one that I think, you know, we've talked about the trees, we've talked about the general nature in the area. I cannot think of another wooded lot of this kind of characteristic still in the city of Beacon proper in this way that doesn't abut up against a park or a forest. And I think in that way, it's an incredibly unique space that really does define the neighborhood that has far reaching effects to neighbors on Grove, down to Anderson, to Spruce, to Highland. And I think, as many of the neighbors have said, it really does feel like this is, how many can we get? And not, what does this really do for the city? What's this do for the neighborhood? This shared road, I personally had to say, like that sounds incredibly unappealing in such a small space to share a road between now five homes in a one acre property. And I'm trying to see if there's anything else that I wanted to highlight here that hadn't already been said way more eloquently by, by the other neighbors. I guess the last I would say is, again, this falls a little bit out of the scope of tonight, but with two young kids, I don't know how often I can get to any further follow-up meetings. When we talk about this much construction at once, are these four homes that are going to be built simultaneously? Is it going to be staggered? Something this substantial in a small neighborhood, does that mean that the neighborhood as a whole surrounding in many directions when you're working on the top of a hill can be subject to, you know, one to three years of continuous construction, infrastructure, digging, blasting, whatever is detailed? So I would just ask that the board take a moment to say, especially in light of the last couple of years and many developments that have, I think, caused a lot of sadness in the community about sort of what we end up with at the... about sort of what we end up with at the end and what it contributes, that we also say, in a place like this so unique with one house already present on a small lot, do we need to rush this? Can this be done more thoughtfully in a way that still allows the land to be developed but doesn't diminish from the surrounding neighborhood? Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Jody McCready. I live at 11 Highland Place, directly across the street. I've lived there for about 18 years and certainly less than 58, but I can attest that nothing has ever been done to improve that area. We all know that the biggest issue with the SEACER process is that it only looks at an individual effect and not at a cumulative effect. So I want to add the fact that you are also looking at a subdivision directly across the street from this. And it's only been a few years since the Beacon lofts were built just down the road at the other end of Grove, which certainly increased traffic along Grove, along that steep hill. I don't think that that is a policing issue. I think that that is a building issue. We've increased traffic way too much. We have not widened any roads. We have not added any sidewalks. We have not made any improvements whatsoever. I don't want a police officer stationed at the end of my block every single day. I think that they have better things to be doing. But we're definitely creating traffic issues that we're doing nothing to solve. Environmentally, I don't really see how cutting down the trees while the Indiana bat is hibernating solves the issue of taking away where it lives. I think that we all know that there have been more and more issues of bears wandering around in Beacon. The deer have no place to go. We just keep building on all of the green space and these animals, they just have no place to go. There's nothing left. And as my neighbor mentioned, this is a very unique property. There are very, very few areas like this. I wish that I could have bought it myself because it would have been an amazing property to just build up with a house. There's a great view. It's a great property. This could be such a wonderful opportunity for somebody and I don't understand why there's this need to just cover every square inch for maximum profits and destroy the city. This will be horrible for our neighborhood. Horrible. There are five houses on this block. This is a teeny tiny block. We're talking about building a subdivision. It's a private road that's pretty much off of a private road because the existing road that's coming off of only has five houses. So I don't even understand how it's gotten this far. I know that I'm drifting a little bit from SEACER, but I have to mention that in our City Code, Section 195-24, Lots and Driveways, Subsection J, it says subdivisions with land in two or more zoning districts. It states that if it is necessary for a zoning district boundary to cross a lot, such lot shall be designed so that it can be readily developed in accordance with the standards of the more restrictive zoning district. This lot is split between R15 and R110. According to our City Code, it should be developed in accordance with the most restrictive zoning district, which is R110. We should only be discussing four houses. And four houses would be okay. Not ideal, not wonderful, but they would be okay if the frontage was actually there. But as was just mentioned, the frontage isn't there. Otherwise, we wouldn't be discussing a private road to begin with. Two houses on Highland and two houses on Anderson wouldn't be that disruptive. This is incredibly disruptive to the neighborhood. It is dangerous. There's no place for the cars to go. Two-car driveways for each house. I have three cars in my house right now and my 15-year-old isn't even driving yet and neither is my 11-year-old. People have more cars now. People are going to park on the street. It's a very narrow street. If cars are parked on both sides, there's no room. Trucks won't be able to get through. The garbage trucks won't be able to get through. Emergency vehicles? How are they going to get up and down a private road where there's no place to turn around? There's no way to get out at the other end? This is incredibly dangerous. It's incredibly detrimental to the neighborhood. I have a lot more to say that I'll say for the subdivision public hearing because I know that it doesn't fall under SEACER, but this is horrible, horrible, horrible for the environment, for the safety, for everything about this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Just in reference to what the individual just mentioned around two different zoning districts and one being more restrictive than the other should follow the most restrictive, how does that apply here, if at all?
I'd have to look at that section again, but the lot lines are along the, I think they're talking about split parcels. That if you have a proposed subdivision in which the line goes through the middle of the proposed lot, then it has to be of the more restrictive quality. This one, the lot lines are not split. They're divided between, the city, in its wisdom, decided to run the lot line through the center of this parcel as opposed to, like normally, run it around parcels on parcel lines. I don't know why that was done whenever it was done. But what they're doing, as far as I know, is consistent with the code.
Understood.
I'll take a look at it again.
Yeah, I appreciate that. It's curious, but every application is different.
Yes.
And look, I have to say something because, and of course, understanding every application has a potential impact to its neighbors. We always hope, as neighbors, that those individual parcel owners who are developing their private property hear what their neighbors have to say. But I'll also hearken back to what I thought was a very, very useful conversation that we had at the start of this meeting about what the planning board does and doesn't do, what the planning board can and can't do. So appreciating all of the remarks that we've heard by concerned neighbors, I need to make very clear and I want to emphasize this because I know that there were individuals here listening to that conversation who have shared their comments with us to the effect of, "Planning board, you must not approve this." And when I know those individuals have attended a number of planning board meetings and other meetings, city council, meetings of planning boards in other municipalities, they know how this works. And then make comments that everyone else in the public hears around, "Planning board, you must not approve this", I find that irresponsible. So I just want to make that clear because it's one of the most frustrating things. When we try to be very clear about what we can and can't do, what we have the control over, as volunteers, as careful as we have been and always are with applications, to hear perpetuated that somehow, and to hear by others who might not be as initiated to what we do and how we do it, that "you must not approve this", that's irresponsible. And I just have to say that because it is frustrating. So I'm sorry for my diatribe, but I appreciate your patience with that. So, anyone else from the public?
Hi, Patty Galaberta, 43 Grove Street. I live right across where two of the houses are going to go, where the wire fence is. Years ago, the city of Beacon tried to widen that road. And in the, well, while they were doing it, they destroyed my house. My house has all plaster walls. They did so much banging and banging. My front porch fell apart. It was all stone. It crumbled. My walls, every one of them cracked from this pounding on this rock. If you look at that road today, it's no wider than it was before. Only it has this ugly fence where there used to be nice trees growing, where there used to be a slope. The rock you're talking about going through, how is he going to do it? Is he going to bang again? Are my walls going to fall apart again? What is the method to removing this rock to put a foundation in that has a basement? Or two, or three? I'm very concerned. Been through it once. Just redid my house again. Now we have this? It's rock. So if you can tell me, all right, there's a certain way of doing it without this banging, banging, bang? That went on for what, two years on Grove Street? Two years. I couldn't use my driveway. My mailman couldn't deliver. I carried my groceries from Highland Place. I walked over plank boards. And you know what I still have? A very narrow road in front of my house and an ugly fence. Wall, retaining wall, whatever you want to call it. And what's going to happen to that wall with all this banging? Is it really as strong as they think it is? Is it going to be able to take all these trucks going over it? All this banging? And is that how you remove rock? I'm really asking a question. How do you get rid of this rock? Because we know it's rock. And is that this meeting? I don't know.
Thank you for your question and your comments. I'll leave it to the applicant to decide whether they want to respond to that. Feel free, one second.
Hi there, my name's Everett Gifford. I live at 21 Highland Place, basically right across from the planned subdivision. I don't know if you guys have been there, but as everyone else has already said, it is an extremely steep hills on either side. There really isn't frontage on either side. And I'm not going to go into everything else. I think it's been covered. But according to Section 195-22, Private Road, Subsection A6, and I quote, "The city planning board shall not approve the use of a private road in a subdivision if it is determined that the use of said private road is not consistent with the health, safety, welfare, and convenience of the proposed users of the road and the city in general." So when you say you don't have any say over that, I beg to differ. So I just want to let that be heard. Thank you.
That's not what I said, but thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Does the applicant want to respond to the question about rock removal?
So first of all, we did do test pits on the site and we found that there's a lot more depth of soil in the areas where we did in the center of every house. Lots one, two, and three, we got pretty good deep depths there. If we hit hard rock, there is the option to not have a basement in those houses. We're already committed to not having a basement on Lot 5. As far as rock removal, there will be some. For utilities, whatever, it will be removed by mechanical means. There'll be no blasting. But mechanical means, rock hammering, that's the way you remove rock if it's not diggable.
Appreciate that. Look, I want to be clear. I'm not expressing my frustration by the fact that people are sharing their deep and real concerns because not only are we listening and we're affecting this application, as we do any other, to the best of our ability as a planning board within our purview and what we can legally do. I want you to know also that we care. We live here. The applicant is listening too. So I hope the applicant is hearing as well. And in regard to a lot of the issues raised, the best we can do is hope that the applicant hears, understands the concerns, and themselves respond. So I just want to put that out there too. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, my name is Mary St. John. I live on 18 Overlook Ave, right around the corner. I have, I'm so grateful for all my neighbors being very articulate about all the issues that I agree with. I am also really concerned about the digging into the rock and the sound issue that that will create. I think somebody asked a really good question about, is this construction going to be staggered? Is it going to happen at the same time? Is that something that can be answered at this point? How much sound is allowed? I mean, if we're going to be banging, how many years are we going to be listening to that? A lot of people work from home now, okay? And I cannot hear that for eight hours a day. A lot of people have children. They take naps. People sleep. You know, there's a lot of things that go on. This is, you know, this is a small neighborhood. And are there, are any of those questions able to be answered right now?
If the applicant chooses to answer, yeah.
Or we can find out and answer?
Exactly. We can certainly find out and
Okay, great.
Enter that into the public record as well. So.
The intent is to get all of the utility work and infrastructure in place upfront so that then we're just digging foundations and building homes. Probably going to be all done simultaneously and not dragged out over years. Would be maybe a one, one and a half year project to complete.
So I'm hearing one phase, one and a half year potentially Yes. Total duration. Good. However, you may want to, since you're hearing questions and concerns by your neighbors, describe what your activities may do to impact their quality of life as far as noise? Because that, I believe, was the expressed concern.
As Mike mentioned, we dug test holes. We feel we can get full basements on the three lots along Union Street. The one lot that's going to be on Highland Place, the larger parcel, is actually going to be a home that I'm going to build for my son, who's going to live there. That's going to not have a basement because of the rock that's there. I can commit that we won't work Saturdays. It'll be Monday to Friday work schedule. The amount of rock, I don't know. We dug test holes, as I said, over on the Grove Street side and hoping that there's minimal rock. Till we get into it, I won't know.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I'm sorry, I just don't understand. So in a small town where people live and do work from home post-COVID, we're in a different world now. I know 20 of my neighbors work from home. Can you raise your hands, people who work from home? This is a small neighborhood. I mean, I think we need to have a new consideration regarding...
So the hours of construction is something that the city puts limits on
Okay.
that the applicant must adhere to. If the group here, the neighbors, have concerns and the applicant is listening and is willing to further the discussion with you so that he's able to allay your concerns and fears, that's another avenue.
Okay.
But the planning board cannot put restrictions on the timeframe within which this developer or any other outside of the city law builds his buildings.
Gotcha. Okay. Sorry, I don't know enough about, I just know I live...
Fair. And your concerns are well-
Borough rock?
Well-founded and well lodged. Thank you.
All right, thanks so much.
Sure.
If our homes become damaged by this method of removing rock, what do we do?
I'm sorry, as the planning board, we do not have purview over that.
So we don't have any-
You would want to take it up with the city and the mayor, the city council, our code official, our building inspector.
Well, I know last time when it happened and everything fell down.
That's all I can tell you right now.[1744.97]
I had to go after the contract.
That's all I can tell you right now.
So is that what we're doing again?
That's all I can tell you right now. Thank you.
You're not protecting us.
We're the planning board. We don't
Please, if they are allowed
Sorry. Are you done?
If they are allowed to hammer, to the point where the homes fall apart.
Ma'am, the planning board has no mechanism for acting on that concern. I appreciate you lodging it. It's registered. Again, the applicant is here, he's listening, but the planning board has no ability to act on the concern you just expressed. I hope you can appreciate that. The planning board, I just, I just mentioned, talk to the city council, talk to the mayor, talk to the building inspector. Those are all avenues. I hope that's helpful.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I get that the city creates the code, and I get that the city council is responsible for a lot of that. I do believe that the city council messed it up, and I do take responsibility for that, and I regret not having done more on my time on the council to make sure that this kind of thing doesn't happen. That being said, spot zoning is illegal. City council creates wide zones. It is up to the planning board to determine if the things that are being developed within those zones are appropriate within those zones. So if the city council says, this zone is R110, this zone is R1, whatever it is, we don't know if there's rock underneath when that zoning is set. We don't know if there's no frontage and a private road would need to come in so that the entire burden of all five houses is on one tiny street instead of spread out amongst three streets the way the code originally suggested that it should be. So the planning board does have 100% complete authority over that. That is a decision that all of you are here to make. That's why we have a planning board. It is up to you to say, okay, this particular lot is different than that particular lot. And on this lot, that doesn't work. On this lot, it isn't right to have five houses in a little subdevelopment come out to a tiny, narrow, five-house street with no room and no parking. This is a unique situation, and that is why the planning board exists. So I don't understand the whole, it's not within the purview of the planning board. It is absolutely within the purview of the planning board.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It is getting late, and everybody's getting an opportunity. I'm sorry, I'm not done. Everybody's getting an opportunity to speak. We're affording quite well outside of our rules, people to speak more than once. So I'll allow it, but we're not double-dipping anymore, okay? Thank you.
I understand. I wish that we didn't have to keep you all here this late either, rush. I want to raise again the very serious concern of traffic and safety in the neighborhood. I have a three-year-old, a six-year-old, there are a number of other young kids in the neighborhood. This is a small street. It lacks sidewalks. The Grove and Highland intersection is so profoundly dangerous. And if we're talking about four houses, two-car driveways in each, eight additional cars that are going to be regularly exiting primarily at Grove and Highland, like, it, to me, is not a question of if, just when, there will be an accident, if not multiple, there. And I think to go forward with that without other city support or plans to ensure that that area becomes safer to pedestrians and the traffic that comes through, I think is really, really important to consider, and I just wanted to mention that again.
Thank you. Anyone else? First time? Discussion on the board to entertain a motion to close the SEACRA public hearing.
John, can I interject?
Yes, please.
I think what might make sense, because we have had so many public comments tonight, I think there are answers and good answers to a lot of the questions that were raised tonight. What I might suggest as a recommendation is to keep the hearing open, have the applicant respond to the questions that were raised tonight in writing for the next meeting. That way, everybody understands that they've been heard, their questions have been answered. Because I do think that there are good answers to
Sure. Yeah, fair.
All the questions that were raised.
You stole my thunder.
Board in agreement. She does that a lot. She does that to me, too. We're all in agreement?
Yeah.
So we'll keep the public hearing open for SEACRA.
I just want to echo something that the board, as a board, we do hear you, and I believe the applicant hears you. The frustrations that people are expressing are not taken lightly. We are not afraid of the challenges that are faced as a city of Beacon, and I think as a community, if we kind of communicate and speak and use the tools at our hands, I think some of these frustrations can be addressed. Maybe not to the satisfaction of everybody, but it's a starting point. To create a communication basis, you have to communicate with people who you may not like to talk to, you may not agree with. But the only way as a community you can achieve things is working together. We didn't get here as the city of Beacon with the frustrations that have been expressed over the last 25-plus years by not communicating. And there have been some very difficult conversations in the city of Beacon, and they will continue to be difficult conversations long after I'm sitting on this board, long after many of us are here. So I think we, if we act like a community, we work together as a community, kind of, I go back to Mayor Claro Gould, when I used to drive back and forth to Albany to talk about this little riverfront city that people called Newburgh on the other side of the river. So I'm saying that, that's a long time ago. And I've sat here and listened to the frustrations and the anger and the energy and the love and the discommunication, lack of communication. And while I could encourage everybody in this room and everybody who hears my voice, don't be afraid to speak to the people you don't agree with, because that's the only way you come to a conclusion that everybody works with. I just wanted to add that. Because we hear you, and we have been hearing you.
Well said, Randall. Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this point, I think this covers things for you for tonight.
Okay. Just going forward, is there any way we can schedule the public hearing for subdivision as well?
I mean, we can, we can assume that you'll get through, you know, SEACRA and these questions will be answered to the satisfaction of the board, to the point where should we schedule a public hearing on the other part of the application next month? There's a chance, so.
Yeah, it could be scheduled. You could, we could have it noticed for next month. The risk is that the
We may have to hold it open.
The deck doesn't get adopted next month.
Yeah.
And then it'll just have to be re-noticed for the next month after that.
Good with that, as long as the board is, so if so, I'll accept a motion to notice public hearing for
Subdivision.
Sorry, I don't want to get it wrong. Subdivision.
Yeah.
For next month's meeting. I'll accept the motion.
I think everybody on the board has the same feeling. And I would say that I would like the communications regards, my opinion, around SEACRA to happen. Because I think the frustration that's expressed here, it's significant enough that there needs to be some communication. So I would not.
This doesn't stop the further review of SEACRA? It puts, it puts the possibility of helping us move things along out there by noticing it. And again, if it doesn't, you know this, you know this longer than I have.
A lot of gray hairs doing it.
If it doesn't come to pass that we close SEACRA next month, the public hearing on the subdivision doesn't move forward. So it's just, it's just a simple mechanism. I don't think it has any impact other than to potentially help us as a board move agenda items along as I look at the clock and looking ahead towards next month. So just putting that out there for your consideration.
I'm not comfortable making that motion tonight.
Great. Okay. So you heard from the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm gonna, hate to do this, but Sorry. We're gonna take a quick break. And it was the third one tonight. I should think about that. But the next item on the agenda will be another public hearing on an application for special use permit, site plan approval accessory apartment. I'm sorry. I don't want to influence that question because I don't Within our capability to do so, yes.
I'm not fine.
Yes, Kevin. Within our capability to do so. That's the issue here.
You have a difference of opinion about what range of
Kevin. No, don't. It's not a matter of opinion. It's a matter of fact and law. That's the point here. It's not a matter of opinion. Sorry. We're gonna move on to the, sorry. Forgive us. We're gonna move on to the next application.
Oh, that's just one of those sort of general health, safety, welfare.
I'm, I'm reaching.
No, no.
So we're here
I wanted the public hearing where you were, because I saw the popping.
Appreciate that. We're here for the next item on the agenda, public hearing on application for special use permit and site plan approval accessory apartment 281 Rambat Avenue. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mary Ann Corsa. I'm the homeowner of 281 Rambat. And I just, this, what we spoke about previously is a good segue, and I'm just going to be very brief. When I proposed this project, it wasn't to hurt or cause animosity with my neighbors. It was a, this dwelling was going to be for my daughter. I didn't think that I would have
Sorry, I just need to interrupt you because I forgot
Sure.
One administrator. I'm going
Okay.
Before, because I see Jennifer over there going
Oh.
So the motion is on the table to open the public hearing. Motion by Randall.
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Forgive me. Please continue.
So at any rate, I just wanted to say that this is just a small, little apartment that I'm proposing, and it's nothing, nothing grand. As I said, it was for family. I have talked to many of my neighbors, and I actually have good relationships with all my neighbors, and they actually really like the garage as it is right now and have complimented many times. So I just wanted to say I do want to have good communication, and I know that there's some opposition with one of my neighbors, and I would hope that we can rectify any concerns.
And so, so sort of out of sequence here, but you mentioned one of your neighbors. I'm assuming that's, because we have comments submitted in writing from an individual named
Anne.
Travis Fisher?
Oh, yes.
Okay, just curious. So that, that note is submitted and is part of the record now, so they've lodged their thoughts. So, but with that, anything else just as far as your application in terms of the specifics? And more specifically in relationship to our planner and engineer's comments on your current application?
Yeah, J.C. is going to speak to that. But yeah, thank you. I just wanted to mention that and just say that I don't think that, I definitely want to improve the neighborhood, and I know Travis is concerned that it's going to negatively affect the neighborhood, but it's definitely not my intention, and so that's
Okay.
Yeah.
J.C. Calderon, Calderon Architecture and Design. So we tried to address all the comments from John Russo and John Clark. We modified the site plan and the, there is now a utility plan, engineer plan by Steve Burns, which you could see there. So, let's see, I wanted to address just a couple of concerns that were brought up. So we're proposing to use the second floor of this existing garage. The second floor doesn't have a dimension noted in our plans, but it does, it actually, just for the record, it, the interior space is above seven feet, not six foot eight, as was suggested by the letter received. It scales at six foot eight, but that's just a scale. There's a note in our drawings that drawings should not be scaled for information. We can provide an update to confirm that.
Sorry, J.C., the six foot eight, it looks to me like the dimension line is taken to the top of the, what is that, the garage door?
Well, we didn't, we didn't show a dimension on our submitted plans for the second floor, What I'm, what I'm trying to express, John, is that the, a portion of the second floor is seven feet and above. The maximum is seven foot two and a half existing at the apex. So we have, according to residential district, for minimum height of ceilings, exception one, on their slope ceilings, we can use part of the second floor as a habitable space. The parts that are less than, well, basically, the, that, that exception, again, residential district, section R301, 305.1, exception one, does allow us to have, as long as 50% of the proposed floor area is seven feet, the rest of the slope ceiling can be, the rest of the area can be less than seven feet. So we have use, we have legal use of the second floor, and so we go beyond the 300 square feet, which was expressed was a concern of the neighbor, because we do have less than 300 on the first floor. So with the first, with the second floor at about 100 square, about 80 square feet, we, we are more than 300 square feet total. So we comply with the 300 and 600 square foot requirement for an apartment. But, oh, the other thing that was expressed in Mr. Clark's letters, I went over that with Steve Burns, and he will address all those concerns, or in Mr. Russo's letter regarding some of the issues noted with the labeling and the clean out and so forth. So those will all be addressed. And the third, and the three cars will be modified to bring more clearance to that west parking space. But obviously, at this point, we didn't submit a new set of drawings, but that's basically about it. The, the
Excuse me.
The, the house itself is less than 600 square feet footprint, so it's a less than, and so the 40% rule is a, is a tough metric to meet. We are basically at 40%, but we're not quite at 40%. We're like at 41%, 42%. So that is, you know, maybe an issue, but David Buckley was hoping that that wasn't a concern. He didn't think that that was a concern, but that's, but we are at, the garage is existing, 252 square feet, and the house, according to the surveyor, is 593 square feet. We noted it as 581, but the surveyor says it's 593. So that's all I have to say about the, you know, percentages that were expressed, the 40% rule.
So, John, just in terms of, I know you have two specific comments, one relative to the zoning information table?
Yeah, it's just minor.
And the square footages.
And then he's agreed to make sufficient space for the western space. I did, in response to the letter that was, those are really code issues that the building inspector is going to have to come up with, an answer on. So I asked, I emailed him when I got, looked at that letter and, and asked for his response. It was only a day or two ago. He hasn't gotten back to me. But he's going to have to determine about the height of the second floor, and it doesn't meet the 40% standard, but the argument made in your table, I thought, was this is a pre-existing building that has already been built and had a permit
Right.
To be built. And so therefore, it could be converted. And because the 40% rule is creating a building bigger than 40% of the footprint of the house.
Right. That was the argument we thought, that's why we put it down that it was permitted in 2019. So it is basically a non-compliant, but not to, but it's, it's a pre-existing non-compliant condition that's not being proposed as new.
So Dave Buck, I believe Dave Buckley has to rule on
Understood.
On both those points.
Yeah.
Because it does make some sense if the building is already there, it shouldn't be asked to comply to the 40- asked to comply to the 40% standard if it's already above the 40% standard and it was legally permitted. That's the question.
I see. Was it legally permitted as a garage or a living space?
As a garage.
As a garage, in 19, 2019.
Okay. So, those two issues, Dave will weigh in on.
Yes. So, we're going to have to wait on the answers on those.
I'm just curious.
Whether it's legal for the height of the...
Second floor.
Of the second floor and whether the fact that the garage already exists makes the 40% rule.
No.
And...
Yeah.
Non-conflicting because it's a pre-existing, non-conforming, legal garage building.
So, just to, just to clarify the seven foot rule, I, you know, we showed in our diagram, different shade for the areas that are less than five feet on the sides of the building. But, when I reread the code for three oh five point one, minimum height on their slope ceilings, we will have to go in a little more because, because the amount of area that is actually seven feet is, is less than we would like. So, we're not going to get as much as we propose, 100 square feet. We're going to get about 80 square feet. But, 80 plus the 250, so, on the first floor is over 300. So, I think we comply with the 300 rule, minimum requirement for...
Okay. Just get Dave to...
Yeah.
To sign off on that because we don't deal with building code issues.
Right.
And, and he's going to have to research the files and find out what, why, you know, whether that permit is a legal building and therefore...
Yeah.
Well, he gave us the permit number. It's noted there.
Well, he should be able to easily look it up then, but we can't, we can't take your word for it. We have to get his word for it.
Another thing the planning board can't do.
[laughing]
Mr. Russo.
Says Mr. Calderon noted, there are some cleanup items that need to occur on the utility plan, some additional construction details need to be added, some details modified. And we're asking that there be better coordination amongst the drawings from one drawing to the next as lines appear in different places. And I had also mentioned the maneuvering of vehicles in and out of the parking area.
Great. Any issues?
No, we'll, we'll, we'll modify those. There's an existing garden that's not noted on the survey in that triangular area, which we were trying to help her not demolish, which is why we did that. But, we'll, we'll show it modified and made.
Okay.
So, could we request consideration, you know, of a conditional approval based on getting these things?
Whoa, 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 jumping ahead here. You could certainly ask, but we still have public hearing.
Yeah, of course. No, I know.
Conversations around things that, you know, specifically as they relate to code that might have an impact. Yeah. So, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves here, J.C. Any other thoughts, comments, questions around the board?
No, it's, it sounds like we need the building inspector to weigh in.
So, we'll go to the public. Anyone here on this application would like to share their thoughts? That's different. Board, thoughts on just holding public hearing open until next month until we get these things resolved? Yeah. So, okay. I think that's about all we can do at the moment tonight. So, thank you. We appreciate it. So, we're going to move to our next agenda item. John, can we take a minute? You need a break?
You've had four.
Three.
Three.
Okay, this is number four. Fair. Take your time setting up.
Had to wake back up a little bit.
What, you haven't been kept awake by the excitement?
This is past my bedtime.
Hmm.
By a lot. I'll be quick. Steve Spina with JMC for 16 West Main Street Beacon Commons. We were last before this board in, in July. Since then, we were told to go to the city council for a special permit for parking in the rear and also to the traffic safety committee to discuss some of the off-site roadway improvements that came up during the public hearing. So, we've done those things. We've made mostly minor detail changes to the plans and submitted supplemental information. I think at this point, the comments have been addressed. You know, there's a few things that we're requesting for conditions of approval, like, like a construction estimate or a sidewalk logistics plan. There's a few things that we're working on with the construction management team. But, we, again, are, are just trying to advance the project any way we can. We've submitted to the health department for water and sewer. We've met with Central Hudson, Verizon, Altice One, you know, all the utility companies, just trying to get things lined up, get any little comments anybody has so we can get those incorporated. So, that's kind of what we've been working on and we figured, you know, we made some revisions to the plans and we thought we'd resubmit and just, you know, continue the discussion, you know, get additional feedback from John and John and, you know, see what our next step is. So, we've been talking to Jennifer a little bit as well, just to work through the procedure, do whatever we can to get closer to construction.
Thank you. So, just as far as your tour over to city council, I understand that there's some new law under consideration relative to...
Let me explain.
Parking. So, yes.
Okay. This project started in 2019.
Yep.
We started, I think, September 2019 or November, something like that. And at that time, we were working under the old zoning tables and in there, there was provision for residential parking on adjacent parcels in a residential district, commercial parking on a residential parcel in a residential district. That was in the code. It was in the table. So, the applicant went to Dave Buckley and said, "How do we deal with this?" And he said, "You had to go to a special permit to the council," which is what, what the table said at the time. Well, in 2020, we changed the tables. And if you remember the old tables, they were incredibly complicated. They had been amended 500 times. And there was all sorts of asterisks and notes and footnotes and complications. It was impossible to read. And, so, we redid the tables, made them very simplified. But, in the possi, in the process, we dropped that provision inadvertently. Yes. And we didn't realize it. I didn't realize it. I take full credit for not realizing it. I think it was my mistake for allowing that to be dropped, but also for not realizing it until we started going to the council, setting up for the council meeting and realized that there's no provision in the law left in there. We traced it back and realized what had happened. So, we went to the council. We said, "This is a general, general provision that applied to all across the city to anything residential where residential and commercial districts were adjacent to each other. What we should do is put it back in the code the way it was when this project started." And it would apply in this project and it would apply to other projects. It's a useful thing. We ran into similar thing for the Cross Street project where they had to put the parking in a, in adjacent district. So, they agreed to consider it and they have a public hearing set for next Monday.
Yep.
And they just need a referral from the planning board saying that it's okay to put it back in the law, what was previously in there when this project started.
Got it. So, that's on our agenda tonight.
Yeah, the one change I'll just mention is it used to be a city council special permit and the city council decided, well, you know, if we're putting it back in, let's make it a planning board special permit.
Well, while we're at it.
[laughing]
Yeah, okay. That's all fair, understood.
Which is consistent with, with what we did in 2020, with a lot of special permits.
This is just a follow suit to...
So, if they adopt this next Monday or after the public hearing thereafter they adopt it, then it would be the planning board's decision to give this special permit.
Got it.
On this residential adjacent property. This is a landlocked property with no access to a public street. So, it's not like a residential building lot.
So, just for my identification, I think I know the answer to this, but just to confirm, the applicant's submission was designed in consideration for this law being already in place?
Yes. And he was told by the building inspector that this is the procedure he had to go through and then the law disappeared thereafter.
Okay, we'll put it back in. So, so ultimately, my point, my question is, is that it doesn't materially impact your application because it took it already into consideration. This is more of an administrative matter to get this law back to where it should have been had John not lost it.
I have to ask though, I'm not sure if I understand what's the specifics of this. What, what, what's the, what's the code that we're putting back in?
We'll, we'll, we'll review that when we get to it on the agenda item.
Yeah. It essentially says that any, if there's two adjacent parcels that have an adjoining property line, one's in the commercial district, one's in a residential district, you can put commercial parking in there in the residential district for up to 200 feet from the property boundary.
Okay. Thanks. Sorry. I just, it's not clear. I just want to make sure I understood generally.
So, great. That's an interesting little...
[inaudible]
Yeah. So, any other, any other thoughts as far as the applicant's?
Uh, no. I, I've lost track of this project where we are in the SEACR process and the rest of it.
Yeah, SEACR is complete.
That's right.
On the NEG deck has been issued. So, I think that the next procedural step would be for you to schedule a public hearing on the, we'll say, special permit and site plan and subdivision.
Yeah. We've been around quite a few times for quite a while on a lot of the detail here, so.
Have we approved the site plan already?
You issued a SEACR NEG deck.
That's it. That's all that's been finalized.
That is correct.
It's been going on forever.
You've been to ARB?
Yes.
And back?
Yes.
Again, we've covered...
And you've submitted to DOH?
Yes. Yeah.
We've covered a lot of ground.
I think we, I think we've done everything we can do and we're just, yeah, trying to see what the next step would be. Hopefully, this, this board could consider setting that public hearing for the final.
We sure will. And you've got a, a motion on the table by Randall already.
Second.
No, he didn't say that.
Motion.
Second.
By Randall, second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
And then, we do have ARB report out at some point.
That was, wasn't that done?
Did we already report out?
A ways, way back.
There's minutes.
Yeah.
From John.
Yeah, that, that, the applicant met with the AR subcommittee four times.
Yeah, okay.
And they've referred it back to the full board. So, you could consider that at the, so you make a presentation on the architecture at the public hearing?
Yes, please. Great.
We can recap that.
So, you, that was quick.
All right. Yeah, that's great. All right.
Except for the three hours you stood around.
Yeah, thank you for waiting around.
Always worth it. We'll see you next month. Thank you.
Five. Okay, next item on the agenda.
But who's counting?
Now we're, now we're cooking.
We're in the AM.
This is the, speaking, I have a presentation to a client tomorrow. I'm just gonna... Review application for concept plan approval, Hiplofs, Beacon Hiplofs and Studios on Front Street, submitted by Beacon Hiplofs. Hi.
Hey, how are you? Set this up here. Okay, so, the, the properties at that vacant lot that's adjacent to the developed lot at the Beacon Lofts project off of Route 52, near the recycling center. So, it's a lot that has been sitting there next to it. There, there's a piece of the Greenway Trail on there currently.
So, trying, trying to orient myself, because in fact, I was over there today and I still kept for the life of me figure out where this lands. So, you drive in.
Yep.
There's a roundabout and this is to the south end of the site. And you come in, there's that new building right in front of you that you tuck in.
Yeah.
Where is this in relationship to all of that?
If you're, if you're looking, if you come down the driveway and you're looking at the new building, it's to the right in, in that field of, that overgrown field there.
So, if you come in Mill Street... Oh, it's on the other, it's on the south side of that roundabout.
Yes.
Yes. Oh.
Yeah.
The triangle, it used to be the parking lot for the workers who worked in the mill.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. And what I'll do is I'll, I'll get an overall plan. So, you can be able to see the context.
Yes, that, so that was sort of what I was leading to. It'd be great to be able to sort of put this in context and orient ourselves.
Yep. I'll, I'll provide that.
Okay.
But, so the idea, so this is in the Fishkill Creek Development District. And so, we started at the city council with a concept plan application. They, they referred it to the planning board and then, you know, so we'll, we'll go through the site plan like normal and then I believe you referred back eventually for the concept plan approval. But, but the, the idea is that, we can go through the procedure, but the applicant is proposing a two-story building. It's mixed-use commercial on the ground floor. It's going to be artist and, artisan studios. And then, a portion of the upper part of the footprint is going to be residential lots. There'll be 28 of those. The, the second floor doesn't take up the entire first floor footprint. So, there, there's some roof garden area up on the second floor as well. We, we have all the parking we need. There's no zoning variances requested. It's a two-story building. We'll, we'll have more information on the landscaping and engineering for the next submittal. You know, again, this, what we have now is geared to, to the city council, concept plan requirements. So, we'll be expanding these plans. What else can I tell you? It's in the historic district. So, you know, we'll be working with the ARB, get a quick idea. The, the idea is that it kind of goes with the industrial buildings on the developed property and, and also has some relation to those brick houses, which used to be part of the overall project as well. But, you know, we'll, we'll work through that with the ARB.
So, just real quickly, you've already been to the council.
Yes.
They looked at this, this presentation and said, "Okay, go back to the planning board." Did they, did they offer you any substantive feedback?
No, I mean, they, they gave us a couple of notes about their concerns. You know, I mean, basically, it's things that we're going to go over, which I explained to them. You know, they, they were, you know, they know we're in the historic district. So, they want to make sure that we work with the ARB, which is part of the procedure anyway. They, they were also concerned about the Indian abat and we explained the idea, I mean, that there's almost no existing trees on the property. So, we're going to be making the bats happier because we're, we're going to be planting trees.
Out of all of the species that exist around here, I don't understand why the Indian abat gets so much plague.
You know what happens? It pops up when you do the...
That and the rattlesnakes.
Or the northern long-eared bat.
Yeah.
They all just populate into SEACR now.
It, it comes up in the EAF mapper on, on everything.
All right. Just, I don't get it. There's so many other species too that need protecting. But, anyway, I get it. So, so then, so then, once we spend some time together here refining this concept plan, you're going back to the city council?
Eventually. I, I mean, John, maybe you can explain the process. I think that's the last step.
Yeah. The way Fishkill Creek Development is set up, they have to do concept plan, but they don't have expertise in SEACR. So, what they're referring it to you to do the SEACR review and then once you give it a NEG, a NEG deck, it would go back to get the concept plan approved and then it would come back to you for site plan.
How is it still in concept once we're through SEACR?
Well, that's the problem with this arrangement is because for a concept plan, you don't need much. You know, you just need the sort of general site plan and...
All right, I'm splitting hairs, but...
Right. But, for SEACR, you need a lot more. So, they're going to have to do traffic studies and water and sewer issues and floodplain things and to do the SEACR, which is much more than for the concept plan. And when, when this was envisioned, I think they thought that the council would do the SEACR on the concept plan, but it...
And then they're like, whoa.
But, it doesn't work.
No thanks.
So, the whole thing, the whole thing doesn't really work.
We're, we're assuming...
We're assuming. Except the city council being like, what's so difficult? We'll do it. We'll take care of it. And then they're like, oh no, we don't want to do this.
Yeah, practically speaking, when the application goes back to the city council, it'll be in a form that's much more than on a conceptual level.
Yeah, we're assuming we're just going through the site plan process.
And then when they come back to you for site plan, it'll be, you know, that much easier.
It's just another month's quick diversion to city council for a check-in.
Yeah.
After you've put a lot of work in.
Yeah.
Okay.
But speaking of check-ins, sometimes during this process, it does make sense to have some periodic check-ins at, you know, work session of the city council just to make sure that we're not going down a path that the city council, you know, objects to for some reason.
Yeah, that makes sense.
There may be times during the process where we suggest we want to check back in.
From their comments, they appeared to be pretty supportive of the project.
Yeah, they had concerns about the roads, private roads coming in, the condition.
Right, and that was the same concern as the.
It's really bad.
They were supposed to be paved out at one time too.
And the Greenway Trail, they didn't like the diversion around the existing buildings. Those were the main comments that I remember.
Yeah, and some of that is baked in, since we are affecting that area, we're trying to make some improvements to the Greenway Trail as it is now. But it is already on that parcel.
What about the road coming in, which is like worse than, you know, Walcott 2002?
Yeah, it's a road, it's a private road that's owned by the adjacent property owner.
Who doesn't want to improve it?
Every once in a while, the applicant does something, yeah.
Do improvements on it.
Yeah, I mean, I think the applicant's gonna offer again to do the improvements and do what he can.
It's gotta be fixed.
Yeah, but he puts dirt in the pothole sometimes.
That'll do it, for, until the next rain.
It makes it worse, but, yeah, we'll see what we can do about that too.
All right, well, lots to do. We look forward to hearing more. The one thing we can do tonight is to circulate our notice of intent to act as lead agency on this, so I would expect a motion to do just that.
Motion.
Motion by Randall.
Second.
Second by Karen, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the end of our regular agenda. We have, how, how, do you usually stick around for certificates of appropriateness?
I normally might, but it's really late.
It's really late. It's like no interest whatsoever.
And there's five of them. So I would prefer if we went to the local laws first.
So we have two of them. No, 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 hey, you're the one who's on the city's dime.
And I have to drive a whole hour to get home, so.
Oh my. Okay, so the laws.
So the first one is, we already discussed, the adjacent. The only changes to it is instead of 25 feet, I made it 20 feet, which is sort of the minimum for a driveway. And the council maybe wants to take out the word railroad commuter, that you can't do it for a fee for somebody who, for outside the site users. For some reason, the old laws had railroad commuters, because I guess there may have been a problem of, you know, people wanting to do private lots for commuters.
This is the off-street parking adjacent to non-residential districts? Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I was on the self-storage.
So otherwise, it just mirrors the language of the previous law and we're just trying to reinstitute it, not for this applicant, although this applicant would be immediately affected, but for across the board, anywhere where there's two lots. It makes a lot of sense.
Okay, so this is basically the crux of it. It says, "Off-street parking for private passenger vehicles may be allowed by special permit from the planning board on a lot in a residential district which has a shared parcel line for at least 20 feet with a commercial or industrial district." Which, this particular.
Linkage is listed as a commercial district.
Yeah. Provided that the off-street parking shall be on a portion of the lot within 200 feet of the commercial industrial district and that the use shall not include fee-based parking for railroad commuters. That makes sense.
Yeah. So the council may take out the railroad commuters and just any fee-based parking. For non-users.
Captures more.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's the only change that they seemed, you know, they wanted the whole story about how this came about and why. Whose mistake was it?
John's like, yeah, 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 it was me. So, okay.
We worked for two years on that and you didn't catch that one?
So motion to share our recommendations in support of this addition or modification to the law.
Motion.
Motion by Randall.
Second.
Second by Karen, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Next one, self-storage.
The next one is a private applicant wants, actually, at the Hiplofs. You know, they have that big brick storage building on the north end. At Hiplofs, one of the old industrial buildings has interior storage.
Oh, I know that, okay.
Yeah, and they wanted to expand it, but when they looked at the parking regs, there's no self-storage parking standard. There's only warehouse parking standard, which would require, assuming employees would require like 40 spaces or some ungodly amount of spaces for self-storage, which has no need for spaces.
So this is instituting a.
So it just separates out self-storage with a different parking standard than warehouse storage.
Right, you've got wholesale warehouse, then it separates out storage facility and provides for one space per 10,000 square feet of gross floor space.
So they did a study of their existing facility, another one over in Fishkill, and they had general standards from the American Planning Association, everything for self-storage, and this was, what was generally recommended would be consistent. So they would probably have to have, instead of whatever the number was, 37 spaces, it would be six spaces. One for the employee and a few for the people who show up on a Saturday.
Right, so it's, and it's in addition to the one per 10,000 square feet, it's plus one space per employee.
Right.
Right. Okay. Defines warehouse and self-storage, those are the only other two modifications. Motion to share, planning board, support for modifications as reviewed by this draft dated July 25, 2022.
Motion.
Motion by Karen, second by Randall, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm going home.
Get out of here. Thank you, John. We really appreciate all you do for us. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna, oh, you're out of here too? You're leaving us, you're leaving us out, you're leaving us all to our own devices?
Uh-oh.
Oh, boy.
Woo, here it goes.
Certificates of appropriateness, we have six in order. Let's start with 493 Main Street signage. Is that applicant here? Good evening. Thank you for your deep patience.
Thank you for having us.
We were gonna, as a courtesy, as we sometimes do, move these certificates appropriateness to the beginning of the agenda. I was gonna say, at times, because you're lucky, we give more scrutiny when it's earlier rather than where we're dog tired, so. Welcome.
Thank you.
And please share with us what you are planning while we have it up on the screen here.
So this is, it's next to the.
My name is Chad, this is my partner, Steven.
Hi.
We've been given the opportunity to open our own store at 493 Main Street in the space that used to be Beacon Mercantile, Tony's old space. We're doing something very similar. We are candle makers. We also make and curate things that we love, so it's gonna be a gift shop and the sign is gonna be in the place in the same size that Tony had for Beacon Mercantile. We just used her existing sign and measured it and sent it to a sign maker and tried to match it next door to Campbell and Campbell. So we're using the 23-karat gold lettering on our logo and our company sign, Le Loup de la Lune. And what else?
Essentially, we're just trying to maintain the historic vibration of the 493 Main Street station, which is in that charcoal palette, as well as the black backing on the plankboard. And as you can see by probably the updated assets that we provided, it shows installation as well.
One thing that I did notice right before we came here this evening is that the sign maker mistakenly did a 20 by 30-inch sign and I requested a 24 by 30-inch sign, 24-inch by 30-inch sign.
So it'll be proportionate.
So we'll adjust that.
Does that, does these guys run away once they're done with their paid portion of the program? Yeah, I'm just curious, have you had any communications with Dave Buckley Building Department about size limitations?
No.
It's the exact same size as what's already existing and we are, the person we're renting from had no discrepancy, just that we had to get the sign approved. Nothing else is changing inside the unit or outside, and we're just replacing it with the existing size that's already there.
Okay, so safe to say that the existing sign was within.
Conforming.
Code, however, I'm going to ask that, as a condition of our approval, that you confirm that.
Okay, sure.
With Dave Buckley or by whatever means through the written code, because we don't have it memorized.
Of course.
The colors, they have a specific name. I see you kind of attached to palette.
So 23-karat gold leaf is the coloring. There is no specific Pantone to 23-karat gold leaf. It's only one type of coloring.
Yeah, we asked.
It's a finish. It matches Campbell and Campbell next door.
Yeah, we asked for them specifically to provide that and that's what he said.
And the charcoal?
It's just black.
By what palette, by what?
It's just black paint. There's no Pantone.
We'd like to be specific, cause black is black, is black is black.
I can ask him for that information.
Yeah, that would be a condition to make sure that was part of this specifically.
Sure, no problem. I don't mind asking him to provide that specificity.
And the name of your company is Which Please?
So our company is called Le Loup Candle Co.
Oh, Le Loup.
And Which Please is our first candle line that we created and it's actually done really well over the past two years. They're manifestation candles. We pour them on full moons and new moons and we curate them for, to attract love, abundance, spiritual guidance. We do a protection candle as well, so it's all positive, love and light.
Great. And then, is that a heart? Is that part of your logo?
Yeah, that's a crystal heart.
Okay.
We owe the trademark to that, so it's the easiest thing to bridge over the gap and also having a French name as a business owner in Beacon.
It's hard for people.
So we just thought, why not use the trademark that we already have as well as something that's easy to say?
That's trendy. People will be attracted to it, I think.
Great, well, we wish you luck. And this is intended to be mounted flat to the building, not laid?
Oh, flat, just one inch.
No lights, right?
No lights at all.
Okay.
We wanna, and I think I included in the packet Campbell and Campbell sign, do you see it on there? It should match that pretty specifically.
Yeah.
And it's wood, right?
It's all, it's wood, yes. He did say something.
Same colors?
Same colors, yeah. I asked him to match the colors.
Yeah, at least in the photo, that looks a little more gold.
It looks like that.
Yeah, it's the gold leaf lettering.
Yeah, so, okay. All right, so.
It says on here, it's a one-inch PVC painted black.
So it's not wood?
So I requested wood, but it did say, I think Campbell and Campbell's is PVC as well, so I think it's why I included that, because it's a matching sign.
I think materiality, as long as it's done professionally, cleanly.
It's not cheap, so I think it's.
Good.
You just be specific, whatever it is, just, I would only hope that whatever it is, we're specific to the 23-karat, to a specific color and a specific material.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is this something that we'll need to come back next month with or is it something we can clear with?
Well, here, here.
Motion to make.
So, I'm glad you asked, because there have been times where if an applicant is willing and patient enough to come back, just based on those questions we have, we would like to ask if you wouldn't mind coming back.
Of course we wouldn't mind. I would like to add that we hope to open October 1st. So that would be, well, that's when we, that's when our lease started on September 1st and we actually went to the building department the day after your meeting last month. And they said, oh, they don't meet until next month.
I don't want to hold up.
And then every time we've handed in paperwork, Dave said that that was enough information to go off of.
I don't want to, Dave, 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 Dave. I don't want to hold up commerce in Beacon, so I'll ask this, on condition.
Sure.
That you confirm with Dave that size is compliant code and that as you've represented your sign, however the graphic differs from Campbell and Campbell's sign, that the ultimate look will be to match Campbell and Campbell's finishes, colors. And.
Not font, right? You're not matching their font.
Oh, no, not the font. Very different font.
All right.
We have our own specific branding.
Okay, no, no, just.
This is the part of the evening where we put Amanda's capabilities to the test. You getting all of this?
Thank you, Amanda. She's been lovely, by the way.
Yep, and that. Does it say anywhere on here that this is wood?
No.
Okay.
It says wood or foam on that application.
Okay, that's fine.
On the building department application.
And then, you know, as you have stated that you intend to execute this professionally, with those conditions, I'll accept the motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Randall, second by Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Is sign foam the same as PVC?
You know what? I can find out that information and I'm not really sure.
If you want to give us your email, we will give you all that information.
Yeah, just be specific, whatever you find out, just make sure it matches what's on the app.
Yeah.
I guarantee I'll have that tomorrow.
Yeah, what he provided to you is what he says he provides to almost all building inspection and sign approval things, so he thought that that was enough information, but if that's not enough.
Who said that?
So we went to Signs Inc., I found them because they did the sign at Liquid Fables on East Main, which I fell in love with their sign, it was really cute, so.
So there's a.
Oh, did I say something wrong?
No, 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 there's just a. This is not for you, because you've been approved.
Okay.
Yeah, just be specific.
Don't worry about it.
We'll get this best of the cities and bring them tomorrow.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
But you're done.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Good night, guys.
Good luck.
Yes, best of luck. Next would be certificate of appropriateness, 396 Main Street signage and facade.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good, good morning.
Good day.
That's brutal.
Ah, the old hardware stores being activated. You're moving.
We are, yes. We just purchased 396 about two weeks ago.
Congratulations.
Thank you, I appreciate it. You know what? This is the new laptop.
Does everybody have this on their laptops?
Yes.
Don't worry about it.
Okay, perfect. I want samples too, just in case.
Good, I'm starving.
That's fantastic.
So I have a question for you. As it relates to your submission, it looks to me as though, yes, you are replacing that, I don't even know what I should call that, bough window, by, you're replacing this bough window.
Yes.
By creating a new opening.
Absolutely.
And installing what I can only presume is a garage door type feature?
Pretty much similar.
Alah Baha?
Yeah. I attached a quote from Dutch's Doors as well.
You do know there's a bunch of knuckleheads that hang out.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you're working with them?
No. We've actually made some pretty good progress in the first couple of weeks, which is.
I mean, I wish these guys luck, but they spend a lot of time in that zone between the chase and the corner, so.
The chicken place.
The chicken. Yeah, no, they.
There's, I think one of the guys has been there 17 years, supposedly.
Wow.
I know him, he's mine.
They are fixtures.
He lives in my neighborhood.
So anyway, my point being, thank you for helping to activate that part of Main Street.
Absolutely, we're excited.
And so you've got new signage?
So we're hoping to move the signage we currently have on Eliza Street.
Great, which is represented in this photo.
Yes, exactly.
Great. And the storefront, basically, you're putting a new door.
Yes.
With a clear story and this garage door.
So I brought, I don't know if you guys want to, I mean, the glass is, it's kind of slanted, it's a little bit of a timber.
That's the existing sign.
Yeah.
Supposedly it's a, I'm not sure. Supposedly it's a, well, by center.
This is, uh, this is, yeah.
Okay, so this is exactly the material you're intending to...
Material, which is the glass, that's the, the red glass.
Okay. Um, do you have control over this door?
We're gonna fix that. Yeah, we're gonna clean it.
That's your door?
Yeah, that's our, that's the tenement, tenement.
Meaning that's the door for the building that you own?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, just to be clear, and then...
So you're gonna, what's it gonna match?
We're gonna match everything, so...
So that door is gonna look like this door?
Absolutely.
Uh, oh, wait. So...
That door is gonna go from this to this.
Is it?
Yes, so what you see in the original photo there
This?
We're probably gonna put a, a different type of door than the commercial door, but the trim is all gonna be uniform to the garage door.
Okay.
So it's all gonna be the black door.
And it'll be, but will it be glass?
No, that's probably gonna be, um, your standard...
Be a solid door or some giant with, with a...
That's right.
Would you, what's annoying is the...
Would you mind terribly getting rid of that fan feature?
Good. I think that's what everybody's worried about.
And what color is the door?
Uh, right now it's white, we're probably gonna...
What were you gonna turn it into?
Okay, so, so...
Oh, so close.
So close.
So close.
You didn't bring anything to show the color of the door that you changed it to?
We did, because we're still, you know, I think once we get into getting the garage door installed, we're gonna wanna match that. So we wanna keep everything uniform, so...
How do we do this?
We can, I can always drop off a sample to...
Yeah, but we can't approve something, we don't know what it is.
So can we approve the garage door and the sign and then have you come back for the secondary door?
Are you okay with that?
Will they have to do another application, though?
Yeah.
Cause you'd be, you're gonna have to separate that door from the app and then do another...
Technically, yes.
Separate application for the two doors.
No, for this door?
No, 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 just for that door.
That door.
So, so tonight we can prove that and that.
And the sign.
And prove that, cause we don't know what you're doing. So if you can come back with a sep- separate application for that door alone, that would make us happy, hundred percent.
Okay, I hate to say this, but if you approve that and you don't change the door, you're not in violation of any of that, right?
No, we're gonna say we're, we're gonna separate this out.
Yeah, we're gonna subject.
Okay, so...
Probably, uh, I don't know, you know, the tenants are there, so I don't know if we can touch it before then, but...
Okay. So...
So Amanda, are you clear? We're not, we're separating out the apartment entrance door. That is not part of this application.
Right.
Okay.
So it's conditional, this approval is conditional on them coming back?
Yeah, it's gonna be conditional on them coming back. Well, actually, no, we're gonna approve
No.
Everything but the apartment entrance door.
The approved, we're approving the sign?
Right.
The new garage.
This door, and we're treating this as if it's existing to remain
Okay.
As a part of this application.
Mm-hmm.
So it's completely separate?
Separate totally, and they're gonna, you don't even need to mention this in the notes unless you want to. They're gonna come back for a separate application when they decide to effect change to that door. Makes sense?
And you probably want just a color sample and then a little...
Color sample, material, it's gonna be different.
Uh, I'm not, yeah, I think we wanna say this is an approval, like, I, if we approve, we don't wanna approve this.
No, no, I understand. I'm gonna, trust me, I'm gonna make sure that we're clear in what we're approving. So, motion to approve all elements of this application incorporating the signage, the garage door, and the leftmost commercial door, and not the rightmost residential door.
So you see they're identifying as main entrance door?
Fair.
And then you can say apartment entrance door.
Oh, where does it say that? Oh, here it is. So, yes, including the main entrance but excluding the apartment entrance.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion by Karen.
Second.
Second by Randall. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Do, don't change the door.
We'll be knocking on it.
Dave, old sick Dave on ya.
Apartment door.
The apartment entrance door.
Good evening. That looks more complex than my brain can process at this moment, so please tell me. So you are, you're all three of the Townsend?
Yeah, Joe.
Yeah.
Okay. Gentlemen, please make this easy for us. Please make this easy for us.
Three Townsend, but not Holland.
The, at the...
No, no, fourteen Holland, I think is sitting over there. Three Townsend, okay, go.
It was very complicated, all the stuff that you sent in, they sent in.
Yeah.
We're doing lot thirteen, lot three, and lot four.
The green ones, that's easy.
Yeah.
Great.
Trying to make it easy.
Yeah.
Step one, clear.
So we had to design, we had some challenges, we had to design houses that would fit on up to a lot of town, those flat blocks.
Don't care. What do they look like?
Just show houses and design, that's it. What made you like it?
This is lot thirteen.
Okay.
This is the first one we're showing you.
Okay, very nice.
Colors?
Right there, you got a whole color palette.
The colors of thirteen, yeah.
You got shingles, although you got a couple of blacks down there at the bottom. So that's your lower siding.
Yep, this is the upper.
That's your upper, upper board? Yep. Got it.
I'm gonna go black roof.
You have the shingles?
Black windows, got the shingles.
That's, so this is thirteen, okay. And is, is it a black asphalt roof on that front porch?
So I got black metal through the porch roof. I wanna go with the... I'm gonna try to go with the dual black and all three of these houses.
So all the same, houses gonna have all the same roofs?
Roof. But nothing else.
Well, wait, you might be able to make this easier.
Yeah.
Are there any deviations on any of the other materials between the houses?
Colors.
Oh, alright, one at a time.
Too similar, not too dissimilar, right?
Yeah.
So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna have to do this nine more times, or we're gonna have to come up with maybe a program that...
We'll figure it out.
So, no, you're, you're cooking with gla- gas right now. This is great.
Black roof, white, black, black.
So, lot thirteen, Townsend. Lovely. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Randall.
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor? Aye.
You're done with one.
You're done with lot thirteen. Let's see lot four.
It's like an auction.
If I could only just call like an auctioneer.
You have the, uh...
Are these hand drawn? Did you hand draw?
Yeah, cause I, I forgot.
Love it. Thank you. Someone, at least someone still exists who hand draws. You too? Me too.
Yeah.
You too?
No.
No?
So lot four, we have, um, we just continued that lot, four level shifts and it makes it work. This is actually a garage from this side, if you see it, which is at ninety degrees.
Yep, cool. So as long as it's not facing the street?
So this is, you do not, it does not face the street.
Boom, good.
So this is the way we're able to make that work.
Okay.
These are three pictures. So... Front elevation on a lower level, which is storm, which is this car. And you're gonna do this as a, or a board.
Do you really think that those
Yep.
Work well together? Oh, they looked a little greener before.
Yeah, it did. Smell, smell.
Looks good, and then...
It's gray.
We have two walls.
Everything's so green here.
With a black roof.
Black roof.
Uh...
And black roof.
Still does read green. What's, what's driving that combo? I'm just curious. Is there, are you guys like married to it?
I think the gray is fine.
But we, what we do have, um...
Are there other color options to mix?
We have a number of, we have a palette that we've set up for the elements of the fact that all of these
Yeah, sure, sure.
Settle. These are just some of the ones we put together. But what we did do on these sheets is basically establish what colors we buy on the sheet, and we can easily...
Yeah, I understand.
We have four of those, with spilling, so we can... We did a little contrast.
Which?
The hardwood slate. Which two?
Yeah.
The hardwood slate.
I don't know. I'm just responding to the fact, the first one pops, cause it has real distinct contrast between the white and the... It's not necessarily the colors here, it's more the hue. The same hue. It's, okay, was that, you think that'll be easier?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're gonna move to lot three.
What about blue and white? What about blue and white? Blue on the bottom and white on the top?
Lot three, please. So lot three.
Oh, this is the gray, gray. The gray, gray?
The gray, gray. So we're doing, um, the shapes, wood mat, and shapes, and, uh, which is, in the, uh, hardwood slate. So we got a hardwood slate, shape, which is probably...
Cool.
We're gonna have a board back.
So it's monochrome? Yeah, monochrome, white trim.
Chrome, different, white trim.
Black roof.
Yeah. All the trim is white on all of this, right?
Okay.
All the trim is white?
Correct.
It's like Asrock or whatever, right?
You know what? Going, well, alright, let's, this is fine to me.
Motion.
So, motion to approve lot three. Motion by Randall.
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor?
Aye. Three's done.
And then, the one thing I didn't, could you do me a favor? Take the two...
I'm sorry, lot three is just for reference. The, oh, the difference is, we've got a garage that's separate, all the way in the back.
Yeah, that's cool.
That's fine, we're good. We don't care. The color is just fine. You're done.
You're done.
You're done.
I appreciate that, but we don't wanna rush you, but...
You're good.
No, that's fine. Then, so do me a favor. Take the two original materials, these two, and just put white between them, please. I just wanna see what happens here. I just forgot that you had...
Yeah, cause of the white trim.
Just need to be clear, we want, we have a white trim, we...
Okay, just stack, yeah, there you go.
It's better.
Better. It's all a matter of taste. I have beauties in the eye of the viewer.
We get for dark color, white, and then the other.
Yeah, well... Cause the way you've represented it here, you've got a dark brown, like in the... Yeah, that looks great. Dark brown, lighter brown, trimmed down by white. It's nice, it's crisp. And then the pop of the black roof and the... So it's, it's just, this just looks like gray, blue, and then khaki tan. It's kinda black. It's just like, this is a cream, right?
Yeah.
Still a little dark.
What about dark?
Yeah. I could, I can even see something like that would...
With the white trim?
Yeah. What do you think? Alright, cause it's more, it's more in line with the sort of contrast that we're talking about. They're in this, they're in a different...
Well, the top is the same.
You're saying this color here?
Yes.
Yeah.
And this color, so you're gonna pick your contrast.
You good with that?
Right.
You okay? That's a, that's a more handsome house. So, yes.
Ironstone, and then what's this one?
Ironstone. Heather.
It's the same, that's what they have, yeah, that's Heather.
Okay, so, um, with the modification of the bottom clabbered to be ironstone, motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're done.
That's nice. What do you think? Kevin's, Kevin's like, I don't know shit.
Yeah.
Thank you for your...
So we're gonna have to do this again.
Great.
So we're gonna have customers, we're gonna have some input, um, on the other lines, on the other lines.
Cause you're building these.
Tell them to make good decisions.
Yeah, bring good samples. We'll get through this quick.
Only put good decisions in front of them.
Just give them the choices that are acceptable.
I love coming to the meetings, I just, these are alternate, I just want to make sure the same thing. Coming before you, with the day we start, in the next day.
Oh, we, we have a good rule over that. We'd love to. We'd like to be here yesterday, too.
I don't know what time it is, but, thank you.
It cannot be first.
I was gonna make it by July.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You've done it first. We've totally, we did it the last meeting.
No, no, I didn't say no. I said it just didn't, wasn't in the stars for this evening.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Enjoy your day.
Enjoy your, is that tomorrow or today tomorrow?
The what? That's good. And the Dow dropped twelve hundred and seventy-five points. Alright, so, last one here.
Last one standing.
Fourteen Howland Avenue. Hi. Aye.
So, I dropped off the sign and roofing material there, I called it for that. It's just four, four white, and then, you have it over there? Yeah. Thank you so much.
That would be great.
I got one there, so.
Nah.
Always keep them with you.
I know. I was like, I was like, I could write to my other house, I'm wearing, uh, Ken's shirt really quick, I had it all over there anyway.
So, who, are you Burns?
Uh, Steve Burns, I stand in here.
And you have an engineer, who, what, what's his discipline?
I'm sorry?
What's, what's your engineer's discipline?
Uh, regarding-
Kind of engineer is he?
Oh, no, he's a, um, he's a civil engineer, I'm sorry.
So, you have a civil engineer designing a house for you?
Yep. We've done this design before, we're on Old Dawn Lane, so if you're driving down towards Old Lane, uh, towards this scale, new white construction on your left.
Just curious, why do you have a civil engineer designing a house for you?
Yeah, because this is just ugly as sin, I got to tell you right now. It's just too late, I can't lie to anybody.
I mean, I thought of it before it was even finished.
Fair, there's no accounting for taste, but I, all I'm saying is you've-
See, I can, I know, I'm biased, and this is part of what some of us do, right? Is make things look nicer, but then sell for more money. So, actually, you may have saved like two thousand dollars with the fees on this guy, but really, it's an ugly building, it'll never, it'll never be worth more than the fair commodity minimum.
That being said, never, never let a civil engineer convince you that he can do what an architect does.
No, I agree with him. My uncle, my uncle's an architect over in Italy, and he can kill me. I'm trying to tell him, like, come down here, you can earn a lot more money down here.
What's your trim color?
The reason why, the reason why I make a point is-
So, this is your siding, and this is your roofing. And trim, same, same white.
So, it's all white, huh?
All white, yeah.
It's a big white. Because I want, I want you to tell other people that do this work, right? It's like, don't make an ugly building, you're going to get a lot of shit from this board. It may not, it may not be legal for us to deny it.
The window, the window trim?
But I don't want to encourage this.
That's pretty, doors are white? The front door is white?
Front door, yeah.
How? Didn't, did you fucking approve these?
Yeah. Like I said, we did a house right over Old Lane, if you drive by, you'll notice it. I think you might have seen the front door now, but-
Your steps don't even, your front door doesn't even show steps on it. But that's beside the point. No, you can, you can get away with a really shitty set of plans if it's all worked out, or if you are willing to, you know, take whatever changes or whatever aren't being detailed in a set. And if you're not willing, you're not interested in making a nicer place, then you could, the minimum. Yeah. Because it's a terrible, this is really bad.
Amanda would like to go home in this century.
Okay.
Yeah, it's okay.
Motion to approve.
I know it's hard, but-
I just, my thing is, I mean, it's just, there's just white with a black roof.
Yeah, we don't have-
And the garage door is white, too, so-
What about black trim?
Yeah, we do black here.
Black, black window frame trim?
The garage door, black as well.
The windows would have to be black on the outside.
Yeah.
It just, it just-
That would help.
It would definitely do something other than just, just gigantic.
Black windows?
Black windows, black trim.
And probably black door at that point.
Yes.
Yes.
You mind? Just everything white is just-
It's a lot of white.
It's a lot.
Did you catch that?
It's like, they had to paint the houses in curaçao because the white made people blind.
Okay. So, so-
The way I did it, I did the house out on eighty-five, ten, I remember, just in this development, I, uh, dry locked the basement, not thinking I had extra white paint, so I was like, ah, the walls are moved, fully wet down, so I painted the floor, make it look nice, I was like, and I put, yeah, I put orange recess down there, and as soon as I turned it up, it was an insane sign.
Yeah, you, it'll-
I was like, this is a bad idea, this is a gray floor.
If your son hits this thing, boy, you'll hurt him.
Get, get some contrast. So, with, with the note that, um, you're going to-
Black windows, black-
Do whack, black windows, black trim, black door.
Black garage door.
Black garage door, black front door. Uh, motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by Randall, second by Karen.
I vote no. I want that recorded.
You can't, we don't have a quorum, so-
Oh, I can't vote no?
No.
No, you can, you can lodge your displeasure. Is there a way to put that in the record?
It's already in the record.
I mean, it doesn't matter to you, right? Neither.
So-
Would be a good-
Under duress.
Are you going to, are you going to alter your vote?
You can't make me vote any way you want.
So, we have not approved this, I'm sorry.
So, then it's not approved, then Karen.
Um, so, your best bet is to come back when we have more of a quorum.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry.
But also, just a piece of advice, please don't hire civil engineers for architectural work.
Sure.
They're not, they're not trained for it. So, not, not to denigrate civil engineers, what they do is noble and necessary, but they're not architects. And I'm not saying that just because I spent a lot of money on my degree and career, but they don't do what architects do. They're not trained to do what architects do.
And many towns don't allow architectural work to be done by engineers.
Yeah, surprised you had a P.
And we should probably do that.
It did not carry.
Denied. Try again, next one? Thank you.
Good.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Randall.
Second.
Second by Karen. All in favor? Aye. I could ju, I could just see Kevin be like, no.
Michael, if I said no, we'd be stuck here all night.